Good morning and welcome to the special board meeting, the spring workshop for the South County Fire Department Commissioners for May 3, 2024. I'll go ahead and call us to order and please stand for the plaid.
I.
Before we move on to the approval of the agenda, I just want everybody in the commissioners and board members to know that we are, you don't need to use your microphones today, we're using the owls with the, but we are on video and recording. And the audio is also coming through the owls. So that's on, just so you know, that's on all the time. So just be aware that it's on. So.
Is that necessary for the workshop?
We do record our special meetings.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so just with that caveat, we're ready to move on in the agenda to approval of the, you have the agenda in front of you commissioners. Is there anything else for the agenda? If there's nothing else for the agenda, I'll make motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by committee for G O Black. It's been moved to second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. On here, please say aye.
Aye.
Post past unanimous. Next up, we have public comment, item number four. We'll start here and then here in the room, is there any request for public comments? Any requests for public comments? And Ms. Blinken said, but wasn't sure if we have.
Yeah.
No. All right. So last chance, any requests for public comments? Seeing no requests, thank you. We will move on in the agenda then to item number five, which are cardiac cardiac response, uh, or sorry cardiac arrest response demonstration. Uh, with Chief Maxwell and for this demonstration. Uh, I encourage and Chief Maxwell encourages the commissioners to stand up and stand around the demonstration so you can see it better because you can't see it super good up here on the dais. So, uh, with that, I will turn it over to Chief Maxwell and then maybe give an explanation of what we're going to see and then we just actually start the demonstration.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. So the, the way this is going to work is Deputy Chief Hughes. He's often our dispatcher. He will dispatch the crews. They will come in in a, in a way that they would come in naturally because we arrived at different moments in the call and they're going to go through a full cardiac arrest resuscitation. And I'm going to give a few tidbits of what they're doing. And then afterwards, I'm going to go into a little more in depth in a PowerPoint. So, so we can understand what we do. But this is a highly choreographed, um, intensely practiced thing we do. And as you all know, we're national leaders with our survival rates. And, and now you'll get to see kind of a, an on the ground look at what it looks like on a daily occurrence. We, we will sometimes do four of these in a day. We're probably up to almost every day or every other day, we, we do cardiac arrest resuscitation. So this, we're big enough now. This is a regular thing we do. So with that, I will turn it over to Chief Hughes and, and the team here.
So my thanks, Chief. I feel today I'm down. Eight eleven, eight eleven, nine, medical eleven, MSO twenty one, respond for a med X, one, two, four, two, five, Meridian Avenue South. Eight eleven, Adam, ten to eleven, medical eleven, battalion eleven, MSO twenty one, med X response, one, two, four, two, five, Meridian Avenue South. Respond on frame one, eight eleven, Adam, you can respond. In this responding to the med X response at one, two, four, two, five, Meridian Avenue South, be advised, unconscious. Sixty year old male not breathing, unknown pulses.
So this is a, and a current, we call these a med X. It's one of our highest level medical responses, obviously. And as we've been talking a lot with the, like Edmonds and stuff, that, that ten minutes, the clock is ticking. And it's not ten minutes from when we get here or the dispatcher or anything. This is ten minutes from when their heart stopped. And when their family member goes to call nine one one, nine one one. So the heart is ticking. So every minute their chance of survival drops by ten percent. So it is incredibly time sensitive.
Eight eleven, that was.
Yeah, go ahead and ask.
Do people hear the recording? How wide? You're confused between like a stroke and a heart attack or something?
Yep. And so the dispatchers have a lot of training, uh, to triage that. And then a really important part, then the dispatchers walk them through checking pulses and breathing and instruct them how to do CPR. Because CPR is the stop gap measure. That ten minutes CPR is buying us time. It doesn't fix anything. It's circulating some of the oxygen to the brain and vital organs to buy us time.
And my family member's right here.
Yeah.
What happened? Uh, he just went down. We're having dinner and then he just, he went down. We'll start CPR.
So you notice how fast he started CPR. Now that wasn't done in five or 10 years ago. They would go through a longer assessment. But now we made the assessment very short and we go straight to CPR.
Still going to copy CPR projects.
If they don't have a pulse, we're first, no, they need, the most important thing they need right now is.
He's already been done?
Yeah.
We're in stress.
When it stresses, anybody else got any medical issues?
Yeah, no, I don't know. He's, he's, he's my dad and he, we're, we're eating dinner and he just, he just went down. Uh, I think he takes, uh, medications for, for high blood pressure and maybe high cholesterol.
The next most important thing we want to do is see if we can deliver a shock. Now shock actually is stopping the heart for a moment so that it can get reorganized and create an organized beat. A lot of people think the shock stop starts the heart. It actually stops it.
Analyzing now. Then clear. No shock advised, George. Start CPR.
One little thing you might not notice is he told him to start CPR, but he also tapped his hand because that is one second faster by using the haptic tapping and audio. Because we want to have absolute minimum time not compressing the chest. And I'll talk about that a little bit more later. So there, these are these super fine things. Most people just say start CPR. We say start CPR when we tap the hand to make sure we're starting even faster.
You guys have a sixty year old male witness arrest, no history on the patient, uh, no shock advice, no vice center.
Five, four, three, two, one, cover. Continue CPR, like P A right now. Alright, you guys are about a minute in practice. Right, Keenan, I'm going to have to start an IV engine. I'll have you guys hop in on CPR.
You notice something? You know how quiet they got?
And then a millimeter of Epi when you're.
Takes a pressure medication and yes.
So you can see paramedic fell there.
And then whenever you get some information just about, um, what happened last year.
This is called, called the triangle. We actually have diagrams. Everybody has a certain spot.
But it sounds like a witness arrest.
The lead paramedic is in the position. And she had her, she controls the whole scene. Well, he just kind of did. The firefighters line up here because after two minutes, you don't do this for the CPR. And they, they will line up and do the very quick turnovers and keep a, uh, non goodie at first and then CPR.
I'll take over a minute after you're done with the IV and then just have you to the airway. Sounds good. Um, and then, uh, fight center CPR from family.
No, we didn't start CPR. I, I didn't know how to do CPR. The dispatcher returned to tell us, but I was, uh, too nervous.
And so we're about fifteen seconds without tries. And then Keenan, um, I can take over meds here. Five, four, three, two, one, cover. Shocking, keep it, continue.
Because it gets pretty painful to be on my knees. And, and when you have that discomfort, you lose your form in doing the proper CPR. So that we, we do this to protect their knees. You don't have perfect depth and perfect rhythm.
Uh, eighteen in the left forearm. And have you guys having any resistance or anything against the bag dragging well? Okay. Um, and we have section here. It doesn't look like it needs any suction to me. We don't hear any gurgling or anything. The game is getting ready for intubation. Uh, there's compression here. And then we'll get, uh, would you mind talking to the area around to?
You guys can hear it. There's a match on no. And you can see the compressor is going perfectly because the science say we need to be right about a hundred and fourteen beats per minute. That's how precise this has to be. The other thing is we can't lean on the chest because if they, if they don't come up all the way, the heart can't still pull blood. So if you're, they're, they're, they're just weird splitting hairs is everything we do. When they stop CPR, every second that we don't defibrillate them, it's harder to get the heart back. So we try and stop CPR and deliver that shock in, in under five seconds. And all these things are actually related to your terms of survival. So we have to do things by those secondary.
Five, four, three, two, one, cover. Shocking, continue compression.
That shock was also not the same.
Chief Maxwell, we have a real one of these going out there on the street.
Okay, go ahead. We just stop.
It was just a warm up for the real thing.
No, no, no. But we have a real cardiac arrest down the street. So probably be better for them to go.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Thanks, guys.
That's, that's, you guys are actually poor. Dispatched as a CPR. Oh, yeah. That was really interesting to see how quick it was. From everything being spread out and it was loading up and you guys forgot.
So, uh, So Melissa asked a good question. How long, how long do these go? We, a lot of the science says that we need to go at least forty minutes. Um, because people, there are people being left when people didn't go forty minutes because they weren't seeing any changes in the heart or any signs. And, and that's what we do different is we follow the research so closely that we know these things. There's lots of organizations that'll stop at twenty minutes because they just don't know the research. So the research, you really have to have people on top of the research. We make sure not to give too much Epi. A lot of the old stuff in the training just does give lots of Epi, but we've found that that can reduce your survival rates. If you, you won't see it. Actually, hold up the bag for just a second and then put it back on. It's all. If you worked at that bag. Okay, go ahead. But that's actually, um, that's actually a child sized bag because we're, now you have to be so precise in the way we ventilate because when you ventilate, you're putting pressure in the chest. So you're working against circulation. So we learned that we use a child bag on adults because they don't need, they get plenty of oxygen with a child bag. But we reduce the pressure in the chest. So we're not fighting against the pressure in the CPR because like I told you, you, we don't want to lean on the chest because the heart can't totally fill. But the interesting thing is CPR isn't all about the chest. When you press down, you're creating pressure in the entire chest. It's not necessarily just pumping the heart. If you see there, we have a videolaryngoscope and that allows us to, the amount of time it takes you to innovate and how many attempts you make to innovate actually reduces your chance of survival and it reduces your chance, chance of getting a successful airway, what we call it. And so when you, there's a video camera that goes in there and so it's much quicker, faster and safer to identify and go. The esophagus, because if you put it in the wrong place, you'll ventilate the stomach and you'll kill them. And that's why this is one of the most important things we have to get right. There, there is some times where we, with kids and stuff or drug overdoses where they, they will go hour and a half, uh, doing this. And it's exhausting. And that's why we have so many people here. A lot of times we'll call in a whole nother engine. Because everybody is getting so tired from the CPR. And if you get tired, you don't do CPR correctly. And that is key to, key to this whole thing here. Because we'll get a rhythm back and then we'll lose it again. And we'll get a rhythm back and we'll lose it again. And especially if it's like a teenager or something, we, we keep going until we absolutely know there's no chance.
So do you use a child cover bag on the null shocking? What is it for child? What do you do then?
So we're still in B B, uh, we're. Smaller, smaller, smaller volume. This is at the bag where it has to be really under control. Like paying attention to how much you feel.
Okay, so you don't, you used to say bag, but just.
Yeah.
How you do it?
There's a, if you look, it looks really complicated at the top of that. And what's really interesting is that forces them to move the air in slow because you can't move it in fast either. So you don't want it too much, but the speed of the ventilation. So we used to just bag people or ventilate people. Ventilating is very complicated and it's a very sophisticated skill now. And it takes a lot of practice to get right. And before we innovated, I don't know if you noticed, you have to have two hands holding the mask on. It takes two people to ventilate. So the ventilator has to do the right amount and the right speed. And you have to have a person with two hands holding it properly on there. So there's, these are all the little things that we always talk about. We're splitting hairs to get this right. But that's what contributes to our high survival rates.
Hey, Gene, can I add something?
Go, please.
Uh, on, on these incidents, these are certainly dynamic and fast moving incidents in people's homes, right? And, and the one thing that you're not seeing in this simulation is, is the effect that it has on family members of the, of, of the person that's experiencing this. And often what you'll see is you see the two officers here, Captain Wingit and, and people sitting off to the side during the simulation. But really what they would be doing is they would be the ASR with the family and helping them understand what's going on and calling for additional resources. And this is where our partnership with Support Seven is so crucial because they need to have chaplaincy. They come and they, and they. We're focused on patient care, but we also have to focus on taking care of the family as well. That's a, that's a part that we're not seeing in this.
That's really good. Okay, so they just got pulses back.
We stay here. If anything changes, start compressions. Like you lose the pool through anything, start repressing.
This is one thing.
Um, if you could grab one here, guys, and we're on exit strategy for us. Um, maybe Henry also can do what happened. We're on exit strategy. Um, Deroch, you're working on a pressure. I'm working on a blood lead here.
Again, you can notice how quiet these zines are. They're, they're not chaotic. They're being very quietly choreographed. Another thing we do different and the science supports this is when we get pulses back, a lot of people are like race to the hospital, package them up. You gotta get to the hospital. But the science says in that ten minutes, you can lose pulses again and not notice it. And so we do it ten minutes stabilization period when we package them up properly, we calmly make sure that the intubation tube doesn't come out, they're secured to the board. We have drips, we have medication drips to keep their heart from going back into a bad rhythm. So we're setting up drips and calculating drips.
Uh, we're starting.
And, and you'll also see our mechanical CPR device going on. So once that's on, all we do is hit a button and it'll be during CPR because if we're on the stairwell or something, it's hard to do CPR and all we have to do is hit a button to do that. But the rock, we call this the rock stabilization period. So we have a checklist for targets for us. To stabilize them afterwards is almost more complicated now. And we have a whole nother checklist we go to on what we're doing. Cause now we want to keep their heart going. Their heart's very irritable to go back into an arrest. And we also want to conserve as much of their brain, right? So when they come back conscious that they can walk and talk and be normal. You can now notice how slow the ventilator's ventilating. And if you can see it, there's a red light flashing and that red light helps them, reminds them to go at that speed and go slow.
So we'll do, um, maybe mover, give it to right, roll buds main when everybody's ready. I'd like to get, um, the lever grip on first before we move the patient at all. Um, Keenan, how far are you on that? Are there work pains that have a push outs, Epi, or are you?
So you have to calculate grips. You have to have the right concentration in the, in the fluid.
Go right here in the larger area. If somebody fell.
Yep, so. No, a lot of times, so, so that's buried out in practice too. Sometimes the best thing to do is get out to a living room and take a couple of seconds to do that. And they didn't always used to do that either.
We're going to slip this under and then slip this under the chest. Okay. So on three, on head gap.
Great. One, two, three.
All right, are we good?
People that are systems that don't have enough people will often hear the mechanical device early, but the science shows human CPR is equivocal or better than mechanical CPR. So we only do it once we're ready to start moving. So we use it, we use the, the technology at the right times. But if you're a, if you don't have a lot of people looking down, a lot of times they'll put that on. But that means you have to stop the CPR to get it on. And that changes your ability, it lowers your survival rate.
And then we got an exit strategy.
So technology is good, but it has to be, you really have to dig into the finer science to use it correctly. And that's why we didn't put that on earlier.
And then heart rate is still what I speak and get them to.
Yes, please. So, uh, this Lucas device here, we have four of them throughout the R S A. There's one on the MSO rig and then there's one on each accounting rig. As Chief was saying before, when we were spinning this up, it's, it's not uncommon for us to have four of these in a day. And sometimes occasionally you can even have two at the same time. So with the MSO and his or hers, uh, Lucas devices on that call, the county chiefs, that's the secondary county chiefs that's going to respond to the subsequent call. We'll have.
I'm good to run this should we need it. Uh, we've got a lego drip.
The other thing, the Lucas device, it can do CPR right into the cath lab where they do heart surgery. So we've left that on. And then they go in and actually can do the heart surgery while it's doing the compressions and get people back.
Okay, sounds good. We'll go quote the prop. All right. And we still have a pulse, Julian?
Yes.
All right. Sounds good. So when we get them back over, we tech, uh, placement. And then I have a monitor here.
So this, this is when the family becomes the, becomes the main patient and our chaplains are arriving. Usually our battalions and MSO that they don't need to go, we're working with the family because they're pretty traumatized. So now the family becomes the focus. We, we come in, we work really hard to sync everything up. To put the furniture back in place, to clean up any mud that was on our boots. Make sure we didn't leave any needles, but we, we try to put everything back and clean and take care of the humans that are left behind. Or drive them to the hospital or call people or do whatever we can to, to help them. So.
Is that appropriate to ask some question now?
So I think we're gonna have the crew come back in.
Totally. Well, um, we'll have the crew come back in for a minute. I do have a, I have a PowerPoint to show you kind of the, the bigger level. But I hope you do ask questions. All right, you guys. He's got a little pulse there.
When I just saw in UC, I wanted to get Mike.
Yes. Thank you guys so much. You guys, this is people like this is why we have these incredible survival rates. And they are very good at their job and they practice them a lot. Because we're in a well lit, lots of room as Paul said, Eric. But doing this when you were just awoken from sleep at 3:00 in the morning and making drug dosage calculations. When you're, when you're only gonna wait for 10 minutes and getting everything so precise that you, you want to. You're probably in within five seconds, you want to have your CPR perfectly with the metronome to not lean on the chest and to give all, and all the drugs have to be given in certain time increments as well. As well as the drugs have to be given in a certain order and you have to have the right drug for the right rhythm. So there is a lot, there's a lot going through their brain, but you saw it, it's incredibly quiet. And this scene was actually loud because I'm talking. But it's, it's, it's eerily quiet when you get up, you walk in and it's so quiet. It feels like something's wrong. I'm, I want to have Todd say something, but, um, do you have any questions for the crew or? Crew did I, I'll, I'll, so Daniel was our lead man, had to come in, so, um, maybe you can ask Danny if you have any question.
I, well, one comment first and then.
Okay.
So I, I mean, everybody know my brother was at St. My House and we, he would just, he thought he had a heart attack, whatever. So the crew did come in and did exactly what he said. I mean, this is amazing. Then my older brother in Los Angeles has also gone through the same thing. We thought he had a heart attack. But they're coming, so I can do comparison to what they did in California. The, the one that I want to emphasize is on the audio. They, they still want to send him to the hospital, but we have to wait for private ambulance to come in. To me, as a, as a family member, we just wanted to say, come on, come on, go. One question to you is maybe the Hollywood should tear Hollywood. In Hollywood, they always say you put them in an atmospheric way and stuff they're still doing, but please they never. Just, is that possible? Is that just where we're?
We almost never do that anymore.
Okay.
Because one, it's doing CPR in an ambulance without the Lucas device is very ineffective. And we get, if we don't get them back, we probably are not going to take them to the hospital. So that, that, we are going to work to get them back because if we work for an hour and we're not getting them back, they're, they're not coming back. And so there, it's, the other thing is with a bunch of people in the back of an ambulance with lights and sirens, it's dangerous for the public. It's dangerous for the people in the back and it's not really doing anyone any good. There are super, super rare situations where, you know, we might do that, but we don't, don't really do CPR unless they go into cardiac arrest. They're dry.
Right, maybe you're gonna tear it apart. Don't do that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get, I'll, I'll put that on my to do list.
Isn't it from the family point of view? It's the way, why don't you just go, go, go.
Yeah, they do, they do. And, and that's, and that's where we'll have the county chief and the MSO explaining that they have a higher chance of living if we work on them right here, because everything we're doing right there is what they're gonna do when they get to the emergency room. We've brought the emergency room to the living.
Okay, just quick. So I did, our people know that we're escorting a high one paramedic group visiting around. So I saw that in Shawline, I saw that in Gethaway. But I have to say, I'm more impressed. This, this really impressed me.
Impressive.
But also one question. So, so every single cardiac MSO will be there.
Yeah.
Because he got a machine, she got a machine.
With that being said, there were two going on at the same time. We've only got one in the south, sorry. There would be, but every battalion chief also has.
So the battalion chief will bring in the machine.
And that was part of the reason we, we did the 24 hour MSO years ago is because they can get there and support the crews and, and help provide another set of expertise on the scene.
The only thing else I'd like to offer is, uh, with my experience in EMS in two different states, this is the most impressive group I've ever seen operating. It is like an orchestra and everybody knows their instrument and they're able to play very well. I have been in situations where it did not go so well. And there was a lot of, you know, kind of pulling back and forth on the IV. No, I want to do the IV. You know, you do the IV, these kinds of things. So you know, you know how quickly that can degrade. So bravo to everybody. Well done.
Thank you.
My address is.
And then Todd, Todd actually helped Seattle on a, on a cardiac arrest the other day and he, he wanted to say something there.
Yeah, so two weeks ago, um, Citizen went down. We were able to do some CPR. A couple of things I noticed as the crews came in. First off, Seattle does a good job. So let, let's put that out there right now that, uh, everything they did would be online with us as far as what we have for expectations. But the obvious part to me was we're far more better coordinated. Our people are far better at what they do. And I'm not knocking Seattle. I'm just saying that I think we're actually on higher fall than a lot of people debate in, in doing CPR for sure. I noticed at the end of the call, when it came to the son that was left there as they're transporting a patient, um, he was lost and it took the security to kind of get him to the hospital. Seattle just didn't have the resources on scene to deal with it. They didn't have the MSO, they didn't have the county chief on scene. Um, the captain was left there to kind of try to clean up a little bit. The coordination of the whole event was just not what, it, it didn't compare to what we do. Even though they, they, they do good medicine and they, they have that, um, their, their system in place and they did a good job. I, I feel like, um, and I don't want to make it our worst day, but our worst day, I think any one of our crews, because of the system we run, would have been better. Real, real quick, Chief Anderson's being extremely humble. Uh, he and his daughter witnessed the person go down at the International District Station for the light rail. And Chief Anderson was the one who defibrillated this person with a defibrillator that was at that station. And his daughter was the one that was doing the CPR. And the person was discharged out of the hospital and is, I think, going to make a full recovery. So great job to Chief Anderson.
All right, uh, thank, really thank you guys so much. I think it's so important to, to have our commissioners see the just incredible work you do. So thank you very much. You're welcome. Welcome to takeoff, stick around. I'm gonna do a quick little PowerPoint if everyone wants to go back to their seats. Thank you guys so much.
Okay, Chief Maxwell, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks everyone for watching. So what you saw is the tiniest upper level crust of everything that goes on behind this. And so just to give you a quick overview of what happens underneath to get where we have got these amazing survival rates. As I told you before, it's the people, we have people that really care and they have, we have people. I don't know if you can see, they're very proud of their work. They're very proud that we do a good job. And they, and they don't just do the training, they do the training to do it better. That's all. It's pretty incredible, um, to have people like that sincerely. So I'm kind of reverse engineering this, so I'm gonna show you some of the parts that also contribute to our high cardiac arrest survival rates. So if you could do the next slide, please. So, you know, this is what it's all about. It's, it's about, you know, we've talked about this, this father who went into cardiac arrest and now he can be a father for his boys and be a wife. And there's the other thing is you have a productive member. They're excited. All right, next slide, please. So everything we're doing is to get to here. You can kind of see on the left side of the screen, that's a V-TAC and sometimes a V-5. So we're doing everything we can to get to the right side of the screen and get an organized rhythm. The heart's either not moving or not moving enough, or it's kind of would look like a bowl of jello. And that's with the left hand and we, we're trying to get into an organized rhythm so it can pump blood to the body. Next slide. And it really requires a systems approach. If you look here, we have the, uh, you can see there's dispatch here. We have telephonic CPR that is a critical thing to get that CPR going before we get there. We have pulse point. We, it alerts community members that someone in their vicinity needs CPR and tells them where AEDs are. Our act for say, we've trained 20,000 people because we need people to start doing CPR to, before we get there. All these little parts are contributing. And then there's some other interesting things too. We, we've worked, all of our law enforcement carries AEDs. Our outreach has worked. We started working immediately like when Mill Creek came on to, to work with their police department to get AEDs. We want to get that CPR going and we want to get that first shock on board. And then this is really interesting. Even our community medicine can probably contribute. They've done some, uh, studies in Australia. And the community, when you have a community medic program, it takes some of the isolation away from the senior population. And when they're more connected with the community, they're more likely to be seen going into cardiac arrest or be connected. So they've actually found in communities that have community paramedic programs also have higher survival rates. It was something I, if I hadn't seen the study, I would have never even thought to even study it. Uh, next slide, please. So our monitors, all the CPR, all the ventilations, everything is being put into a database. And then we go back and we look at was, I talked about our compression fraction. How many seconds during that whole hour were we not doing CPR? Because anytime not doing CPR, it lowers your chance of survival. Next slide. And then, uh, we talked a lot about the choreography. We, uh, our crews, we now go down and we help teach at the University of Washington. People come from all over the world and we help teach how to get higher cardiac arrest survival rates. Next slide. And then these are our numbers. This is our data for this year. Overall, we had an 18.3% survival rate, which is double the national average. And our, our bystander, our youth team rate that we talk about each year is just shy of 60%. We maintain that year after year. So we also have consistency in our program. Those numbers are, are incredible and they mean, and they're staying incredible. But it's also low warrants. These are real people. So if you look at the bottom, these were the different cardiac rhythms. Discharged alive, three, discharged alive, 20, discharged alive, four. These are humans that were dead. They're clinically dead. And we brought them back to life and they left the hospital and they're with their families, they're with their children. So next slide, please. These, these are all just, these aren't all of our survivors, but these are all people that were brought back to life from really good cardiac arrest, uh, resuscitation programs. These are, you know, we talked about all the numbers, but every two weeks in our community, someone is brought back from death and they're walking out of the hospital. That's pretty incredible. Every two weeks that someone probably would be dead and they're alive. So with that, I would take any questions.
Questions to the board members? Commissioner Chan?
Yeah, um, you remember in the prior, uh, you mentioned, you mentioned one word to reiterate my mindset. Not all agency create equal, something like that. Remember that, Willie?
Yeah, if, if you've seen one EMS system, you've seen one EMS system.
Right, I, I think this, I've been very careful. I don't want to downgrade the other.
Everybody's doing the best they can.
Right, but I think this to me is from the commission point of view. Now I'm ready to prepare every single bunch of, you ask. My, my trying to tell you that is that.
Right down, down. Yeah.
I was, I was, I was at the Edmund waterfront. They have this nonprofit organization about our burden was there. So of course I thank them for, hope thank them for giving us the money and all that stuff. But I think it would be good, uh, you might have done it already, to do all cities there. Mill Creek, whatever, give it, get a chance to show that maybe a shortened part. I think, I think they will definitely, uh, appreciate that now including our admins, uh, city, the contract city. I think what I hear from our last meeting, by what you did with a good job presentation, they keep on figuring the past and they thinking, oh, we can start our own, saying, or the same thing. I, I want them to see this is the critical part, right? Another thing is that is intentionally, when you put a picture there, it's not just old people. Is that young people can be heart attack too, right?
Especially with this opiate, fentanyl epidemic.
Oh, okay.
But it was happening before. Actually, one of the kids there was hit by a baseball in the chest. A, a real heart hit in the chest can put your heart into that fibrillating rhythm too. Just playing baseball, he went into cardiac arrest.
I, I would support you. I don't know. It's up to the chief. I think this is a good way to, 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 to do that, to, to, to get everybody know, you know, today's. It's not just for old people, it's just for everybody.
Thank you. It, it is for everybody because it can be a drowning, it can be an overdose, it can be a, a heart condition. But yeah, I mean, thanks for letting us do that demonstration because I think sometimes we, we get into a lot of, a lot of stuff in this room and I think we are all in this room for that right there. That is, and I think that's such a ground, it's grounding for me every time. This is why we're here. We, if we're not doing that, you know, it doesn't matter that we're here. That is what, that is the essence of what we, which should drive what we do. So.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yeah, Sean, so what's, uh, Shoreline and District Seven's survival rate? I, I, I didn't say that. That'd be funny.
No, I know, actually.
Because, you know, we're admins, they need to know why they should wholeheartedly just jump in our boat.
Yeah, um, they actually, I, I haven't seen their, you, you receive it confidentially and you, you only, you don't have to share it.
Yeah.
I haven't seen that. You don't have to share your cardiac arrest. You get it.
Oh, okay. Ah, that should be public information. I think I'll do a, I'll with records request.
I, I can say this, we've been consistently, we've consistently, our cardiac, our cardiac rescue Bible statistics statistically have been very, very good for many years. For our organization over time, we continue, a- as you see, we continue, Sean and the rest of the group and then, and the crews in the street continue to refine their craft and the sickest people we go on. And so we've been very, very, very consistent.
And, and that's important, but I think it's take, it's taken 10 or 15 years of everybody focused on this to get there. That's, you don't get here overnight. And so it takes years and years to develop a solid program. And, and I think you're right, Bob. I mean, the, the consistency is important too, to be able to keep producing those good numbers year after year.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, just, uh,
go ahead and do more specific. Commissioner Fairhanes has a question.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Chief Maxwell, thank you very much. Chief Hughes, thank you very much for the, the crew demonstration. And we didn't actually see it activated, but I do believe that the Lucas machine is a very impressive tool. I understand that in the RFA we currently possess four.
Yes.
As you know, our call volume is doing, is there, is there a discussion that needs to take place to make our commissioners aware that A, our Lucas devices might be aging and need replacement? And B, do we have a need to expand six within the RFA? Should we be budgeting for something like that and prepared to approve, uh, those requests?
Potentially. I mean, I. Potentially, I mean, I think. You know, that those would be discussions if if we had like more than one MSO or something, but right now our we have one MSO and three VCs, they're all equipped. And the science tells us not to put it on until after we get pulses. Because they're they're finding that. Humans can still probably do a better job, which is really weird. And most people don't know that research. So a lot of people are throwing technology on because we all like technology, right? And they throw the technology on, but what happens is. If you haven't really practiced that, now you have a gap in CPR. Now your compression fraction has gotten worse because you've created less time on the chest doing CPR. Which is directly related to survival rates. So the science says. Use it um when it'll have a better benefit. Don't use it all the time, but I know we have surrounding agencies. They don't send as many people or resources to cardiac arrest, so they need to au- augment the resources with that. But since we do it after we get pulses, we can wait for the battalion or the MSO to get there because it's not a a initial intervention.
I guess my point is that more of a logistics and support.
Yeah.
Uh thing within the next year, we should maybe forecast for upgrades. I'm sure there's a newer device that has spinners on it or blinking lights or something that's cool that make it, you know, more efficient. I just submit to the board that that would be something we should keep on the radar. Who knows, maybe one one on the boat. Uh you know, maybe one of the hand me downs and get the news for the MSOs to go out and and appeal.
No, those are good things because they're all, like I said, there's those tiny technologies and and I would probably. Uh defer to Chief Hughes, who'd probably defer to his team on on the specific needs. But I I mean, we appreciate that. A lot. I just don't want to speak prematurely or not talk to the experts because they're the experts now.
That's okay. Maybe I want to break. Yeah, right. Absolutely. I just like us to be prepared as bodies for our field people.
Yes.
Uh and in any any capacity we can. And obviously, this is an important tool. Um you know, this is obviously second to the talent that we actually employ at South County. Yeah, it was second to our people, so.
No, thanks very much. Yeah. Yeah, definitely people over hardware.
Next, Commissioner Lawrence.
Um. I have some thoughts to share. And I've had these thoughts prior to this, but this reinforced it. And from information I've got various chiefs here. Um and MSOs. The uh. That um. Let me start by saying. I went to the maritime academy and they come out as a third major third agenda. So I was third major. And so at the academy is. Young people, you're really energized, you get your feature ahead of you. And then I go out to sea on a ship and it's filled with basically brain dead people, but this would not help at all. And it was very depressing. And then you go to a ship where. People are energetic and they're thinking of new ideas and. That's a whole different world. It's like, wow, I love this ship versus I hate being here. So and I thought this before, this is that what we do here at South County is unique. I didn't know that it's still what got here. But people are really energized. They want to do a great job and they want to be around people that do a great job. And so that's what I see. What you created this system, I learned a bit more about how it's synergistic with fighting fire. It's the whole, it's different. When you guys thought it up. And. So that's why, even though I'm a brutal person in in general and cost conscious and. So we're apparently, we're a lean machine. That way. But I don't mind saying we'll pay the hard, we'll pay the most to get the best people. Because the best people are energetic and they attract other good people and also support that. Forever. And it's the arguments we use with admins. Um is why they should pay pay up and join us. So, yeah.
Well, I. Yeah, I think you bring up a really good point because. People want to be on a winning team and when they see. We have innovative programs, when they see we have high cardiac arrest survival rates. People want to come test with us. That that's recruitment right there. Everyone wants to be on a winning team. Yeah. For sure. And I didn't, I didn't notice and. Uh MSO, herbert's gonna come in for this, but she, I thought you'd left. She is the one.
So he wasn't saying anything.
Yeah. No, but she's the one who does uh all the data for our cardiac arrest. She is the person that oversees our tens of thousands of reports going into our medical reporting. System and making sure the data is accurate so we can report.
Maybe she knows what shoreline and district.
It's blind data. All of the distributing departments and the whole state and national, but it's blind data unless you want to share with.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
They're comparable, but we do have good numbers.
Yeah, and we just, yeah, and I just, I I can't express. It's the energy of our people. They they care about their craft and that is the that is the only reason this works. If our people didn't really care, this would not work.
Yeah, I might just go for another term because this is a lot of fun. We've been dealing with good people, like, yeah, so.
Next up, Commissioner Chan, then we're going to move on to the agenda. Commissioner Chan?
Yeah, uh. First of all, we're managing risk, right? I mean, the resources, I don't think you guys shy when you need something. Let me ask you this this way then. Is this heart attack is the most time sensitive versus accident, somewhere bleeding? You know, and that type of thing, that's that's my. Wh- what is more really critical? We need to, you know, not just one particular thing, other thing we need to consider too.
Well, that that's what our our act, our act program is based on cardiac arrest, you know? You can hemorrhage out in five minutes and die. Opiate will make you stop breathing. This one is your hardest stop. So those are, those are, you know, definitely the top three.
So so you can quickly, we cannot just focus on this versus the other accident type of thing?
An interesting thing that they've also shown though, if you are really good at cardiac arrest. Uh you're usually good at the other stuff.
But but I'm saying timing wise, that's that's critical.
Yeah, but you can bleed out and we have, we get full blood, right? Um opiate, you know, we have a strong, you know, overdose response program. Yeah, I mean. Those are, the only other thing would be an anaphaxis, like a bee sting, but we carry epinephrine for that, so.
Okay, yeah, maybe I ask you more offline.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, thank you so much. Thanks, dear.
All right, next up on the agenda, we have an executive session to review the performance of a full employee. Chief Heisman, maybe. But twenty minutes till uh ten twenty-five, not that long?
I would think twenty minutes should be fine.
Twenty minutes, okay.
I I'm I'm hoping it's going to be plenty.
Yeah, that should be.
Some of it's going to be based on the board.
So we'll recess into the executive session uh until ten twenty-five. That gives us twenty minutes. Then we'll probably take a short break after that and then go back to a regular session with that organizational chair discussion after that. So uh we will be in our recess for executive session. Thank you.
So you need a, a chat then to.
Uh you can bring it.
Session has been extended for five minutes. The executive session has been extended for five minutes. The special meeting is called back to order at ten thirty-five. We are calling a. Eight-minute recess until. Sorry, how long? Uh five-minute resource recess until ten forty AM.
Okay, go. All right, we are back on the record and ready to move forward in the agenda. Our next item up is seven AM. Organization chart discussion and Chief Heisman will give us off on that. You should have two. Two handouts. You choose to talk a little bit about what we've got here.
So so um. You you've got, you've got to, I gave the the first org chart we gave you was one which just had the physicians. Um and not people in them. Um and just kind of to go off, kind of uh when when. I I can't remember when we implemented this last org chart, but it was a conversation between the executive staff, Chief Hobus. Um and part of it was um making sure that chief span of control was appropriate. Um and and really the long term. The long term of how we got to the org chart you're looking at and and. I guess I'd ask, look at the ones without the names and and um you know, we talked about the fact that we're historically, we've all. Were a conglomerate or a conglomerate of two and three station fire departments over the last twenty-four years, right? Um now we're a fifteen station department, over four hundred employees. Um. Um and in the fire service, when you're a smaller entity, things tend to funnel always through the chief's office. Right? It tends to be the bottom that's point. Um that makes sense when you're two and three stations. Doesn't make sense when you're an organization of our size. And so part of the organizational chart that we did. Can't remember when it was, like last year or at the end of twenty-two, the changes that were made by um Chief Hobus. Um was to. Start empowering and 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 not let all the decision points that happen be the chief comes from the chief's office. You're right, the chief, chief being the CEO, you know, has, there's certain decisions that have to fall in that office's plate. But it's it's not very many, right? It's it's a small amount. Um and start letting the executive, and when I say executive. Um. Staff, I'm talking our directors, our communications director, our HR director, our finance director, our assistant chiefs. You know, and they have a function and they they're they are empowered to make decisions. I don't necessarily know if we've. Um fully done that, right? I think a lot of things just out of. Nature for most of us that are in the role, follows through the fire chief's office. And and to be honest, we're too big of an organization. There's too many things going on. And the reality is, you know, successor plan has been a big deal and. We have folks in positions and the reason they're there is they're decision makers at their wealth. We need to empower them to do that. So part of the org chart and the development of that was for exactly that. Um you know, have our executive leadership make those decisions that they need to make. They'll know when I need to know about that. They'll know when we need to bring decisions back to the board. There's a, there's a a learning curve that goes with that over time. Um then the then the second piece of that is 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 the this, I'm going to call it senior staff, which is our deputy chiefs and our managers. Right? And then they need to be empowered to make their decisions. And as that works, then, you know, the battalion chiefs and and the rest of the folks, you know, are empowered to do what we're hiring them to do. Um which does a couple things. Makes us efficient. Um it empowers the workforce for the the positions we have them in. Um and it it is a component of successor plan, right? In other words, if I have folks that fill a role and they get a decision if they unless they come through my office and let me bless a decision. That there is no successor planning happening there. It's and and quite frankly, from my perspective. If that's what we're developing or we have, it's easier for me just to make decisions if I'm the one that was going to make them. That's not how we function here. It's not how we want to. So that's kind of how we got to this place, although. Now with the change of leadership and stuff. I'm making a very conscious effort and I've been talking, I I talked to the executive staff, I've talked to um. Not not the civilian side of the management staff yet, but the DCs, I've talked to the VCs. Um I've got meetings coming with the rank and file. That is the message for me is people are empowered. To do what what we've hired them to go do. That doesn't mean you're not held accountable. Um but you're empowered to go do that. Um and and my ask to them was this, is you need to know why you make the decisions you make. Right? In other words, critically think it through. And it and and nobody's perfect and we all make mistakes and that's okay. That's how you learn. Um that. I did say though, if you say, well, I just don't agree with that policy, so I did it another way, probably isn't isn't the answer you want to give me when people come. So that's the overarching. Background of how we developed the current org chart that you're looking at was to get span of control. Um to a a reasonable level um throughout the whole organization. And so um you have um. And I'll just go through them. Um communications division. This is becoming more and more and more, this is the left side of of the chart. Um Chief Hobus created a director of communications. There's a little bit of work that me and HR need to do with that division because we created the position. And didn't do some of the job description and some of that work that's in the progress of being done. Um but um communications for an organization of our size, both internal, external. And the folks that work underneath that division, so our public records. Um obviously, our PIO, um our community educators, and I know there's lots of places that our public educators could be housed. Within. You know, some organizations having the fire marshal's office, we chose to do it under. Communications division is because everything they do when they touch the public is is public outreach and communications at some level. And we need to be coordinated as we do that. Um and and I will say this, last year we've been quite successful. Um and so there's the communication division. Um obviously, we have um what what I'm going to call is is the number two, which was the role I feel. Um and we kind of have the other two assistant chiefs kind of going up to. Kind of a a different way, but we have a, I'm going to say a COXO format for those that are have military background. Um. Um that has worked and I'd like I'm I'd like to keep that. Um and then we have, so we have our three assistant chiefs that each have a couple deputy chiefs. Um below them, um based on the respective disciplines in that, so. Um logistics, um fire marshal's office, training, EMS, operations and safety. Um I will tell you that um. Um the assistant chiefs are going to go in a room and make sure. What should, what should that look like? Should the current deputy chiefs that are in charge of their respective divisions stay? Because this is about education, it's about succession plan, it's about growth. Um what should that look like? I don't know what that is in that context. Um I think, you know, Jason, Sean and Todd are going to have to go. And go in a room and and you know, Jason, since he's been assistant chief, has been in charge of training and operations. The question that I I just asked Jason before the before the we went back in session is, you know, is it time for you to do? Something different to expand your. You're right, and your successor plan organizationally. Sean's been EMS. In this organization ever since he's been administratively, is it time to move some of those around? Because cohesively, the three ACs, I mean, they're they're a tight group. Um and so. It doesn't matter if Jason's been operations for the last five years and we and one of the other two ACs take it on. They work so close together that it's not like we're going to have it misses. Um and where the division chiefs lie, I think there's work to be done there to fill in names. I think the the titles that you see in the blank um still hold true organizationally for us. And then we have the CFO, um and a finance division that's pretty straightforward. Um and um and then obviously our HR division are pretty straightforward. And I think, I think this org chart over the last. I know it was working well when Chief Hobus was here. I can tell you it worked extremely well. When I was in the in the acting role and that was um out for a while. Um and for the first, I mean, for this year and and it does, it does work and I'm very comfortable. At least with the executive side. And the senior side of the org tour. Um I know there's been conversations about potentially a CA, CAO. Um I'm not necessarily in support of that. Here's why. Um I think we have. We have enough high level. Staff in the organization. Um. I will tell you, um maybe part of why the CAO conversation came up was some of the things I do. Um I will tell you that I'm very comfortable with our executive staff and our senior staff across the organization, both uniforms, Savina like. We have an exceptionally competent. Organ- organization and leadership at those levels. What I need. Is support gaps filled. And and I use, I'll use logistics as an example, and this is, it's it's because it's an easy one and it was worked under me is. I've got a logistics division that's responsible for fifty fire stations, forty thousand calls a year. I don't know how much, how much of stuff we buy, six million dollars product every year, fleet facilities. And and I've got a deputy chief and two logistic specialists and that's. And and I've got a deputy chief and two logistics specialists and that's it. They don't have any admin support. What we need organizations are filling in the admin support for for those. Task driven positions. So my senior staff and my executive staff have time to get their head above the water. And think and grow. Right now, our management staff, senior staff. Tends, because I don't necessarily have all those pieces in place, they tend to. Do data entry. They tend to, because we're lean. And they know they gotta get the work done and they do and and really nobody and I'm nobody's complaining. This is the vice. But what I do know is, you know, my EMS chief or my logistics chief or my safety chief. Don't have enough time to get up. And read to say, what should our strategic region be? One of the things that. Logistics is is I need to know how much space we need to inform the capital safety plan. To maintain operations for six months if the supply chain stops. Well, I gotta give them time to do that. And when I've got, you know, Tina Jim and and James Curtis, Chief Curtis, doing data entry and. And work that's not. I'm not saying beneath them, but the wrong people doing the wrong. Job, I need to fix that first to get them up. To solve some of those problems, create efficiencies, to actually realize. What staff do I really need? The admin support staff, I know. So. So that's my, that's my conversation with regards to the CAO. I've had some conversations with Commissioner Wittes, with the government liaison position. I know that's been talked about. I'm not necessarily think that's a bad idea. I just don't think we're ready yet and and here's why. If we're gonna, if we're going to bring in and and that's, that's not a low level position in my eyes, that's a, that's a fairly significant position. But I think if we're gonna go down that path, we're gonna be committed politically. And when I say that, I mean engaged. In other words, from the electeds. To the chief staff, right? And and I don't believe we're there yet organizationally, right? I think we need to get there. I think it's important that we stay politically engaged at the national, local, regional levels, state level. I just don't, I just don't think we have a framework of what that means for us organizationally, i.e. the board. And and senior staff. I think it's something that I would like to keep on the radar. And continue to talk about and address and then sometime in the future, if we have a. A a further conversations about what does being politically engaged mean? And it's not just senior staff. We already do that, right? We keep tabs of what's going on. For the most part, and we're very successful in getting legislation passed that we need passed. But like Commissioner Wittes was talking about, there are certain things that happen down in Olympia on the federal level. That are impact us, but we don't realize they impact us until it's too late. But if we're gonna do that, I think we need to have a, be very deliberate. And I think there's a role for governance to play in that conversation. And a role for senior staff to play and we need to be in concert. And define what we wanna do in that arena. As an organization before we put somebody in a position because I don't know what we need. So. And the rest of the org chart conversation for me is, is I need a little bit of time. To figure out people stuff. I will tell you what I've asked staff to do and and Chief Maxwell and Chief Isaac Taylor did a little bit of this when I was on vacation. Is. I need to know what your gaps in your divisions are. I don't, and 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 the answer that's not, I need three people. I need to know what the gaps are. In other words, tell me what the gap is. I can't keep up on X, whatever X is. And and then we'll take that information and figure out. You know, what does that mean? Is there efficiencies that have been done to fix that? Or is it people, what people are? But we historically said, well, I just need a bottom. Well, in. As you know, during the budget conversation last year, I need better explanation than I need a bottom. And and Chief Maxwell and and Chief Isaac Taylor, when I was gone, asked their respected staff. What are the gaps and define the gap? So tell me you need people, tell me the gap you need filled. And then we'll figure out how to do that. So that's a work of progress. That will, you know, inform budget, that'll inform org chart. Because there, you know, everything that I just talked about, pertaining to the org chart. Has a dollar attached to it that's part of the budget process as we go, continue the conversation. So. You know, we have more work to do. I, you know, I I haven't been in the seat for very long. Thanks to the board, two weeks of that, I was actually out on vacation and was one hundred percent disconnected. So I will say thank you for that. But we do have work to do as as executive staff and senior staff to. You know, look at what this is and and what really do we need? And what should our ask be and be able to to find the gaps we're filling? With people asking to have it. So that's my. My conversation that I wanted to actually have a comment about with the org chart and with that. Cheryl asked for questions.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll start the conversation. Just one second. We are, we have Chief Alex Hawley from. The Briar Police Department scheduled at eleven and this is a good conversation. I think we're gonna have it, won't have it in two minutes. So whatever, we'll need to break for when Chief Holly gets here, but we'll pick up a conversation afterwards whether that's. I'm not sure how long he's gonna last, but whatever. And then we'll have lunch at noon, but we'll come back to this because I think it's a good conversation. We'll start with.
Okay, Chief Eastman. You know, I was the main proponent and talking about the CAO. Because my concern was, who's gonna do, you did. And so over the weeks and even just today. You satisfied that. Okay, alright, so you got it covered. In fact, I talked to Chief Anderson a while ago and he was like, yeah, I'm learning this stuff with like. Oh wow, I didn't know firemen learned that stuff. Only Bob Eastman does that. Okay, so. Yeah, and also I learned a little bit today too, kind of saw, this is an org chart, but. Chief Anderson's talking to Jennifer and learning, well, Jennifer learned the Gushman and you guys are interconnected. You know, you don't like, oh, gotta go through the command, I can't talk to, no, I gotta go through, blah, blah, I'm not stifled. No, so there's. All these inner connections you guys developed and like a circulatory system for knowledge, so. I will back off. I mean, that was just, what are we gonna do? And you gotta figure that. Okay, so I'll back.
I do appreciate the support because I know why it was brought forward and and staff recognizes that and is greatly appreciative of.
Little bit harder because he's like, oh man, that guy, was he just shut up? Yeah, we gotta find the answer before, yeah, just to shut him up. I know. So. Now, you were mentioning, there are some more bodies that you do need. You just don't know yet where.
You can go ahead and.
You don't need more. You don't need more, you don't want another, you don't even need for another assistant chief or another deputy chief.
Not right now.
Okay, so it's just. And when we took on Mill Creek, we still had all the other stations, even though they weren't far, they were. Contracted, but still, so we added Mill Creek. We didn't add any employees because of Mill Creek, so that had a little bit more. Work to do. And so. You're working on the. Support staff.
Yeah, alright, yeah, we need, we need, we need the appropriate people doing appropriate support work and and. I don't exactly know what all that is. That's what we're working.
Yeah, thank you.
Other comments, questions, thoughts? Yeah, Chief Willis.
Is the government liaison side, the the part about dealing with elected officials that are out there and. I know in the past that's something we had a big problem with. Inside, we do great, we do that, but we have, what is it, twenty eight council people within our district. And another four cities, so another twenty eight surroundings. We've got twelve state representatives, we got. County representatives and we're behind the eight ball in one deal. So we had that tip thing that came out, the. Attendant. Whatever it was, but I mean, and if a city imposes that, that can actually lower our space of collection in that area. Not the whole entire area, which is that part of the area. The state commissioners are down there this year. Trying to change some of that. They did, they were successful. But it's so easy to change the laws when it's in the House of Lords. You can just go up there, you can meet with them and say, hey, here's a problem. We can be on the association watching the city side so we know what's going on. And then we're not getting hurt by that. And trying to play catch up with it, some as simple as pay for fire commissioners. It was for fire commissioners, does that for fire districts, does that include the art maintenance person? And so that was a big issue that went to legal, just before it got out of the Senate. Before it went to the House just because of that. To make sure, do we have to put in three letters or do we have to go back and try and change the law? So that's what I look at that I see that we're in need of. And again, when that happens is. When it's not there, but we are a pretty powerful bunch of elected officials. We represent, what, twenty, twenty-five percent of the county. We're actually a pretty big organization that should be a little bit more politically involved. And should we know? And that that's all I say in the, trying to support some sort of position like that. I'm not saying we should do that today. You know, budgets are for budgets and that's when we should start learning things, but somebody that we can actually count that whether. Yeah, worship both sides, worship their relationships, the commissioners and the. Chief officers, they would all give the benefit of the doubt. So that's my little soapbox and we'll bring it back up in the pod.
Other thoughts? Comments? I want to chime in with two things. One of the things that I enjoy about having this discussion every so often is it's a good time to. Step back and look at that whole organization chart and think about what our future needs are. And so. The two things that I'm thinking about, one of which we've talked about, one which we haven't. Uh, kind of tagging on to the government affairs position that Commissioner Wittes. Is that. We have a deficit there in our ability to maintain communications. And good relations with all of our. All of the cities that we serve, either the federal annex to us or by contract. And the challenge is not in the good times. Because in the good times, we, you know, nobody's. That there aren't, aren't a lot of problems. It's when the bad times come. And they do come along every so while. And there we really need our partners to pick up the phone, not pick up the press release. And so, but as you, as councils change and as boards change, we change. You know, we're on six year cycles for election and councils are on four year cycles. You know, I've seen a lot of turnover in those councils and I don't know them as well as I used to. And it gets hard over time because there is, there are so many and they change. And then you know some, but you don't know them all and there's not a great opportunity to like go. And speak with them. They're not really expecting you to come to a council meeting and talk to them and it's a little odd. You you can go to some of the social functions, tree lighting, other events. That can be kind of hit and miss. Sometimes they're there, sometimes they're not. So what I, I. I look at it as building relationships. And those relationships can fray over time just because you're not talking with them on a regular basis. They they don't know who you are, they're not your phone number and no, they might see you in a newspaper article or something, but. There's no relationship there. And so then when the bad times come. What do they do? And hopefully they pick up the phone. But sometimes they pick up the press release. And so. We have tried to address that in different ways. One way, we had spent a number of years now. We assigned assistant chiefs to be the liaison to cities and you know, there was. Great optimism that, you know, assistant chiefs and deputy chiefs were gonna go to the. A Malibu City Council meeting and just be there and be available and say hello. And but the trouble is that stuff comes up. And we get busy and then we don't. And then it just kind of falls apart and it never really got off the ground. So that was an interesting idea as a structural change using the resources that we have. But it didn't really come to pass. And so I still think we, you know, another alternative which we. Know that we've really tried is, you know, board liaison, commissioner liaisons to each of the cities. The idea that, oh, you're gonna go to one city council meeting a month. And kind of the same, on the same idea what we did with the assistant chiefs years ago. And it sounds good. But gets really hard time wise, like trying to get, and then you're gonna show up and they're like, why are you here? We're not talking about fire. You know, are you spying on us? What are you, you know, what are you doing this? So that gets a little odd, but practically speaking, legitimately it gets hard. I'm not sure that that's a great alternative, although. Kind of a board council rela- uh, uh, level, it works nicely. I just don't think practically that works well. So I have been thinking about this government liaison position potentially. Somebody that is, you know, in their, you know, core work functions. Is they are gonna go to these meetings, not every meeting, but like. Imagine if the tasking was just, you're gonna go to each of these city council meetings, one meeting per month. I mean. That's a fair number of meetings right there and you can't just drop in and leave. And then as Commissioner Wittes identified, we've got our state legislative delegation. We don't do a great job keeping up with them. We have our congressional delegation. There's actually more we could do at the federal level if we were really interested and we're not doing much there. And so I just wonder if there is more of a need to to tackle that. There would have to be other pieces to it. But that could be monitoring the legislation. Actually, you know, essentially. I remember, I'm trying to think now, it was maybe two years ago or three years ago, Chief Maxwell, we pushed. An item that you brought forward. Maybe it was related to community paramedic, change the community param- and I can't remember what's that changed with, but it was, what did it say changed? We were the driver. And I know Chief Maxwell was going to Olympia. That's a huge task to, I mean, I know you can zoom it in. But nothing's better than in person showing up at the legislator's office and pressing the, pressing the flesh. And that is, you know, that could potentially be something we could do more of. So I just wonder if that is a need. Of ours and that might be a way to fill it. And I'm just talking about, I'm not saying, oh, just, but I'm just thinking about that because I've seen that as a need over time and. You know, we have more cities than we did in the past. And maybe we'll have more in the future and. It's nice to say, oh, Chief, Chief Eastman, you just go do it, you go. But practically speaking, there's not enough time to run the whole organization and do that. It's kind of this like external affairs director, person that can. Focus on that. Uh, could be a need that we have going forward. The second thing that nobody has mentioned, but as we get to the size that we are. And I don't know if we have enough full time work for it, but I wanna bring it up because we haven't talked about it in ages here. And that has potentially an in-house counsel. Do we have enough legal need to justify an in-house counsel position? Potentially saving some money and having legal advice available all the time. The downside is lawyers these days specialize in one area, maybe two. It's very rare you have a lawyer that specializes in ten. And the, the area that we're involved in, which is kind of municipal law generally. We have one special section, you know, fire law, which is its own thing, but a lot of our. Government functions are this broader municipal law section. Uh, there are attorneys that do that and and do the, you know, the, the HR work, the public records work. Kind of that general advice counseling, not litigation, that would be separate. But that type of advising in-house, are we at the point now where we are big enough to justify that? And maybe you'd say, well, today we aren't. But let's say we added a city with a hundred thousand population and a whole bunch more fire stations. We got more and more issues. And at some point, are we spending more on outside counsel that potentially we could spend in-house? And get more advice and more readily available, i.e. down the hallway. A lot depends on who you get and the person, personality, if it's a bad personality, then. It could be bad. But I just see that as we get bigger and have more and more legal needs. Not litigation needs, because that would have to go outside, I believe. But. Inside advising on these various subjects, is that something to think about? So I just raised that, you know, I work in the legal field, so you know, I have a particular eye for. Our legal needs over time and I have, I thought about it in the past. And as we get bigger, I see potentially more and more of that and just a. And as we get bigger, I see potentially more and more of that, and uh, just a thought. Uh, about what, uh, what we may need, so. Anyways, other thoughts?
Yeah.
Questions, Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I can follow up on your, on your thoughts in there. Right now, actually, our executive secretary have done a lot of work. On legislation, or maybe follow up on that type of thing. Maybe that's a position to think of. I think when I first got in here, I, I have this. Thinking. Electric official property, electric official and sat after sat. That kind of concept. So maybe that person will be under. In our executive secretary, that type of thing, kind of expanding on that. Another thing that gave me a thought is about. The attorney. Uh, we need to look at the total fees that we pay, how we pay, I don't. I used to keep track of that, we're. Yeah, we're only asking to pay. Maybe that. That person can also be our, go down to Olympia, Olympia. Knowing the law, whatever that is, right? I know there's a lot of single practitioners. In the fire district. Serving fire district, not as huge as. Rich and other, other firms in there, so that might be a good. Good position to have, right? And, and then because they have no fire law, they can law it. And all that things too.
Yeah, so some lawyers do, do law it, so.
Yeah, yes.
Or they're easier because they know the laws and arts. Yeah.
Commissioner Morris?
Interesting ideas, uh. Maybe some, someone that's, uh, wants to back off from. Rubbing money and just want to do more public service that has a, that's a lawyer. And uh, the uh. And uh, then at least. He would be able to cut down the outside legal expenses by talking to the expect person. So we don't have to pay someone to be here, spend a lot of money per hour or watch our meeting. He can reduce it down to five minutes. Uh, that would relate to us the answers. And if we're all done with um. This subject, I do have something to mention, but I can wait till this is.
Yeah, let's, let's uh, let's wrap up this discussion, Chief Maxwell.
Well, I just wanted to add on to, I, I think it was a great discussion, but Commissioner Kenny, Commissioner Witt. Um, I haven't gone to one of the international chiefs conferences in a while, but that's where I spent the last week. And it was a good reminder of, of the need. On how if you go down and have a voice and talk about to Medicare and Medicaid on what they reimburse for ambulance transport. Or G E M T, or, or how they're going to uh, use the first net for disaster communications. Like you said. It's amazing how one person going into their office, they will change a sentence in some of those things and. Uh, we haven't done that as much in the last few years. But it, it's the people who show up, make the decisions, kind of thing, so. And sometimes it's shocking what you can do. By talking to some of these either legislators or even the, the director of the program, so. Um, it was just good, we used to do that more. And being down there this week, I realized how powerful it is to have these one-on-one conversations, so it just. The federal level can be important to it.
And you add uniform versus, I mean, there's a whole, there's a whole lot of conversation goes along, how does that make up work? Um, and I, and I think, I like, I think the in, in-house councils and. Wasn't even on my radar, very interesting conversation, I mean, I think that's something staff will back and look. Because that's, that's intriguing, um, because, because I know everybody in this room using legal counsel on a fairly frequent basis. Um, I'll go back to the government liaison position and Commissioner Kenny, your comments. Our relationship with the cities have changed, right? They were all contract cities, they're not contract cities anymore. So, so what does that actually mean? Because. We're our own, I mean, the relationship. The relationship itself has changed. What does that actually mean? I, I mean, when I go back to say, I don't think we're ready for that yet, I think we need to have. Continued conversation on that topic, because what is the expectation? You know, when they were contract cities, we were according to annex in. Having somebody there and it, right, important for different reasons than where we are today. Now that they're part of our RFA, but really. We're our own governmental entity and they're their own governmental entity, how does that work? And when I, when I talk about needing to have that conversation all the way out. To help figure out what we do in that category, it's, it's exactly that, it's. You know, how we deal with the cities, when we want to put a, a chief officer, assign each one, most of them are contracts. And we had a different kind of relationship to bring them in, now that they're in. What is, what, what does that actually mean? And I don't think, I mean, I'm still grappling with. Right, as, as the chief, what does that mean? It doesn't mean that, you know, that. Or does it, maybe it does, is, hey, we need you to do an ops research with the lights, we're not in that arena anymore, it's different. So, um, you know, do three to more like state electives and. Federal electives, I don't know, that's, when I talk about continuing the conversation, that's, that's. The context I'm talking about is, what does it actually mean for us?
But Chief, don't we ignore them at our peril? That's what I want.
Well, no, we, we, well, staff.
I'm not saying you're saying that, I'm just, um, rhetorically, yeah.
We could, right, I mean, if we don't address it, that's what will happen.
Yes.
Right, and we want to get ahead of it.
But I think by, by theory.
Commissioner Dan next, then Commissioner Swisher, then.
I think by theory, whoever represents, we, right now district, right? So like. Uh, Commissioner Witt, should we talk to, we, um. Uh, Mucry, because he is a representative. In that area, right, so I, just by basic now, that's what, what he's supposed to be. Right, so you, whoever on the district should remember that.
Great conversation.
Yes, not switcher.
I have a couple of thoughts on these topics. One that I will give you where having in-house counsel is concerned. At one point, City of Breyer had a single. Attorney that handled everything for us. And generally, one attorney is not well-versed enough in all the different aspects. That you deal with. To be the one to address all your different legal options. We went to a firm because they have the people who have all the different expertise and all the different spots we need. So that's just my thought on that, because I will tell you that it, that it's a very, very hard. And it, it was a bad thing, we were getting real bad advice, um, for twenty-seven years. From someone who, um. That did things with code to try and protect himself. He, he wrote into code that he was covered by civil service. And, and every time a mayor would bring it up, that, you know, there was something. You know, they'd like change, he'd go, oh, no, I'm, I'm protected by this, and you, you can't get rid of me unless it's by mutual agreement, and I'm like. When I got there, I was like, what are you guys talking about? That's just bizarre, um, so be careful with that. Um, where government liaison is concerned. One of the problems that you guys run into with those of you who are supposed to represent. The different areas is like. I'm, I look for an example. City of Breyer holds their meetings the exact same time you guys do. So for the person who is supposed to represent that area. To attend one of their meetings, you've got one shot a month, you've got the fourth meeting of the month. You'll have that same problem in the other areas. So finding yourself a person who can re- represent for you, kind of like I'm doing currently. For the City of Breyer. Would be beneficial, because I will tell you, and I've said it before. Ed was, Ed, I would refer to Ed as. One of my fire chiefs. And there was this long line of, you know. People who I wouldn't have called my fire chief, because I didn't know them from out. In comes that. That became my fire chief. I can say the same thing about Bop Easton. There's a relationship that has been built. And while your chiefs don't have all the time in the world to build those relationships. Maybe you, maybe you even go down one more step and, especially because you're trying to. Build that continuity of succession planning. Maybe it's your deputy chiefs that you assign to be a liaison to your cities. And let them start building relationships, because. They are requested to be here and attend meetings. Much less often than your assistant chiefs and your fire chief. And that's just, just a thought, because it, I do think it's really important. A good example of that is, um, you guys are gonna be putting a benefit charge. On the ballot. Who are the people that you need to back you and show support? There are the cities that you serve. If, if you get people out there who are, you know, sitting on. You know, city councils that are writing your con statements. Against you or out there talking to the press, saying that they don't support the idea of the benefit charge. Um, because you've got a new council member who doesn't understand it. That doesn't help you. But the relationship and the time spent. Investing in those relationships with those people who can back you, I think will pay off tenfold in the end.
Thank you. Commissioner Morris, and then we will turn to our next subject, which you follow.
All right, just uh, something quick, uh, at the edge of the council meeting. I noticed that their diarist is much higher, I felt very shame about this diet being filled up. Uh, we had a look up, they could, you know, it's. It's, uh, we needed raises, at least three more feet. That's it.
We'll, we'll take that under. All right, uh, we can come back to the subject if there are more, um, the comments or, or. Thoughts after our next subject, but I think we are ready to move on in the agenda to, uh. Welcome, uh, Briar Police Chief Alex Holly, who is here to assist us. Uh, with emergency training and thinking about. Emergency issues here, particularly in our, uh, meeting room, so, uh, welcome, Chief Holly.
Thank you, I apologize for my darkness. Is there a USB I can plug into and put something on the screen? That's awesome.
Yeah, we have, yeah. I'll, we'll find somebody to.
Tech guy is.
We have people. We're not here, but we have people. Did you run lights and sirens to get here?
No. I didn't have lights, sirens on.
You have a USB?
Yeah. All right. Just power points on, or?
Yeah, sure. I knew I should have reminded you earlier this morning, sorry about that.
I don't, I don't know what's been going on with my calendar.
Yeah. I'll, I'll look. Remind me next week and I'll look into that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Can you get you a clicker too?
So I've just. You know, they were. You gotta use. But. It's. We don't know the best. So you.
Again. I want to stand.
You can, you know what? Talking around, you can say whatever you want. Or you want to.
Uh, sit. No, I understand, that's why I want to sit, know if you're.
You more than. There are plenty of other chairs available.
Yeah. Okay. All right. All right, so today, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
I'm Alex Holly, Chief Police, Briar PD. Uh, working follow. Uh, and uh, today I wanted to talk to you about active shooter, active. Uh, acts of violence. And because it pertains to public buildings, governmental buildings, government sessions, public sessions like this, okay. You have access, public access in there, okay? Uh, what about myself, I've been prior for about two years now. Uh, prior to that, King County Sheriff's Office. And prior to that, uh, my current law enforcement, I was in the break order for twelve years.
You need to add a little bit more to that background, because. Part of your tac thirty stuff and everything plays a really big part into your knowledge of this stuff.
Okay, I don't like talking about myself.
That's why I, I seen the issue.
Okay, oh. So I was in the infantry for twelve years, break order infantry, fought Iraq, fought Afghanistan. For Afghanistan, all of us, so. Uh, and then at King County, I was on tac thirty SWAT, SWAT team board. For many years, it was more. Uh, tactical stuff. Is that, is that sufficient?
I, yeah.
You have, you have credibility with this.
Okay. Was that weird? Okay, there's that background, we'll skip through that.
Okay.
There you go, all right, cool. Who here is, uh, familiar with, uh, San Bernardino active shooter happened a number of years ago, this certain, okay, anybody else? Yeah, a little bit, maybe not, maybe a good memorable. Uh, we've had some, some other incidents, uh, since then. But I want this one out, because this was very small scenario, it was a governmental building. It was a, uh, it was a commission meeting happening, so it was county employees. To have a meeting, and. The, uh, doctor came in during the meeting. Events happened, et cetera, et cetera. But so after I reported, one of the questions, I'm going to read it to you, the attack had widespread in passing to San Bernardino County, most obviously. The deceased, with the exception of the, um. IRC contractor, another, another one of the decedents. Uh, survivors and one of the perpetrators were county employees. Without precedent, the county was faced with. Prudent decisions associated with personnel accountability, security benefits. Psychological counseling, public information, memorials. And reconstituting their division, not voiding personnel, among other matters. So today, we're going to just be talking about you as an individual, some steps that you can take to protect yourself. Uh, uh, during actual incident, but governmental considerations of what happens happening in this way. Okay, and considerations you have to take into account, okay? Well, definitely, an active shooter is an individual actively engaged in killing or attempting to kill people in a confined space or other implosive area. By other means, if fireworks may be utilized to harm or kill people, if you always hear active shooter. For a while now, it's kind of trending towards more just an active, active violence, okay, so you don't, it doesn't need to be a gun, pitfall, okay? So, yes, today we're going to talk about action taken when confronted with active shooter. Uh, and also interacting with law enforcement there, because that's such a key, very crucial point. That initial interaction and ongoing interaction with law enforcement and fire inhalers, which is out. And right now, potential workplace violence indicators. Uh, and what's right, action to take, prepare, active shooter, and again, how to manage consequences, uh, after the fact. Any questions on that? Okay, if I start talking too fast, please just slow down.
I'm gonna be careful asking them about any questions.
Okay.
That should be a hero, but with a big bag on her.
You know, okay. It's a reality, they're predictable, they evolve quickly. Uh, some cock, humbly, or anger, revenge, ideology, and untreated mental illness. And they continue to move throughout a building or area until stopped by law enforcement, suicide or. Okay, which in essence means that they're continuing to do what they do until stopped. Okay. So that was response, uh, prepare and follow up. So response, what actions should you take to keep yourself safe in an active shooter situation? There's a natural question to the audience, any ideas?
I hide behind Ed.
I hide behind Ed.
Not much to hide behind, you ought to pick me.
Okay, all right.
And the rest of the room can answer questions too.
I won't call you P D, but.
I'd say run, hide and fight.
Run, hide, fight. Someone's had an open train. Very good. Run, hide, fight.
Achiever.
Uh, those are actually in order of preference, okay? Uh, uh, order of probably. If there's an acceptable escape path, get out, get yourself out. If you can't, hide. Uh, and if it comes down to it. Get a fight. That we're going to, I told you that, but, but. Been talking about those. So run, hide, fight. So. You should have a sticker up and plan in mind. And this is something that, it's called situational awareness in general. All right, it's something that, in general. Most modern day humans lack, a lot of the humans lack situational. All right, it's something that in general, most modern day humans lack, a lot of the humans lack situational awareness. And, uh, a more recent trend is, uh, even worse is instead of acting, responding or doing something. What do people do now?
Freeze.
Get out their phone, I gotta go viral, I'm gonna get this, uh, up on, on the social, social media platform.
You're kidding. They get on their phone?
Yeah. Yeah, actually, yeah, so, uh, unfortunately, but we'll, yeah, we'll get into freeze, but, uh, freeze, yeah, we'll get into freeze. Uh, leave your belongings behind, good, go. Do you not operate this like, you know, burning house, you know, like, just, just leave it, okay? Help others escape if possible, and we're gonna get a little more on that also. Um, and again, evacuate where else to others, okay? And warn, prevent individuals from entering the area. Uh, do not attempt to move wounded people. Why do you think that's right? The chances are, uh, if you're, if you're on the X, you're in the incident zone. You're trying to open the person, chances are you're gonna be casualty or so, okay? Uh, and as I'm sure fire heroes will agree with me, there's no treating wounded on the X, right? You gotta take care of the incident first, okay? That's your priority. Uh, talk to, uh, combat medics, foremen, uh, they're gonna tell you that. What's the best form of combat medicine is fire spear, okay, and that's basically what that can do. You gotta, you gotta take care of the threat first, prior to getting to med, uh, medical, okay? Uh, keep hands visible, that's very important too, okay? If you, if you, if you think police are, uh, immune from the, uh. Brain getting amped up, hijacked with stress, uh, and adrenaline, we're not. Uh, there's some, some level, there are also going to feel that confusion or the chaos as we follow. Uh, so yes, please keep your hands visible, we don't know what's what, who's who, really. Now, in an event like this, uh, it's very common. For multiple people to be calling nine one one to report the event, right? Which is good, but what happens is you get conflicting reports. And you get multiple, uh, descriptions of the same suspect, conflicting, so. Police that are responding are trying to process all of that information, and oftentimes conflicting, doesn't agree with each other. And then also dealing with, once they get on scene, the chaos and the badness and the craziness happening on scene, okay? Uh, so follow police instructions, keep your hands visible, and call nine one one when safe, okay, when safe. If you're, you got to resort to hiding, your hiding spot should be out of the active shooters view. Pretty common sense there, goodbye protection if shots are fired, cover versus concealment, okay? So, who knows, demonstrate cover versus concealment.
Uh, cover is something protective from the bullets, concealment is hiding.
Right, so cover will protect from impact, face the bullet, right, and then, uh, concealment will protect you from the view, all right? Uh, so. And your typical interior wall. Your smallest caliber handgun is gonna go through, through plastic wall, okay? Uh, so, okay, what can we do? What we have in this room? We got chairs, we got tables, we got computer screens, we got sash chairs, start stacking things up, build your, fortify your position, right? That you can hide behind. You're just, uh, basically, like, your, uh, table bag will work to deflect, uh, projected off on any direction, okay? Uh, don't restrict object from movement, so don't trap yourself. Uh, lock the door, again, blockade the door, can't finish, whatever you have, close cover and move away from the windows. Okay, keep it safe where you're hiding, again, lock the door, hide behind large items, use the furniture, silence yourself, oh, remain quiet. Uh, and if you do call nine one, cannot speak, just keep the line open, allow the call receiver tools, okay? That caller's still gonna be able to gain potentially vital information, just to be able to listen in on the call, okay, even if you can't talk. If you're able to talk, provide the location. By the number and physical description, if you can shoot. The number of types of weapons and the number of potential victims, okay? That's some of the most important information you can, uh, provide there. The fight, you know, we started as a last resort. Uh, if you have to fight, act aggressively, there are items to use, enterprise weapons, work together and capacitate the shooter. And the, you have to commit to your actions at this point, okay? This is now, you know, we don't wanna talk all this, this life or death situation now. If you don't commit to your action, you commit to that violence, to overcome the violence being towards, towards you. Okay, you're dealing with a very committed individual here, that your entire intent, purpose in life, in this moment is to kill people that can, okay? Okay. All right, so what would you do? Collectively here, just look around the room, consider what you would do, uh, in an active shooter situation, and whether it would be better run, what would you think? We're here right now.
So where's he coming in at?
Just say the, the front door, I don't, gotta be locked, right?
I'm the first out that door, right?
Okay, you, 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 the guys are lucky, you're gonna run.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, anything else?
Well, I'm not gonna.
Yes, sir.
I want you to close out the front chairs.
Okay, okay.
You're the first victim.
I'm the first victim.
You're gonna slow him down, you're by.
Okay, so being in the same space, you might, you might have to select different options, right, based off spatial where you are within that structure, right? I agree. Okay, uh. Okay, when law enforcement, uh, arrives, what actions you take, when the police show up, we'll talk about this.
Make sure you hug them. No, no, not right away.
No, please don't cling to them, no, yeah, well.
Show my hands?
Yes, yes, show them their hands, um. So immediate, uh, purpose of law enforcement, so again, we have to stop the threat, that's our first and only priority, that thing, stop. Got many way there is in, in one of these incidents, and, and you're there, you will see law enforcement stepping over victims. Second, casualties, bypassing them, and bypassing other, uh, survivors to get to the threat, the threat's alive. In whole purpose to get the threat's last call, and stop threat. Uh, and we're, so we're gonna proceed into the area where last shot were heard, produce crisis site. Uh, kind of, again, our first part, excellent way. Yes, sir.
How do you know it has a real police? Because I, I heard a lot of situations in the room, somebody saying, police. Did you open the door? You don't, you don't know, how, how, how do you do that?
Okay, so based off that, that scenario, you're, okay, so you, 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 you very few yourself in the room. Don't call the door, say, please open up, very good question, right, you want that up? So very similar way, if you saw the phone. Call, if you have, if you're not aligned, nine one one, call nine one, hey, I've got, uh, uh, a person in there on the door, they're saying they're police. They'll be able to confirm that for you. They're, they're, the, the, the dispatchers, call receivers, will be able to verify, will police on the scene, hey, are you knocking on this door?
There are so many rooms, though, do you have the name?
It'll get figured out, it'll get figured out, yes, if you are, if you do have a valid concern that I don't know if this is the police or not. Get a line, call receiver and, and, uh, tell them your concern, it'll, it'll get you for anywhere. They go, it might not be, maybe they don't get the fuck, okay, that's your surest way, okay?
Would the police come break?
Yes and no. If, if the police should believe there's, uh, uh. Survivors in there, they're not necessarily gonna breach the door anyway and bust everybody in, okay? Uh, if, if they're trying to get to, you know, that's locked door and it's blocking to get to the crisis site, yes, they're gonna breach it and bypassing you anyways. Keep, keep, continuing on through the structure to get to the crisis site, okay? That is valid concern, like, one of the easiest ways is to get on nine one and wait for them to confirm with you, that, yeah. If you're that, the police outside of the door.
Okay, well, sliding your commission card or some other identification.
Yeah, and there might be some back and forth, you know, if it was me, and I'll say, like, yeah, I'm caught, all right, hey, you want, what can I do to? You know, put your mind at ease, and maybe it's commission card, but I'm, 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 or, or match.
I have, you know, some one of those peel and stick badges, you know.
Yeah, you're junior deputy now. Um, yeah, good, good questions, good, good, uh, good, good, uh, answers.
You might be getting to this, but. If the first, in my, my track, so on ship war, we had special training, people, pirates, you know, terrorists. And I'm, I've got a concealed carry and. So, in, in reality, my position is. You, your body isn't gonna do, your brain hasn't been before, you know, you have to be prepared mentally. Truly prepared, how you're gonna react to all the different situations. Is if somebody walked in that door, you know, I, I prepared my mind to know what to do. And that is, you know, I'm gonna protect.
Yeah.
Hide behind you, use my cover.
Chair first, then vice chair.
Yeah, no, I'll pardon. Cause everybody's gotta know it, whatever plan it is, you know, you gotta, you really gotta get, your mind's gotta go.
Excellent point, and that's, um, why I like giving this class. Uh, you know, cause this, this is part of that inoculation, that's not what it is, it's inoculating you to the stress and trauma, uh.
Let me just take this as fact, information, that's why. All right, you, 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 you gotta really prepare yourself.
I agree, I agree, um, yeah, and, uh, this is a primer, right? And then what you're speaking to is going through and developing. Well, right, yeah, also immediate action drills, essentially, to where he goes, I go, I go, I combine, so now that, go through the same thing, right? The way you almost got what we're doing today, but you're absolutely correct. Uh, this is kind of just to get, get the brain going, thinking, right, it provides a basic. Why it's so simple is run, hide, fight, run, hide, fight, run, hide, fight, right, they'll give you that, what I do, run, that's right, run.
Yeah, but I'm not a really good shot, so you guys better scatter.
So you get, you get, uh, you know, officers showing up, you get some special joint, like SWAT team showing up, so we'll be wearing, you know. Right, exterior, uh, vests, plate carriers, helmets, other equipment, we are rifles, shotguns, handgun, explosives. Uh, technically we'll be using pack spray, no seed, you might be getting exposed to some of those chemical agents, don't know. Um, and would be likely very forceful, this is not, uh. The community oriented policing kind, this is, uh, stop the threat, okay? So they're probably not gonna be, basically, please, no, to get out of the way, get down, and, you know, you know, so to be prepared for that too, this is not also from the top. Okay, grabbing law, so, okay, mental, put down any items, raise your hands, spread your fingers. Uh, you know, avoid any quick movements, avoid pointing, screaming or yelling, at that, at that point, you're just contributing to the chaos. And proceeding in the direction where the officers are entering or directing, okay? If they're not giving you direction, just go the way they just came, because they, uh, obviously just came through that, that, that spot, okay? Uh, threatening that way is very, okay? Any questions on that? Okay. Uh, safe location, send it. Uh, so area will be controlled by law enforcement until the situation is under control and all witnesses are identified and questioned. Uh, so your impulse is probably gonna be wanting to get as far away as you can. Uh, which is not always the best option, also it won't help after the fact, when the investigations now start, right? Uh, or even in the moment, we're still trying to identify who's who, who the shooter is, there's still more shooters. So you're probably gonna start getting, uh, interviewed very quickly, all right, very quick interviews. Uh, especially if there's any questions on, uh, the, um, the amount of shooters, identity, etc., etc.
And you.
Yes, sir.
So, people are running out there, uh. You, you, you first come, you'll make sure they're not carrying anything, it might be one of the bad guys, right? You, you check, you check them out?
Yes, it'll, it'll come to that, it'll come to that, there's gonna be a lot of things happening as far as law enforcement, fire, medical happening. There's instant command and need set up, there's gonna be a lot going on, right, that as a witness, victim, uh, etc. You won't be really be aware of, just gonna see people in uniforms everywhere, uh, and. The point of this is that we're gonna get a little bit more to talking about as an organization, a governmental organization. Having pre, uh, uh, pre ideas, pre notions of having assembly points already in. In a type of active shooter plan, uh, as a, uh, for a plan, okay?
Then, you guys have a safe location and nothing's picked out?
I don't, I don't think, we don't have anything that's formal to my knowledge.
I mean, if the building was on fire.
Where, where do we go?
We teach it really well, just don't do it, right?
It was really, it was, uh, it's a typical, you know, back in grade school and you had fire, uh, fire drills, right? You walked out, you had each class had their assembly point, it's all along that same, same thing, so. You know, you're not just running like chinked with head off, kind of, all, all, spreading the winds, right? You know, somewhere where you have safe to go. Uh, or the safest place to go if you so choose to exit the building, okay?
Fire station. Mission alone, so it's just scattered, so that's very far away.
Preparation, how do we prepare for, for bad active shooter situations? So there's this plan, uh, planning, mercy action, I don't know if you'll have one here, uh. You're not alone?
Hey, don't be pointing finger.
Uh, to, it's just one more, you know, one more plan. But, uh, it is important. Uh, so you should have that emergency action plan, and we'll get a little bit into what typically would be involved in such a plan. Uh, and conduct training, recognize, and, uh, recognize indicators of potential workplace violence, and we're gonna follow a little more to. Indicators. Uh, so when developing the emergency action plan, I should be getting, um. Uh, input from HR, uh, training, if you have a training department, uh, facility managers, operators, local law enforcement, should respond. Uh. Yeah, uh, you know, it should be collaborative, everyone has their own specialty, and it should, should be input into that. Uh, develop that emergency action plan. So, some of the components is a model, uh, preferred method of reporting different types of emergencies. Uh, evacuation, evacuation policy procedure, uh, mercy escape procedures and route assignments. Contact information for individuals contacted under, uh, plan, the EAB. Uh, information concerning local area hospitals and emergency notifications system to learn various parties. No trick. All right, employee training should, uh, address identifying the sound of gunfire.
Could you demonstrate for us?
I have a desk pop earlier. Uh, reacting quickly, calling nine one one, reacting when law enforcement arrives, and adopting a survival mindset. Uh, I, I, I think it was, uh, I think it was you sure that, you know, talk about freeze, or the taking. Okay. I'll buy it if you need it, so, but I'll care, you take it, I'll give you a grip. Uh, um, we all heard the fire, the flight, the fire, fire, flight, and all, we've heard others, fire, or flood, fire, or flood. Well, then, you know, it's not really new, but relatively new, um, freeze, sort of, any of these, like, like. Like, flight or freeze, and. I think freeze is probably one of the most common reactions of the average person. And in a, uh, traumatic event, it's freeze. And, uh.
I would add to that.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Gunfire is often, the first moments you hear something like that is disbelief. It can't be a gun, so it must be a backfire. Correction going on in a facility, there's another explanation, and for you to go to the next level actually requires evidence.
Yeah, so I, going back to the San Bernardino event, I was, uh, I went. Yeah, so I, going back to the San Bernardino event, I was, uh, I went to a seminar, uh, it was in California or, or, you know. Uh, so right after, soon after that event happened, so it was back in, like, twenty eighteen, I think, I went to this, and the entire presentation was given by. Two of the survivor, government employees that are in the room, and the, uh. Street crime detective sergeant for San Bernardino P D that ended up, uh. Located, he went into initial location, but it did end up getting the major gunfire with his son actually, patrolman at the time, for this, uh, general PD. Uh. Very, very interesting, if, if it's online, I don't know if it's online, if you look it up, I would recommend it to everyone, it's, it's amazing, it speaks to the disbelief. All the employees, when they're in the room, I think it was probably about this size, uh, the crew comes in and starts shooting. And they all froze, and they all, uh. Those must be drill, all, you know, give a surprise to them. This is where survivors are telling us. And they're watching their coworkers being killed right in front of them. And they're still, that's supposed to be. Must be real. And we're going through that disbelief. They absolutely experience that, every survivor in that room mentioned safety, this can't be real. This can't be happening. All right, making sure the plans assess, provide for functional needs, hearing or sight impairments, mobility, limited or no use for efficiency, I mean, this, this is, you know, this goes into any government. Project or policy, but it still applies here. Uh, talk about the facility manager, do you have a facility manager here?
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, they, they should be in charge of the incident access, access controls, distributing critical items, assemble crisis kits. Uh, activating emergency notification system, ensure two evacuation routes according to the facility security department. And, uh, you know, I'm not gonna go on devil all these, and I'm just gonna, we're talking now, and we have been for a little bit now, about. Kind of, these plans need to be in place as far as. So yes, it's happened, you have casualties, you have deaths, you have wounded, you have people that are traumatized, they might not want to come back to work. You're gonna, you're gonna have employees, like, that, that, you know, move back there, that's probably normal. Uh, probably normal, and, uh, that they weren't wounded because we wounded them all, well, now you have. Now you have to tally up how many gaps of, uh, employees do you have, what areas are now not served, what functions are not served, what roles, positions do we need to fill now, do we have to fill that? Right, also, follow on care, as an organization, are we charged of, uh, ensuring that they're receiving the proper medical care at the hospitals? Do we have layers on standby with them, family members, notify family members, if family members are supported, children are supported, uh, do. Uh, do we have a, uh, program systems in place to provide, uh, mental health care and health support, counseling? Et cetera, are all those in place? Uh. And, uh, who's in charge of ensuring, like, right, it's a lot to think about after the fact. And, uh. After isn't, uh, you know, it's just, it's the most traumatic thing to have.
Can I question?
Yes, sir.
As you said, uh. Activate a emergency system.
Yeah.
So does it mean buy, put fire alarms, things, and stuff like that?
Okay, so, uh, you know, the, the bosses aren't here, they're on a junket somewhere, on a training thing somewhere, or maybe on a field, something like that, right? Uh. Uh, and this happens, how are they getting, who's in charge of notifying them, who's in charge of notifying, call up, if you have call up procedures, who's in charge of calling up? Uh, you know, who are the employees, you know, that aren't charged, but fill critical roles, they're, you know. Their counterparts are the ones that are gonna be taken out of the picture now, uh, who's calling in to come in and start filling those critical roles, again, I'm gearing this towards governmental bodies. That provide public service, right, critical public services, that those services can't just stop. Right, uh, they need to continue on a way or another, some more level or another, right, who's doing coordination with, um. I don't, I'm, I'm sorry, who, who, South County fires, County Park, the North County, is it North County?
Everett, Everett, sure, for, okay.
Who's coordinating with them to help fill some of these services?
I'll give you.
Right, does that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, yeah, uh. All right, recognizing indicators of violence. Okay. So maybe current or former, uh, maybe a current or former employee, uh, may display characteristics of potentially violent behavior. Um. And. Yeah, so current or former employees simply do not become violent unexpectedly, rather, they're gonna display indicators of potential violent behavior over time. It's gonna be a progressive, typically what we, they've found is that it's progressive. It's an evolution, if you will, of the individual, okay, uh, and we're gonna get one more of that also. H. Okay, no, all right. Uh, so our test bomb looking very responsible, you know, for, um, like, fires, police, uh, for, you know, some of these. Government agencies like this, there's already, there's pretty robust in place, already background checks to get hired, right, you're gonna go through a, a whole. Process for police is very extensive, I, I know fires extensive also, um, so you need to make sure you're, you've got the background checks. But you also need to create a system for reporting violent behavior, you need to make, uh, counseling available, um. And again, that, you know, develop that E A P, uh. So I want to touch upon, just current slide, so I'll talk about like an evolution of, uh, it's usually not one thing, it's a snap, right, you notice a snap. Um, from one day to the next, uh, usually what happens is that after it's done, uh, shooter identified. And he was cowork, he was his coworker. Their, uh, you know, coworkers are gonna come back and go, oh, you know what, oh, yeah. Yeah, I thought something was weird back then, I remember this one whole day, I didn't think a big deal, but I think a big deal, it's gonna happen, whatever, right?
Do you have, when they're talking, do you have this list of these things, is that what I make sure?
I don't, I don't, I don't have lists, no, uh. But, and if you're just saying this whole thing, this whole thing, this whole thing, and, you know, it's out in the back talking about twenty hindsight, it's like, oh, yeah, that, that was weird, so. You have to understand, humans. Uh, everyone has their own individual baseline behavior. Right, they all, their baseline behavior, the way they talk, their energy levels, uh. Uh, their social levels, their, uh, social activities, uh, their, their tone of inflection, et cetera, et cetera, so they all have their own baseline. So if you're actually have situational awareness, whether you're at work or anywhere else, you can pick up on a person's baseline, generally speaking, pretty, pretty quick. It doesn't take very many, uh, days, years, whatever. So if you're aware, if you know your people, you know your coworkers, and you understand their baseline, you're gonna know a spot where there's a deviation baseline. Now, it's not as tricky as you think, because if you think back to your social interactions, either your family, your friends, your coworkers, right now, you probably think, what's happening? When your friends, when your coworkers, like, hey, man, so, so it's off, hey, what's up, what's going on? We see one day. Okay, that's cause you picked up on they're deviating from their baseline. Okay. So, depending on how they're deviating from the baseline, and how quickly they recover back to the baseline, can be an indication that, so they, that's the people. Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay.
Uh. So let's do this, yeah, let's come up with, what do you think, what do you think is potential, uh, in, indicator of potentially violent behavior?
You, you don't have to ask them, wait.
Well, it's, it's open to, to everyone.
Chief, um, part of wire here is that we routinely, within a, within a year's time, maybe twice, maybe three times. A year, we'll get somebody who will attend the meeting as a member of the public.
Yeah.
And oftentimes, they start off very lucid, but then move to more agitated, potentially violent behavior.
Yeah.
Where we're, as a self protective measure, might invite extra firefighters over just to have a snack and observe the meeting, or be. Catch my drift, and it is that, it is that person roughly sitting where the chiefs have been in the past. Where they get agitated, we don't know what's next, and so therefore, we don't have pre indicators, in some cases, we do. We know these people, we posted, uh, you know, notifications in the stations, these kinds of things, but once they're in our sandbox. And they're sitting right there, which we have no way of keeping them through any barrier or protection method. Can you walk us through what we're going to do when that person is actually here, it's not, we're forecasting for something, they've already arrived.
Yeah.
And, and like Mark said, you know, we're really close proximity to them, so when they. Go beyond the baseline, they get into that agitated state, and we, and our hands are disappearing behind their body, we get concerned.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, well, I mean, there's, there's no catch, all right, uh, but one thing, sir, it's, it's to that point, uh. You know, I don't think the, uh, firefighters unions feel about them doing force protection, but, um, uh. You know, you can call police, request police assistance, uh, and you, I, I, I don't know, you know, are you, are you guys, do you, well, we.
And excellent, we, we have talked about hiring an off duty deputy.
Yeah.
For that purpose, but it waxes and wanes in a way that, you know, it's like, oh, well, that was an isolated incident, we're gonna forget about it.
Right.
And then we go back to business as usual, so your purpose here today is actually to give us that education.
Yeah.
And how, how, how do we, how do we react as a group? And in the absence of law enforcement, we know there's time, even when we make that call, you know, physics, you can only get your.
So, yes. So, absolutely, you know, uh, well, it's depending on your own comfort level, it's depending on what, you know, the hair, how many hairs in back your neck are sticking up then. Right, so it's, it's gonna be up to you as body to decide what you want to do in a, in a particular situation, you know, if you think a journey, I don't, I don't know, you know. I'm not, uh, about Robert's rules, but, you know, I don't know, uh.
The Robert.
So, that's why, that's why I can also, uh, you know, take a recess, the church, right, and, yeah, right, the government, right? Uh, and just kind of take, take your. Take that availability, maybe, or that, that problem first, and, and, yeah, if the. Firefighters agree to come in here and just kind of hang it down, uh, and it'll tend to that, you know, that's why it's really tricky, it, it is tricky in public forums. You can't be a hundred percent safe. Uh, and you can. Structures nowadays are built. It's like public structures are built with force protection.
newer, newer buildings being built.
Right, right, you go first.
The only problem with that. That methodology is we disable our locks, we open the doors, and we allow everybody to walk in during that public meeting, period.
Yeah.
But all, the rest of the time, that door's locked, you have three locked doors to go through, all of those, you know, force protection ideologies all in place. Except for that moment where we just, hey, come on in.
Yeah.
You know?
And it is, it's the rest, it's, it's, I'll, I'll tell you, uh, this, just this right here is more secure than Brier City Hall, right?
What's that?
This building as a whole, and even this is, the way it's set up in here is more secure than Briar City Hall.
Uh huh.
Okay, there, no access control. That's Briar City Hall, okay, uh. But it's just, it's one of those things that. I don't say it's risky, you chose to accept, it shouldn't be a reasonable risk to accept, uh, but, you know, it, it comes down to, yes, I would. Hire an off duty deputy officer.
Well, we, we've talked about, well, potential options, having somebody, for example, in the upper parking lot, which is generally speaking, the public parking lot, and if somebody were to enter the parking lot. And we witnessed who they were and knew that they had, for example, maybe no trespassing, or they were somebody that we probably would have noticed by law enforcement. To me, my own personal opinion, kind of, what you do is keep that problem outside my force protection barricade area until such time that it's better to come in. We don't, we don't have enough people to do that, we don't have enough, uh. I think desire to screen in that manner at this point in time, so I, I think that's why we're kind of here talking about reactive rather than proactive.
Yeah. Certain solutions. Yeah, yes, sir.
Yeah, um, thank you for bringing that up, my, uh, because we, this is a secure building. Um, and we could station one of the, uh, staff members, this, I mean, we get like. One person every, I mean, we really don't get any public in here, so we can actually keep that door locked, they're out there in the public meeting. And we can see somebody show up, knock on the door, and just let them in after we first go and ask them other questions. So really, we could keep this place really secure, unlike, unlike, we're unfortunate people like Briar. Not secure really.
Fortunately, we can't.
I, I, and I.
Meeting.
And I was just gonna say, it'd be in a public meeting, just my opinion, no, you can't keep those doors locked and. Decide who you let in the building, that defeats the purpose of a public.
You mean, you gotta, you gotta have the doors open, as you say, you can't have a locked door with somebody letting them in?
No, that is not an open public meeting.
Really?
Because who's to say that the person watching that door is not being arbitrary as to who they let through the door? That is not an open public meeting, and open public meeting is where the public can attend.
Another setup for all your mother state, so you can't even protect yourselves.
Well, I mean, your, your most basic option, if you just could look, look at, uh, airports, look at, uh, courthouses, uh, and someone's on a more secure places like that, where they all have. Armed security, and at least, at least about a ten to go, right? Uh, and. There's a reason they all have those. They, okay, try and come up with, yeah, sure, we come up and try and brainstorm, uh, other proactive steps to take. But those are just gonna be second, third, fourth, fifth, best options, right, so we can talk about those, um, but. Really, my recommendation would be, if you have any low concern, I would just start hiring off the deputy officer. Do you stand for me? That'd be my recommendation.
Cross your mind.
So I know many, many, um, uh. City councils and other institutions, other, other departments, uh, always have one, one of those.
And what's that name of that?
What's that? No, I just, I didn't, we're gonna, just do that, uh.
We are moving up lunch, just.
Yeah, that's why. All right, so, beware of environment, any possible dangers, take note of the two nearest exits, in any facility you visit, you should be doing this everywhere, um, you know. Some paranoid appropriations, well, uh, if you, if you're in office, stay there and secure the door, if you're in a hallway, get into a room and secure the door. As last resort attempt, you take the shooter down, make sure you commit, call nine one one, when safe to do so. Any questions?
Yeah, as a last resort, definitely take the shooter down. I mean, okay, I'm old today, and. So I've seen enough, I'm ready to go, okay, so someone, you don't have people that are committed to sacrifice themselves, to save the younger ones. By, so, there's only one here, bro, now. So, um, yeah, it, you got, and the reality is, folks. You all are the packer, because you're, I think you're all responsible adults, because that's the quickest way to end this thing. Like the guy in that mall in, uh, Minnesota somewhere, like a sixty yard shot, boom, took down, saved probably who knows how many lives. You know, that's, that's the reality, okay, arm yourselves to protect others, not just yourself, okay? That's, that's the only way, that, that'll end these things a lot quicker, despite what all the leftists, anarchists, and other. Lowlifes think, we need to arm ourselves, but anyway.
Well, vice chair just, uh, summed that up there, thank you, sir, so, so in the context of this building, one of the, one of the things we know we need to do is have a plan, so everybody. Everybody that comes to this regularly knows if we have. Active shooter, aggressive individual, what are we gonna do, and I, and I think we all know we need to do that, and if, if it were to happen today, and, and, and. Whether staff thought or board thought, you know, that we need to actually stop and get everybody to say slice, we would do that, right? And everybody, I think the board knows that they're gonna hesitate, let. And everybody, I think the board knows that they're gonna hesitate to say slap. Playsons know they're gonna go up that door, staff knows they're gonna do their, I mean, we haven't formalized it yet, but I think one of the challenges we had that kind of spurred some of this was is, is unfortunately, the chair at the time, we didn't have a plan and the chair was, was acting, acting as the chair needed to act to decide what we're gonna do and there was a lot of holy crap and, and, and so, um, one of the things for us, it's good to know that our building isn't horribly insecure. For one, right? That's a good place for us to be, for us to, to know that aspect of it organizationally. It's clear we have a little bit of work to do to actually document on paper. If we get into a scenario where it, whether it's an active shooter, an aggressive, aggressive person at a public meeting, you know, we'll, we'll have a, we'll have something drafted, and I know Chief Osseto is working through this and Chief, with your help, um, to have a document. So everybody organizationally knows. At least as we continue to mature and, and become more sophisticated in the plan. If we are confronted in a scenario like that, you know, what we're gonna do, and it could be any of the commissioners say, I need a recess, or staff saying, we need a recess. And people should be aware enough of the scenario where it's not, well, why do we need a recess? Everybody just goes, okay, recess. Everybody does their thing. Um, we know we need to do that part and we're not there yet, but I know Jason knows conversations with you will get us there. Uh, but it's actually a little bit encouraging to know, refreshing to know that we're not as vulnerable in some respects as, as some of the other public agencies for us, so.
Well, and now that you've changed the setup of the room to make it.
Right, we've taken some action to move down a path to do that. Staff has a little bit of work to do to formulate what the plan is and obviously, you know, we teach people the plan and exercise and have value points and all that stuff. And, and you just happened to ask the question, we don't. So, um, we have work to do in that regard, but, but I think, um, I guess what I'm saying, basically, thank you for coming, uh, one to give us from a staff's perspective, the fact that we were moving in the right direction and I didn't give Jason and his team, you know, something on paper to, that we could then go to the boards and we're all on the same sheet of music. Um, and then we'll continue to evolve from there is, is kind of what I see thanks to the chief coming and, and doing what you did. And hopefully we can reach back and Jason can pick your brain and help make sure that what we put on paper makes sense. Um, and then we'll get to a place where we will actually go over it, talk about it as, as an organization, and then at some point in time, we'll need to actually exercise it. So everybody knows what happens and, and those kind of pieces. So I, I guess I wanna say thanks.
Oh.
Um, and thank you. It was hugely beneficial for me and anyone from my, my seat and.
Thank you, Chief.
He was made for lunch?
Yeah. Yeah, he's like my day job. Thank you.
Alright, so, uh, that's our journey for, uh, uh, lunch. Yeah.
Our recess has been extended for five minutes.
Alright, I think we are ready to go back on the record and continue on with our meeting, moving forward on the agenda to item number ten. Uh, and I think Chief, are we ready to start with number A, the, uh, Everett Fire Department's?
Yeah, absolutely. Q'd up next?
Okay, so up next will be item ten A, introduction to the city of Evans, or city of Everett's fire department. Uh, Chief, please.
Thank you. Uh, let me. Uh, so let's start with that one real quick. Obviously, there's been a lot of conversation, or not necessarily with us, but a lot of, a lot of, um, media on, on the challenges that have happened financially within their city, um, the structural deficit they're trying to address. Um, um, the, one of the solutions to their challenges was RFA. Um, there has been no formal conversation with elected bodies, I know that. Um, uh, I wanna say forty days ago or so, we had an hour, um, coffee meeting with, uh, Chief DiMarco and the mayor, that nine, and it was a very global, high level, you know, what's pro, more process driven annexation, those kind of things. Um, and then a little insight, I think we briefed the board on that conversation. On back, there has been no subsequent conversations between staff, um, or the mayor's office, um, since that evening. Um, what day is today, Friday? So is Everett, so on Wednesday, city council, um, of Everett, um, their, their preferred path, um, was a levy lid lift. Um, on Wednesday night, they passed the resolution, it was resolution eight, eight, eight zero two one, um, that is putting a levy lid lift on the ballot for the primary of sixty seven cents. Um, so that's where Everett's at. They're going down the path of a levy lid lift, sixty seven cents, they're already a dollar fifty one. Um, that puts them at about two dollars and nineteen cents a thousand. Um, that's a heavy, heavy lift. That'd be a heavy lift for anybody. I'm going out and, and, um, going from a dollar fifty to two dollars nineteen cents. So we'll watch it, monitor it. Um, that's where they are with, um, with addressing the structural deficit. If it's successful to valid, according to the media that you listen to and, and their, their agenda, that got items that covers them for about three years. Um, that's consistent with the conversation. Um, um, you know, where the mayor was more aligned with requesting annexation sometimes twenty six, twenty seven. So, um, it's not immediately there in front of us now. If the annexation, if the levy that fails, who knows? Um, but, um, I don't know. In preparation, staff's been keeping tabs of, and we, we do this routinely. Um, but I think when we were talking about this agenda, um, I, I don't know if, if we truly, and I don't think staff's brief is whoever really is. Um, ever by the numbers and, and some of that stuff. So I, real briefly, um, is just to kind of show you, um, who the city of Everett is and the fire department, um, in, in a very basic way. Here's Everett. Um, we work with them every single day. Um, our, our northern stations and their southern stations, they run calls multiple times a day. Um, we have a great working relationship with the city of Everett from an operational perspective. Um, as you know, we're part of the, um, you know, the, the countywide training academy, Everett's appreciable in that. Um, so there's a lot of joint things happening operation with Everett. Um, and the crews work with them every day. Um, you know, the, the, uh, deputy chiefs and, and Jason specifically, Sean, interact with their counterpart since they've ever, and it's, it's actually a very good relationship. Um. Um, here's, here's kind of, here's, here's who we are. We serve about three hundred thousand people, Everett serves about a hundred and fourteen thousand. Um, we protect seventy five billion in AV, they're at twenty six, just under twenty seven billion. Um, we serve fifty seven square miles, they serve forty eight. We're approximately four hundred, um, employees, they're a hundred and ninety five with a hundred and eighty four of those commissioned. For us, I think we're at a hundred and, three hundred and seventy commissioned, something to that effect. Uh, we have fifteen fire stations, they have six, um, budgets. Um, we run just under forty thousand EMS calls a year, they run just under thirty thousand EMS calls a year. Um, and they're basically half our daily staffing, which makes sense. We run seventy during the day, sixty four at night. And Everett staffs, um, they say their minimum's thirty four, but I do know they round out. So they'll go below that. Depending on what their staffing is, um, obviously, part of that's with budget restraints, constraints that they currently have. Um, so that's kind of a, a look at whoever it is and, and, um, the thing for us to look at is, you know, there, if, if Everett were to annex into, let's just hypothetically say Everett annexes an RFA, they're twenty five percent. They're what population? Now, I think Everett, Everett doesn't look at us as that size. A lot of folks in Everett still think of us as.
Fire district one.
Fire district eleven, fire district one and small. And I, and, and I bring that up because that, that, that was very clear um, with Mayor Franklin, is I don't think she realized how big we were until we started having a conversation about our size. Um, you know, cause, you know, part of that conversation with her was governance and all those other pieces and she didn't think having two people on the board was enough. And when I told her, well, you're twenty five percent of the RFA, how many do you want? Right? I, I, it, it puts it in perspective, and I think for our organization to realize we are, I mean, we're one of the largest fire organizations in the state. Um, so that's Everett by the numbers. Um, I know this is really small. Um, Leslie, um, and, and Steve Wheeler printed bigger maps um, that you can look at, um, and your leisure, and we'll have these available for you and, and I'll send you a PDF. I don't think we did that. We'll get you a PDF of the map so you can look at it on your computer, expand it. Um, but it really just shows where Everett, how Everett staffed and where their stations are at. I can tell you Everett, for the most part, across the staff is everything. Um, and, uh, they run six engines, three medic units, three eight cars and a truck, and the truck is cross that, or no, dedicated truck. One dedicated truck, one cross seven truck. Um, they have an MSO that's not backfill, um, and they have a twenty four hour time chief for, for their operational components.
I have a question to do. Based on the previous slide, it looked like there was nine square miles difference between their coverage area and ours, but does that include in that, in ours? The city of Evans or is it just those?
It's all ours.
Aw, so.
Yeah, so, now, I don't, I, I, I don't know where we got the square mile, we probably got it from their stuff versus having Steve do a GIS analysis. So that's what they published. Well, if we get further down the road, we'll have Steve.
Okay.
Do the GIS work and know what that is.
Got you.
Okay, so, um, that's kind of a look of where their stations are. You could see where's the, the station to the south. Um, the furthest out is station seven. Um, and then the one just north of station eleven, that's station six, correct, Jason?
Yeah.
Um. And then you got station five, station four. One and three, or one and two, correct?
Yeah, one and two, station.
Um, so, um, I I couldn't go into a whole lot of detail with it, but like I said, they run a lot of calls in Everett. One of the things to remember is they actually have an agreement with Northwest Ambulants. So if you look at all their staff, um, um, they do have, uh, a deal where Northwest Ambulance does a lot of the BLS transport work. Um, there's pros and cons to that, um, and we can talk about that at another time, but it's just important to know the city of Everett um, has a, a, uh, you know, Northwest Ambulance private ambulance that does a lot of their BLS transport. Um, and a lot of the BLS response specifically to, um, clinics and those kind of things and, and they don't necessarily always send an engine. We don't have that same philosophy here. Um, um, and there's lots of reasons for that, that we can, we can get into it at a later, later discussion as we move forward and this thing will be a topic of conversation as we move forward with Everett at all.
What's the annual suspense in the contract, uh, with the agreement with Everett right now? Did they get into a year to year, or is it a five year? In other words, if we were ever to.
You know what? I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
What are we obligated to?
Well, I would say, so here's my position, it is, we're not obligated to do anything with the contract with private ambulance. If you come to us, that contract lasts. Um, and, and I wanna say, and I haven't looked at it recently, but it can't be assigned. In other words, so just because Everett becomes us, the, the contract is not assigning it. So it doesn't automatically come. Um, and so, um, now, there's other, there's other ramifications of that because Northwest has a lot of work with Everett, they do, right?
Sure.
And so, we need to be really careful how we deal with our private partners because they do in facility work in that old stuff and you, they, you know, Everett's a big chunk of their operations is Northwest County. I realize there are multiple counties in the state too, that's not their own piece of work. So there's, there's, um, more realities if we move forward with the city of Everett. If and when that time comes, we, we will have to deal with that piece, but I wanted the, the board to know they do have an agreement um, with Northwest. I'll also tell you, they're trying to do less lit then and put on their own resources, which makes sense, right? One of the other things we do have Northwest doing the transports based on G E and T, transport revenue, they, they don't collect it. Right? So there's some other revenue streams that they leave on the table that we don't. Um, and we can get into those details down the road if, um, if that becomes a reality and that, and we move forward with any kind of conversations with Everett. Um, or the board wants to do a deeper dive at sometime in the future, we can do that.
Chief, um, Chief?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence has a question.
Yeah. Um, so I, the reason we're talking about Everett is because they sent out, you know, the kind of, they were feeling out other agencies to maybe collaborate with or will do whatever. So we're, they initiated the approach to us. Yeah, I think it's a combination of a couple things, Commissioner Lawrence. I think it's the fact that there was those initial outreaches over the last few years. We responded back to the letter, I think Commissioner Kenny was the chair at the time, and then with them being in the paper and talking about, without talking about, well, we'll just annex.
They were shopping around.
The RFA is a dance partner with us without us knowing, and then staff doing the work, the due diligence staff does, we've done some preliminary work. Um, as it, so it's a combination of everything that brought it forward today.
And, and as an organization, um, this is a little complicated with Northwest. Are they a lean operation like we're a lean operation?
I think so. I actually do think so.
Yeah.
Um, I think they're lean like we are.
And then like, it wouldn't be a really shock, cultural shock of the, 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 uh, rank file.
Well, well, we'll talk about, we'll talk about that at the very end. So, but the city, I mean, we understand why cities.
Like, why are we running a fire station, fire op, operation? Like, we can unload this and nobody can blame us and, uh, solve, uh, problems, uh, yeah. Why isn't, because Michael Teo is the more natural uh, direction for us to go. Why are they still, I know this is, well, it sort of is, I mean, why aren't they, why do they wanna hold on to their, how many, whatever fire stations they have?
I can't, I don't know if I can answer that. I mean, I, I can give you, I can give you some. I, I will just tell you this, Everett's having this conversation today because they got very big structural deficits in their budget. Michael Teo does not. Michael Teo's, Michael Teo's fiscal condition is different than the city of Everett right now. And so, um, you've heard me say this before, dollars, I mean, most of the time, these are done based on fiscal reality.
Yeah, that's, no, that's, that's, that's.
And Everett's.
That's not why they're, they're.
Everett's in the fiscal place that they need to start looking at it for real. Michael Teo is not, although Michael Teo's got an EMS levy on the ballot that they didn't pass to four, and it may become a bigger reality for Michael Teo.
But then, then again, uh, the other word back to Everett. Why, there, there, that's a whole different kind of, that's a, that's a different, um, uh, that's a, that's a different cat of skin there. Uh, they, that's politically, geographically, the type of structures they got. I mean, this, this is a lot different from us, the whole political base.
I actually think from an operational perspective, they're very, very similar. Um, the political base, I, um.
They got a lot more industrial stuff than we don't have.
They're very base.
Yeah, I mean, they've got some, but, but here, but here's the reality, is if anything happened to those sites, we're going, I mean, there are, we're part of that right now anyway. Right? So, so the reality is, is operationally, if that, if something were to happen to Boeing or something were to happen at the Navy base, were that.
Okay.
Or, or not. Were there two, although it's not our necessarily, our geographical or, or. But here's the thing, Boeing has their own fire department, the Navy has their own fire department too. So it's, so they are really unique animals. So when you pull those two away, knowing that they have their own fire departments, and they're well-trained fire departments, by the way, is they're very, they have a little bit more commercial square footage and less residential square footage in state Everett, but for the most part, they're either really similar to what we are, or they're similar to where we're going, based on the growth that's happening in Southwest County.
So this, the city is, they wanna, you know, they, they're very happy to not have those problems anymore. Um, I know that from my knowledge of the former commissioners that I've told you over the years and that stuff, that's, uh, the fire service up there is very quickly. The fire service out there is very politically active and they have a lot to do. They'll. Kinda get people elected and not elected, uh. So it's a different, different kind of.
I, I think that was true and I think that's fading away. I don't, I don't think that's as prevalent as it was fifteen years ago. I would say that it's, it's less. Um, although it's a very pro labor city. Um, and tends to be generally very pro labor. Um, so labor does have influence and, and I would say that there's pockets of artists that are saying, but I don't think the. Um. I don't think it's the same as it was fifteen, twenty years ago.
So organizationally, I mean, from your professional, you get professional. Why would you wanna take on Everett from? Your perspective?
Well, so like, like we talked about before. We rely on Everett. Every single day on the north side of the RFA. Right? They, they have three stations that we work with on a very regular basis. By, by virtue of automaticating and how we function, they become our station. Sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. And vice versa, our north stations become their station. Eight, nine and ten, if that makes sense. So when you look at the size of Everett and how we share border or how often we respond on calls right now. You're talking three additional stations.
So it makes more sense for. For us to join, like Everett and us to join up. Than us, let's say, sir.
Today, yes.
Today, yes.
Yeah, and I'll, and I, and, and when we talk about the, the financial modeling side, um. Fiscally, right? Because one of the first questions I'm always asked when we talk about this is. Does it work? Does, does the dollars and cents work? And, and the reality is Everett brings you, um, fiscal stability for a long time. Right? And part of that's because we have the benefit charge, right? And, and Everett's breakdown helps with that.
Okay.
Um, and. Um, the one thing I will tell you with Everett initially. Is because Everett works a forty two hour work week. Our crews work a forty seven. Two five, one two five work week. So if hypothetically, if Everett were to become us, and there's an annex in the RFA. They work under our work rules, which means they would go from a forty two hour work week. To a forty seven point two five work week. But that means operationally for Jason and Sean, Todd. Is. That every one of their employees is working eleven or twelve days more a month, per more year. When you times that by a hundred and eighty employees. I actually, for the same money we're paying. Can put on one, two, potentially three more units. At the same price.
Hmm.
Because they're gonna work more hours, right? So, so there are some benefits for us in that arena. Because they work less out, or they work, they work a less hour work week. So we have debit days. To get them to the forty seven, which is eleven or twelve a year, Everett does not have any. And so when you do that math, it ends up being about six more people a shift we come into work every day if Everett were us under our work rules. So there's other things. When you look at where we are, you look at the growth in South County. Everett comes in. They're really, you know, with three eight cars, three medic units in their engines, they're, they're staffed really well. If you were able to, you know, seamlessly truly function and utilize what we do and move the puzzle pieces around a little bit, we could be really, really efficient with the current. Work, employee group. And, um, and so it does work and financially it works.
Do you know what, I mean, that's different because they pay their city taxes. I don't know if they separate that with the payment. Fire service, but do you happen to know what they're paying for fire service? Like, if they. What they're paying now, when they joined us, they'd be paying this amount. So when their taxes come down. Assuming Everett does, does.
So, so the, the million dollar question. Is what does the city do with the capacity they have within their, what the city does, right? So the question is, is I can tell you. That the current Everett Fire Department said basically a dollar. In the high eighties, so a dollar eighty nine per thousand equivalent. And that, so you know that includes their left one liability. Right? So. So they're roughly between forty six and fifty million dollars a year.
So what's ours?
We're at a dollar twenty, dollar twenty four, Chris? Dollar twenty four.
So they're, yeah, if Everett didn't raise any more tax, like they just took that out, gets. And reduce that amount. They'd be paying less, so.
Long term, right? Now, now there's.
You have an idea about Muckel Tio? What's that? What, same deal scenario with Muckel Tio? Are they, are they?
Muckel Tio would pay more because they're, they're, they're willfully underfund their fire department. They don't have teams like this doing that. They, well, and they, their pay, their pay scales are significant. Us and Everett are very comparable in pay. Um, Muckel Tio is. Is less paid. The great AB, you know, great ability for revenues. Um, but they don't, they're, the, it would cost more. For their current workforce. Where Everett coming to us, the cost is really close to the same as the cost for us. It's pretty, it's pretty.
They're getting, they're getting the Cadillac service when we go to, in a Muckel Tio.
Yeah, yep. So.
Gonna get that money back.
So. Yeah, we've been having some conversations with Everett over that. Long, just from a staff perspective. So. One of the questions that, that I, and I talked to you, I think we talked about some of the work that Todd Anderson and. Um, Jennifer Party have done with regards to Everett. So we do have a strat model that takes our current, our current. South County Fire and incorporates Everett. Now, I, I want you to know, it's. A lot of this hasn't embedded with staff from Everett. It's looking at their budget. But I will tell you, I do have their, their full apparatus fleet. What they own, when it was purchased, right? So that's accurate. I have their employee database. So I, I know when employees were hired and their rank. So it's. At the end of the day, the graph you're seeing is, is, is a seven year outlook from that model. Um, and the only thing it does is because we anticipate going to ballot in twenty seven for an EMS levy. It shows success or that we actually were successful in twenty seven with the EMS levy. And the, the reason I bring this forward is I can tell you financially, if. If. We move forward. And want to continue the conversation of Everett, it financially works in today's snapshot. That's what that's, that's what this represents is the work we did on the back. Um, now it's preliminary. Um, it's important for everybody to know because. City budgets, you can get so far enough and then you gotta, you know, you, you have to make sure that they, they don't do something that you didn't see. But, but I will tell you, that shows Everett at about. Forty eight million in expenses, which is pretty close. And we added their left liability expense annual, which is about two point five million. So. This is from a preliminary perspective, to be able to, to look at the board and answer the first question. Does it fiscally make sense to move forward? The answer is yes, it does. From a fiscal perspective. Yep.
Okay. A lot of the question we have discussed before about all that. So you're saying that based on this is com- combination with. Merging with Everett, that will, will go up to sixty million dollars?
That, well, that you gotta remember that in twenty seven, we're passing into EMS levy.
Right.
Right? So you, it's a combination too. If we didn't do the EMS levy, Mr. Chan, it'd be going like this, just like. Just like he goes, right? He goes down below the line.
Yeah.
That's looking at the fiscal strategy of the board. In consequence degree two, we added the EMS levy renewal in twenty seven.
But also you're combining, that's joining.
Yep.
Everett joining us.
Yes.
Uh, you just mentioned only forty million dollars, whatever this.
And, and that assumes, and so in the modeling, it assumes the rest in twenty.
Assuming, assuming we. Joining and we have a surplus. Based on the budget. Our cost adding to ours, or would you, or just our own profit? Our own, uh. Do you, okay. My critical question is that. The Everett, is that gonna be? If Everett alone, if we merge with them, is, are they gonna provide a surplus or they're just break even?
I think it's, I would say it's plus or minus on the break even.
Kind of break even.
To answer your question, it's plus or minus on the break even. Now. You have to. The other side is, is F one as a, Everett has a left one reserve. Very well funded left one reserve. So there's other components to Everett.
Okay.
That until you get into sitting, until we get to the place where we've agreed, we're gonna entertain a conversation with them. There's far more detail, Mr. Chan, to go through to answer that question.
Yeah.
Like, I know you wanna answer. I can't answer it yet because there's a lot of variables.
Yeah.
That we won't get to.
Until we.
Until. We go. Well, I guess what I'm trying to say in this presentation is from a fiscal perspective, I can tell you from an operational perspective. Um, if Everett were to. Send something to the board and. Ask to have conversations, I think it's in the best interest of the RFA to do it. And I will tell you, fiscally, right now, based on the preliminary numbers we had, um. It, it does work. In other words, it, it, it can work. Um, and it's, it's probably worth our time having the conversation. Um, I know the other thing I'll talk about Everett is, is. You know, if, if you've been here a long time, the Everett culture scares everybody. Um, for those that have been in this organization for a long time, me being one, if you go back and. Twenty five years, um, we would never be having this conversation as a result of. I guess I want everybody to know, as a result of two thousand and eighteen, we started doing a joint training academy. That more than half of our folks in the street and more than half of their folks in the street. Trained out on that drill field.
Hmm.
And they trained together. And so you don't have. The cultural challenges that maybe we had seven. Eight years ago and further back. I think it's changed. I think a lot of the. Um, a lot of that, I mean, I'm not saying you don't still have the old dogs that are still there. I'm here, right? Um, they got some folks in the same generation as me. Um, but they're the huge minority. Um, and quite frankly, our young folks and their young folks. They already consider themselves the same. So I don't think we have the cultural challenges or the cultural. I- impediments to do this, David? Maybe from what, what you could look back in time. Um, I think some of that's old and it's gone. Um, it's not that they don't do something different. It's not about that. Cause you still are taking two different, an organization, bringing in another organization. That's not what I'm saying. But I don't think it's this huge cultural brick wall.
Right.
Right? I, I don't think it's that.
Well, I, I share what Commissioner Lawrence said, the information you get from the, the other commissioner. Uh, we both share a really the same kind of thing. But I, I, I like to finish, finish a presentation then I'll ask additional questions.
So I, I guess here's from the, the financial, the stuff that we did, just so you know, here's what Jennifer put in. I, I just wanna let you know, you know, wages going up three percent a year, benefits five percent a year. Some of that's a little bit different than what, what Chris has done. Um, because he, we stayed, we just used a number throughout. Chris gets a little bit more detailed on his stuff. Um, and we're a little bit, um. On some sense higher, I think. A little bit. Less, more liberal on the increases maybe, I don't know. Um. And it shows the MS, the Emmet or the respect re- restoring the EMS levy and then everything else staying what we historically have done. What I really want the board to know is, is the data points. We actually have their fleet. So it's real, it's real stock that we're able to put in the replacement schedule, um, their equipment saying. Um, we know what the left liability expense is from their budgets, very declared, it's two point five million. Um, and the employee database, we actually do know what it is. We know their data prior, we know their tenure, we know their rank. So that's, as, as you know, eighty percent of the. Roughly eighty percent of the costs is people were accurate and. What that did is it put Everett. Employees into our pay brackets. So, um, to let you know, um. And, and here's the age of their fleet. A lot, I've heard a lot of things about Everett's fleets dying and old. Their average, average fleet age is eight years, which isn't, which is not horrible. Um, they have a total fleet of forty three units. Um, and there's their first frontline. Six, six engines, two ladders, three medic, three hazmat, two technical rescue, the town chief and MSO. Um, and that's really what I have for an Everett overview. Um.
What about their buildings? Have we talked about them?
No, no, I'll, we'll talk about that when we get further down. But I can tell you, we know station two is a dead on rebuild. I already know that. Um, they've done some work to improve stations. Um. Um, obviously, you know, uh. You know, in the game of this, we get their stations and then. We'd have to incorporate them into replacement schedules, just like everything else. But you're bringing. You know, a hundred thousand more people and, 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 and when you do some of the preliminary work, it, it, it. It works, depending on when it happens, right? To not make it a burden on, um. You know, you have to maintain facilities, you have to maintain facilities and. Um, if we go down that, we'll have to do a little bit deeper dive into where they're, where those are because we have to. Have a plan to address the capital challenges that come if they come. And right now, I don't think they're putting anyone in caper, so.
Chris, uh, I asked him a question a while ago. I think you broke it down or somebody did, but it's eighty percent for labor. So what is it between building, construction and maintenance and? Equipment? So it's a ten percent for building and maintenance and ten percent for.
Depends on, it depends on what? I mean, you're talking about building our new fire stations?
No, build, um.
See, cause, cause those are two different things.
Yeah, that's.
You got your, your, your annual maintenance that Chris puts in. The expense budget, and then you got capital. We're not sure how we're gonna do that yet. And that, that's a totally different number. So.
Maintenance for their, we do buildings, um, uh, for us, what is it? Equipment and then there's building. So make, so. Improvements and maintenance.
So, so Chris, jump in, jump in. Well, we put some in general budget. We put some in the capital side and Chris has a, a way to do it.
The transfers out of the general fund, like capital for apparatus and equipment is probably about three and a half million. Just for ongoing and then we've had some one time money that's gone in. So. Annual ongoing, maybe it's four or five percent of our budget is going into capital. The rest would be, so the other fifty percent of the budget is professional services, supplies. Operating and like this regular operating stuff.
What about building?
Well, we only need to find our own dollars for building names right now in big time capital. Then we have. Facilities managed to contribute sixty two and I don't know. I wanna say that budget's a little less than a million, but.
Okay, so it's a pretty small, it's like, okay, not, not the, I will get my knickers in and twist over.
So that, that's what I have for Everett.
Other questions, thoughts?
Commissioner Tio fly.
Oh no, Commissioner Tio.
All of them, yeah. You see her.
When it comes to, uh. Fiscal part, it makes sense. Cultural part makes sense. Is there a point where we get too great to manage and deck a league?
I, I think there is a point in time where you do. I don't necessarily think Everett pushes us over that hump. Um. Um. I don't think Everett, Everett's the catalyst to push it over. I think Everett, Muckel Tio, us, there's some logic that exists for that. I don't know. I don't know what to push you over the, I don't know what that is. Um, pushed it. I, I don't know. I don't think Everett does that though. Um, and when you look at outside, outside of us, I mean. Well, let's look inside Spokane, Tacoma. Some of those, they're, you know, they're pushing twenty five stations. Seattle pushes quite a few. If you look at other. Like California, some places in the rural populated areas, Oregon, you know, having, um. Um, I don't know if there's a size that pushes it. I. Right now, we're not there. I don't believe. I think there's. E- as you look at. I guess let me back up. For us. If you look at the density that we have. And you look at where we need to go, where I think we need to go as an organization long-term. Um, you know, with the vertical growth we have, the density that's coming and the transit density and all those other pieces. You know, we need to be in a place where, you know, in, in a, in a, in a metropolitan area like us, your big house. You have a truck, a ladder that are both dedicated. We don't do that. We have a ladder. And we run it like, right, a quick first out engine. We need to get, we're getting there. We need to get to the place where we're running. At our big house, let's just say six or fifteen. We have a dedicated ladder, dedicated engine. Right? And, and these things. And if we get a little bit bigger, we have. Bigger group, more density, um, and we can leverage some of those pieces where I don't necessarily need a more. Um, support infrastructure like fire stations. I need more equipment that's dedicated. So. Um, and being a little bit bigger, that's easy to accomplish. We need, I believe we need a dedicated TR unit at some point in time in the future. I believe we need a dedicated hazmat unit. In the future, right? Which is, they don't run an engine anymore. They are a dedicated specialty resource. Um, that's much easier to do when you're a little bit bigger. Um, cause you have a little bit more flexibility to plow. Um, and so having Everett and maybe some of, you know, some of the other natural partners we've been talking about. Puts, puts us in a position in the next fifteen years where we may be. You know, we may be resembling, you know, some of those. Um, you know, small sized metro cities. Um, that have a dedicated hazmat unit, a dedicated rescue unit. You know, maybe some form of dedicated special ops rescue like you see in New York and Boston and Chicago. For the, the extremely high risk events and they're your, you know, they're your flying special ops crew. I. I think getting a little bit bigger. Helps us get. I think getting a little bit bigger helps us get there. And and fill some of those things that may get much more challenging to fill if we, if we're smaller. So. I don't know if I answered your question because I don't know if I know when we, when we tip. I just don't think we've tipped yet.
Thank you. Commissioner Chan, um, next then, Commissioner Fern.
Yeah, I think we talked quite a bit on, on all these, uh. The major, I can follow up with Chris, Joe's last questions about. We, you know, that in Edmonds, they basically saying that their property values high. New Creek. And even Molly Chels and Brian, the similar thing. And I, just give you a qualification that I, I belong to Rotary Club in Everett. So we do a lot of, uh, student scholarship and all this stuff. I know. Be- beside Grand Avenue. All the property, the other property is very. Assess value and then we, they probably have more service than the. We, we can bring in a lot more demand on services. That's my, my concern. Uh, we need to take a look at that. Right? I mean, it's basically, it will be, it's just for the benefit of other. City right now. Which New Creek already mentioned that they don't want to move to rural because they want to stay on the. Same, using the same assessed value, they get the same service. So that's, that's I need to, we need to look at that. How, how would that be, right? I'm not sure. I mean, just on the big picture wise, I, I agree with that.
So to answer your question, I mean, Everett runs twenty-seven, twenty-seven thousand, twenty-seven thousand calls a year.
Right.
We run forty, right? I mean, they're, they're half our, less than, you know, they're, they're third of the population. So, so, so what you're saying is correct, right? Some of that workload, they have a hospital in the area. So yes, those are.
Apartments and units.
Yeah, yeah.
So the value wise, they don't really pay as much.
Yeah. And and so some of it is though, what I look at is you look at wherever it's at today and you look at wherever it's potentially going to go tomorrow. And there is a lot of growth potential in the city of Everett. They just have to figure out how to get there and they have to fix the structural deficit before they do. So I, your point taken, Commissioner Chan, we. You know, that's, that has to be taken into consideration. But even with all that said. You, you know, I, I, I will tell you from my seat, it's still worth exploring. And if, if the city, I'm not saying we go, we go. Beat down their door. That's not what I'm asking. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. But if the city of Everett. You know, depending on what they do with their future revenue that's going to be on the ballot and if, if they at some point. You know, send us a resolution or a letter to engage, I think it's in our best interest to have that conversation. And and quite frankly, get all the details done because what you've seen and what I presented to you from staff's work. Is preliminary and there's some detail work that we still need to go validate with the city and all those other pieces. And this is this place in time. As AVs change and and we do some different things as we go through our budget. I mean, there's all sorts of things that change. And when we get to that place, we have to dust off our work and, you know. Get it up to speed and then start answering some of the hard questions you're asking.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of my investors when I do the, we're watching, he studied all this, right? So all his opponents dying south of it, not going north. I mean, that's, that's some value to that. We probably can do the similar study.
Yeah, we go into all of those and sell them, just so you know.
So one way, I'm just kind of thinking way, big picture ahead. If we ever come to us, so what happened to Muckel Tio?
You know, you know what's gonna happen? I mean, I mean. Right now, with Everett and us and the relationship we have and Muckel Tio getting all our resources. As their station four and their station five, and the fact that they can give us eight car medic unit mutual aid. But quite frankly, they don't match any of the mutual aid when we go and do fires and all those other pieces. There's a conversation needs to be had.
But they, they, they get out of hell from Everett too.
Yeah, so DeMarco, just so you know, Chief DeMarco, we had a meeting on Wednesday and he said, hey, can we have a conversation and we can talk about that conversation specifically? Now, I think Everett, you gotta understand, Everett's in a financial area.
Right.
And they're, and they're struggling and, and so Chief DeMarco's perspective on that is probably a little bit different than ours. But we will go and have a conversation as a, you know, chief to chief and figure out what that looks like and look at what numbers really are. No different than what we always do, automatic aid, mutual aid. And, and. And then see.
Okay, so the Northwest ambulance. Is that good? You don't know, you don't know what, are we, are they going away or they're gonna be eventually, we have to buy them out or?
I don't think they're going away. What I, what I'm saying is is that in their footprint in Snohomish County. They do a lot of BLS work in the city of Everett, a lot, I mean, a lot, a thousand, a thousand calls. So. In our world, if they were to come us, we don't have an agreement with them and that would stop. And I would recommend it stop.
Right.
But you, you have to realize, you got hospital wall times and and all that. Northwest ambulance is a key player in transferring people out of hospitals to transitional care and all those other pieces. So. As we go and have this conversation, there's some other components. That is not necessarily things we dealt with in the past with Everett, if, if we were to go there with Northwest ambulance that we would not want. To do something to make Northwest pack all their stuff and leave the county is what I'm saying. So we need to, we just need to be smart because. We don't, right now, we don't do interfacility work. And I'm not sure we want to get into the interfacility work. And so we want to make sure that we, by virtue of what we do, break a cog in the system. And then end up with a problem and we all go, well, why are we at the hospital for five hours? Well, they all look at us and said, well, you created it.
Okay, but one, one of my main thing is that we have no obligation to carry on, carry on the contract with Northwest up to us. We're the one decision.
That's my understanding today. And and to be honest with you, your project, that would be my position moving forward.
Okay.
And that would be something that it would be really hard to move forward. We had to eat that to actually consolidate with effort.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Commissioner Fern.
Oh, yes, thank you. I had to write my questions. That's been a while, so. Just to jump on the bandwagon as far as EMS is concerned, one of the things that I really thoroughly enjoy as a taxpayer. And fully encourage this department to remain so in its force of action. Is that we show up, we transport. That is critical. And for the citizens of, of Edmonds, if you. Are not aware that you're getting like the gold standard, there are departments out there just to the south that are fairly large in the name. And I'll give you, I'll give you my classic example as being in their EMS system for years. And that is you'll dial nine-one-one, grandma doll on the floor, on the tile floor. And you call nine-one-one, fire agent shows up to get a few people dressed in blue that jump out. Oh, grandma, grandma, grandma. Oh, my God, you're on the ground. What's going on? Next thing that shows up is an ambulance. So you think all was good. Right? Two other people in blue jump out and they come up and they say, oh, grandma, 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 grandma. Somewhere along the way remarks, oh, my chest hurts. Oh, my gosh. That's an ALS call. So then they escalate and another ambulance shows up. Two people in white jump out, come in and say, oh, grandma, 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 and discover it's non-cardiacs. Says, no, we're not transporting. So then they call a private ambulance service. Now, we've got enough people here almost to start evolving. But grandma's not, never been moved off the floor. Forty-five minutes, she'd become hypothermic and then she gets a three thousand dollar transport bill. To go to the, the facility, which is most likely within about two months. Right? So that's the model I, I wish that we will avoid in the future, not naming names or participants or anything else. But the fact is, when we arrive, we treat as best we can, stabilize and transport. And that's kind of like the old, the old model, what is an EMT? UPS, packaging, handling and delivery. So, okay, so like my original points were this. And we don't have to discuss it, but it's something to keep in mind. Re- organizational redundancy is really huge when you consolidate Ams. And dealing with senior leadership, uh, dealing with departments. Now, I think with the city, they probably hand off a lot of that work over to the city department. So there's probably not too much redundancy, but something to keep in mind as far as, you know, who's going to be top dog and how does that transfer over? And then uniquely, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I did see a vehicle run around Everett that says OEM on it. Which suggests that, that the office emergency management for them resides within fire. Is that?
The city division. Well, it was the city. I'm gonna, I don't believe it's within the fire department.
Okay.
No. No, no. It's, it used to be and it's not.
Used to be, okay. That was just one of the, one of those points.
They do have, they do still run this truck.
Okay.
But, but OEM is outside the.
Outside of that. That was just a, a, a thought because once we absorb that area of response as ours, not mutually. We also have to address the risks and hazards. So, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Lawrence.
I just wanted to piggyback a little bit on the conversation that Commissioner Tiofle had around those tipping points. It seems like it, it's hard to say where those tipping points are. Things are in flux. It's kind of nebulous right now. Uh, we do a very good job in this organization of, uh, you know, doing that, what ifs, keeping on, uh, on top of, uh. You know, the, the different scenarios. Um, the one thing I think might be lacking in, in our preparation here, or at least. From, from the commissioner's side is, is really. Understanding and getting ahead of those decision-making, those tipping points and defining. Concrete criteria for, you know, this is what it, what it would look like. These are the things that we'd have to reach before. We get a TR unit or before we get a new hazmat unit, we need this many calls, we need this volume, or we need something. That's going to necessitate these changes. That allows us to be able to, A, plan an album, you know, forecast. But also B, it allows us to reevaluate once we get close to those tipping points. That we already defined. We know this is a tipping point. Okay, let's look at it. Let's look at the need. Let's look at this right solution and reevaluate if, what the other options are. And it still is, we go that direction. We're all ready for it. We can do it. I think a lot of the things that I've experienced here are. Necessitated by the COVID, the inflation and all the things. We've been, we've been playing catch up the entire time. And I think, you know, as things are starting to stabilize, both in the market and everything else. We just, we need to get back into a forecasting model, A, you know, setting our goals, setting what those, those thresholds are. And then we can, you know, better plan for our future.
Best part about that is, is. Jason, Sean and Todd's, that, that, that's one of the things they're going to be looking at over the next few months. It's right in line with what you just talked about, Commissioner Roland, is, is, um, you know, we always talk about deployment, but we always deal with deployment with the here and now. What I've asked them to do is go out fifteen years and figure out where we need to be. In, in conjunct, it, it's not exactly what you're talking about. I'm not sure they took notes. But it's to do exactly, look where we need to go, roll it back. And then figure out the incremental steps to get to the end game. So some of that's starting in a different. You know, now that we're done with pandemic and we're done having to react to stuff that overwhelmed, you know, the country. You know, we're, we're still in some ways coming out of the Great Recession. But, but they will be doing some of that work and being very strategic, forward-thinking. That will help weigh into that conversation and at least set. Some of the foundation for the future discussion on that topic. So they are moving forward and some of that, maybe not exactly what you were talking about. But generally, we're trying to get, look out and then work our way back and make incremental, incremental steps. So we all know where we want to get to. So it's kind of, it's kind of down the path that we talked, maybe not exactly, but. At least more in line with looking strategically versus reacting to the here and now.
Got it. And, and my second point is, uh, just to, to bring out that when we look at all of this stuff, it's, can we do it? What's the, you know, cost benefit analysis? What are, you know? What's the risk that we're taking on? As an organization grows, there, there's a, there's a socio-economic like tipping point, right? Where you get to the size where you don't know other people in the organization, people that are, you know, working on those front lines. Stop feeling like they're part of a family and feeling like they're just a cog in a machine that's moving without them, that their voice. Isn't heard, they're just, you know, uh, one of the, one of the minions. And I, I think that. You lose something as an organization in the soul and your character, in the confidence of, you know, your employees and everything. Once you. Lose touch with what got you where you were, you know, today. And I think that both cities, I, I think there's, this is more philosophical than anything else, but. Cities government has taken on a mentality of infinite growth. That it's always a good thing. Getting bigger allows you to have more money, allows you to do more things. You get the economies of scale. But at a certain point, growth for growth's sake, expanding because we can, expanding because, you know. We can, we can take on that, but we can take on the entirety of the county. But at a certain point. Is that healthy growth in the long term? Does it put too many eggs in one basket as a, you know, as a, as an RFA or as, you know, fire protection district? Or as a city? Doesn't get us into a point where we're setting ourselves up for the perfect storm? And when we're that big, we can't, you know, too big to fail type instance, that doesn't really exist in the, in the. Government, right? We fail, we fail. There's no bailout for, for us. We only have so much that we can tax the taxpayers. We have a, a two thousand eight crisis and we've taken on duties, responsibilities, costs. Because we can't, because, you know, we've got this ability to do so. And all of a sudden, now we've got this headroom at the end of our mill rate, one dollar and fifty cent. And a recession comes and that's all. Well, then what happens to all those additional things that we took on that aren't necessarily in our mandate? There are extras that maybe cities would have done in the past or otherwise. So I think this is. Since this is more of a workshop, I just wanted to get those ideas out there. And I really think we should think about this because. Maybe it's a healthier organism, the entirety of the county. If there's a couple of RFA, getting big, fine, but. Once you start taking on too many types of service, going underworld and trying to brand up urban, the policies. Everything starts to get into a weird place. So there isn't a one-size-fits-all. But if we size ourselves so we fit people that we serve, that's the size that will be most beneficial for everybody.
Commissioner Tiofle, then Commissioner Fern, uh, Commissioner.
This, um, idea I have is, can we? Is it, uh? Going to be beneficial to split Everett, like whoever, do they have an RFA on the North border? Is it possible to split like if it's called for two RAs?
No, and the reason is because you, between us and Marysville, the pay practices are very different. You've got to deal with the labor group in Everett. And then it two goes to the higher paid organization because it, it wouldn't. It probably wouldn't go anywhere and it would probably, I mean, it would probably fail. And there, there's some geographical barriers to it. So.
There's nobody north of there to really join up.
Marysville, they couldn't touch Marysville.
They can deal with the causeway and all this.
But, but splitting an organization like that, I, I D the city, is not, now. Hypothetically, server could be different though, right? Because you got city, city, you got a city that, yeah. That not come, right? And you've got, you know, the, the, you know, old district seven is five, I mean, they're very much less. Right? If, if you had a willing player to do that, you could do some different things. But, but even that would be, I, I. I, I don't, I don't know how we would, I don't know how we don't, I mean, we're really good at what we do. I don't know how we orchestrate that one.
Commissioner Lawrence.
So, uh. Mike has, uh, questions or thoughts were sort of along the lines of what I, I was asking. Why? We would do it and based on your answers. Uh, the, it's because. Their citizens would be better served. That the only reason for us to do it, that they would be better served. By us taking over. Than they would just stay because they got the budget problem in the cities. We could relieve the city of that problem. And they would end up being better served. But otherwise, what's the point?
Well, I, I think, just getting big for the sake of. I, no, I think, I think part of why we're, like we said before, if Everett structural deficit doesn't get fixed. People can say whatever they want. They're never going to touch police and fire, but when seventy percent of your budget is police and fire. Eventually they're going to be hit. If they take it out on fire, it's going to adversely impact the response into us. So. Why I'm saying we explore this is my citizens that I'm already here to serve relies on Everett. Right? Everett, there's, there's calls and R R.
We'll end up just being a bigger Muckel Tio.
Right. And if Everett, if Everett's in the place where we don't participate, and we say no, for whatever the reason. Right. And if Everett, if Everett's in the place where we don't participate in it and we say no, for whatever the reason, and they end up closing two stations because that's all they can afford, I gotta use ad resources, right? So it's, it's not, the context of Everett and the reason we're looking isn't for the sake of getting bigger. We, we've had some conversations with, with what Commissioner Tiofle talked about is what's too big. And I think we, right? But, but to be, just be straight up with what's going on in Everett is, is we want Everett to be a strong fire department. If they stand alone, great. But if they're to the point where they're going to make cuts that adversely impact the response for public safety, it would be in our best interest that they are entertaining coming into RFA for us to actually sit down and have an honest conversation with them. Because we use their south three stations and often they're coming into the north and we don't even have a unit go. So they're a, they're a very key player in our response based on the seamless border response that we do. So I want, I want the board to know that's why we're engaged. We've done the work and we're interested in it is because it's in the best interest of the people we serve. Now I will tell if they're going down the path of where their problem to fix their structural deficit, I'm, I'm, I'm proud enough to say they will get a better service from my organization, yes. But financially, my folks aren't subsidizing it. So we all win.
We'll take care of mucka fields a little bit. That's going to be a natural thing. We'll settle their hash.
Chief, I had a question, a couple of questions for you. Um, what, what is the marine resource that Everett Fire Department has? Do they have a boat?
Jason? Yes.
And is it like a? Is it partially staffed? Do they have like a station?
Yes, I think it's much like ours. Um, and they actually have marine operators and I believe they're paid a stipend like ours are.
But, but they respond on a call. They respond to the boat and then take the boat.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, they do not have a station. Yeah. Very similar to what we do. Um, and actually our units work together quite often as well.
The, um, how much assistance, if you know, like how much assistance do they get from north Marysville coming down to help them out in the northern part of the city? Do they get much? Cause that's kind of a distance going across the saltwater flaps. I'm just curious if they get.
I think, I think.
The northern help that we provide.
I think they do. I think they get help from District Four. I think they get help from Lake Stevens going across the trussel. Um, to the center of the city, depending what they got going. And I do believe sixty-one um, and District Fifteen, the new station they have at Cusida Village will come down. I don't know how far in the city they go. Um, but you know, they're responsible for the freeway up to Fourth. Um, and so, um, you know, from, from the four street exit down to, um, the first Highway Two, right? They, there's a lot of mutual aid that happens on the freeway. And I know, um, if they have a fire to the north, Marysville comes in, um, District Fifteen will come in. Um, if they have a major event, Snohomish and, um, Lake Stevens stations will come in. They'll come across the trussel because they're actually pretty quick. Um, so, um, I don't know if it's as often as us because they're less dense in the north part of the city than they are where we are. Um, but they have a good worker relationship with District Seven, District Four, and, um, I think we're just, there's more density in the south.
Right.
Um, and so we tend to do more of it, but Marysville, I mean, I see Marysville coming down quite a bit. Then Everett will go into South Marysville and I don't know if Everett goes across to Lake Stevens or District Four very often, um, but they do come in. Um, it's not, you know, maybe not as often, but it's frequent. It's frequent. They're on the records, automatic, that kind of stuff.
Okay. Is there, I was curious to ask a little bit about Navy base. Say, there used to be a nuclear aircraft carrier that was housed there. Um, and did they, does Everett get any support coming out of the, uh, main base from Navy firefighters? And second question related to that is, is Everett Fire Department staffed with any special way to assist the Navy with whatever, you know, special fire risk needs related to munitions or in the past nuclear fuel that the Navy might have?
No, Everett's not. They do a lot of training together.
Okay.
Um, but, but I also know, like when they had the nuclear aircraft carrier, there was, I mean, there were the, the Navy and the Navy firefighters in Everett would support them. There were places they would not go, just like us. If we go there. Um, they're very, and I don't know how often they have a, I don't even think the Lincoln's there anymore. They moved it.
Yeah.
I don't know if they have any, right? But they are working in partnership with, um, the Navy for a shipboard firefighting prop. So there is some work to going on together. So they have the ability to do shipboard firefighting close. So Everett doesn't have to go to much bend to do that work. There's some, I don't know where that's at, but there's some work going on with that. I know they have a good worker relationship with the Navy. Um, uh, I don't know how frequently the Navy goes on their fires or backfills them. And, you know, the Navy, once again, it's so kind of like Boeing and Bainfield. It depends on what their obligation is based on their immediate, why they're there, right? So if they have boats in, depending on the boat, they may or may not be able to, but, uh, yeah, so, uh, I worked on aircraft carrier when I was in the Navy and the base side fire department rarely comes in to help for the initial attack. Everybody on ship is trained pretty extensively. I think that's, that's what we did a lot of on, on board. We were training on launching planes. We were working on our, our firefighter qualifications and actually doing that. And in my three years, I fought at least four fires aboard ship. And that was, I mean, they're totally different animal. They, I mean, it's just, they're pretty nasty. But on that side, the Navy's very protective over who they go out on and where they go to them on. And if it was a nuclear, that's like, um, I can tell you, uh, just from being on base, uh, we had, uh, the Enterprise that was in front of us for a while. And anytime there was anything to do with nuclear stuff, they would just, that was vacation day. Everybody was off and you couldn't come back unless you were going to be detained, right? It was that secure. So, um, I guarantee you they're not having anything to do with anything nuclear for sure. And even at that, it'd be tough for their base fire department to actually respond on that. They, they would contain that to the ship and to a specialized unit. Um, I still believe those ships there would, um, they would utilize some of the fire, uh, department on the base, but second or second and third down the road would be the civilian fire department and, um, that would be very guided.
Could be all over pretty much. Forget about it.
Kind of us.
How you know from your virgin range?
Second seafaring question related to that is, uh, the port of Everett. And I'm not exactly, I'm not super familiar with the port of Everett and their size. I, I know they're a smaller port compared to like the port of Seattle or the port of Tacoma. Um, but I know a lot of Boeing's valuable items, uh, run through there. And I know the port of Everett is trying to get a lot bigger at primary election coming up this year. I was just curious if there are any special, if either the, does the port have its own partial fire department or, and is Everett somehow, Everett Fire Department, are they somehow trained to in some special way for marine, you know, not, not as to the Navy, but as to the port of Everett, where all of the fire type problems at the port of Everett?
So they're the second largest, um, marina on the west coast. And, um, there's really nothing more special than, than they would do than what we would do with the Evans Port on a fire. And they've had fires there before. We're able to work through that. And if it's anything of any significant size, we were there too. Help, helping out as well. So, um, I don't know if that answers that. They don't have any special units for there. They used to have an engine that was housed down at the port at one time. And then they moved that up to, uh, Station Two. So, so to add to that, I think there's, there's visions of their report growing in some fashion. I think the, the countywide initiative to make the whole county part of port is part of that. Um, people get the dollars and cents that are related to it. Um, I think there's going to be additional needs there at some level. I don't know what that looks like. You, 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 you can't go down a path and increase, you know, I mean, they're very limited in what they can bring there, what comes in there versus what's on Tacoma from a, from what we would, from a public safety perspective. Um, but, you know, if you see, you see the writing on the wall and they're gearing up to be something that they're not today, what does that mean for the future? Um, I think it's, I, I think your questions are very, very valid based on what the force do. And I just don't know where it goes. Um, at some point, you know, there is going to be infrastructure bill put in and there's going to be needs to do certain things and you know, in, in some of our funding models, port districts are challenged with some of, when we fund. So there's some things we'll have to consider as the, as the port does what they do and the city of Everett's going to have to. I mean, I know they have a good worker relationship with the port, but there's more to come with that. Um, but no, the marina, their firefighters train with our firefighters just like we do. Um, and, and so there's nothing special.
Okay. My, my question is kind of pick at something that I see that's different in quality than the other entities that we have, um, merged or annexed with the, or provide contract to itself. Other ways, there are some unique or unique as compared to our other partners, um, risks and areas that Everett deals with that we don't. The Navy formerly nuclear, um, you know, engines, um, a port, I, I think a big port, a port that does commercial stuff uh, as opposed to, I know they have that big arena, but I'm really thinking of their commercial port, uh, the commercial port. Um, they also have, I believe, a significant part, a much more significant than we do. The Boeing facility is in the city of Everett. Um, and then unrelated to those unique pieces, downtown Everett has some very old buildings that light on fire and they burn fast. And so there are just other risks that we don't see in some of our other partners that are not a reason not to do something with them, but just to go in with eyes wide open as related to that, because there are some things we don't deal with, with our other partners that would be with the city of Everett. And those things, I see dollar signs attached to them because to me, that increased risk means more money to protect against them and be prepared for them. And not that that's a bad thing and Everett brings its own resources, et cetera, but it's just things that we are currently dealing with that, and not that we can't deal with it, we can. And Everett brings some expertise, but it's just something, things we don't currently face to just, you know, think about as we think about that, those possibilities. Or liaison, Twitter.
To piggyback on that, I think one of those things that you have to keep in consideration as well is, um, their governing body and the policies they have about how they handle, um, I'll, I'll go with the drug epidemic. Because that of course is going to affect services that, you know, we would have to provide up there. And so, and I'm sure that there are other policies like that, just because, you know, we all know it's never just one policy that somebody goes that direction on. It's multiple. And so I think that's another piece of it too, is that you have to look at the policies that their city has put in place that could be a factor in, you know, what it caused, what it would cause us to do to be servicing that area. Because if they're, if they're going to be, um, lenient with their policies, um, that, that's going to affect us way more. The cost to.
But there's a lot of, I mean, these, this was actually a, a, a great conversation. Um, because Everett is a little bit different and to, and it helped me and I, I guarantee it helps staff to, to think about things that we haven't had to think about before. Um, as we, you know, if the opportunity presents itself and if the board entertains the opportunity, um, you know, stuff to stay on our radar, um, as we go, because it, it is a little bit different. Um, and, um, and, and it's, you know, we look at Everett because they're coming in, but at the end of the day, we've got, you know, four cities in our effort right now that can have the same policy changes. It, 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 it looks at it from a perspective we have thought about that and goes along with some of our previous conversations that we've had earlier today, um, that just highlights, you know, the dynamics that our RFA deals with regardless of what ever comes. And then you add the potential of bringing in other partners and, and needing to look at things. You know, money's one piece, but there's all sorts of other variables to play and, and detail work. So, um, this has been a fabulous conversation on behalf of staff. Thank you.
Great. There were more questions, far off questions. But Chief Anderson, you seems to know a lot of port of, port of Everett. Now, um, there's a big development down the waterfront on the marina now. Is the land belong to port or did it belong part of the city?
It, it's part of the port district or what will be, you know, I know we're going for both, right? In the city on the port. Um, but it is part of the world's boundaries. Correct. They revamped that whole area.
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty amazing. And I can't wait to see when it gets done. Being a citizen in Everett, I, I can't wait to see what that looks like when it's done. I've seen models of it. Um, there's going to be.
Well, they started with a hotel now, hotel, and then a lot of apartments being built there.
Yes.
I know that they have a manufacturer because my, my, uh, we're watching company was, were right there. One, one of the key things about the man fact, they have, they have repair, actually which one of the largest yacht, that, that, one of the Russian autogun is right there parking right there now. Three hundred something million dollars. So what? So in a sense, can they, if they get, getting fired? So the Everett is, is Everett department to go and go and do that, right?
And us, and Marysville, right? Yeah. So, yeah, I, I ran fires in Everett as a battalion chief. And, um, on the type legacy three construction, which is, you know, something I studied pretty well coming up through the ranks, um, all that type of construction. We had very minimal amounts of that when I was in Edmonds. And that was kind of my sparking interest on that type of construction. Everett has a lot more of this. But they've also in their pre-fire incident planning identified things that, that is defensive only, right? If you treat them right and you fight fires, right? Uh, you, you minimize, it's a low risk, right? So, uh, although they're different, um, I would tell you two things. One, we're highly capable of doing that. Uh, we train pretty efficient in doing that. Um, and two, there's not a fire that goes over first alarm in that city that we're not even been in, in fighting with them. Um, and, and on some cases, even the first alarm, we're there. We're that tied tight in our operations.
Yeah, she, yeah, a lot of cream fire hazard, like, because the work that they do. So the second questions I have is the Boeing, recently Boeing firefighter doing strike and artist stuff. And I understand that they're paying much lower than, than, than the regular one. And that's why they are, so how about the training themselves? How about the qualified qualifications of the Boeing firefighter?
Well, I can tell you their qualifications are, I mean, they use FSAC, so their qualifications are on par with us.
No, not on par.
They're on par with us. The challenge is, is Boeing doesn't have a lot of calls.
But they don't have no.
So they don't have a lot of real world experience. That's not every, I'm just being very, very general. Where, where our rent file to get certified, we go have them run calls. It's not that Boeing doesn't run calls. They predominantly run EMS calls and fire alarm calls. Right? They don't have the structural issues that we have, the water compliance and stuff. So they don't have the same call demand. So that their, their firefighters have less real world on emergency scene experience. They're there, they're fire inspections. Really. They do by expect inspection like we do fire response. So.
So they're.
We fire several. Yes. They're, they're well trained. They just don't have, they just don't have the, the experience day to day like our folks do.
So that's not every current Everett firefighter going to Boeing sometime and help?
We all do. So, so it depends.
We go in and they come out, so to speak, really.
Boeing can come out, but they don't very often. Um, paint, just like paint field. They, they have, you have, you just, you have to, you have to know that there's a requirement for Boeing. Boeing doesn't have a fire department because they want one. They have a fire department because of risk, risk and insurance and voids of blood and all that, say they have to have one. And so, and, and because of that, their resource has to be, they, based on what they have going on at Boeing, has to be available for Boeing. So it's not, right? So they're, they're, they're not unwilling to come play, but they're not a partner that you can rely on from an automatic aid perspective. You have to request them and then if they have the capabilities that respond out.
So what?
Us, everything we do is automatic.
So right now, basically one side of the relationship, we go in, they don't come out. So, okay, right.
Okay. Well, this has been a good discussion and I'm sure there'll be more in the future if the opportunity presents it. Uh, I am hoping to be out of here at four o'clock. I hope everybody else is anticipating the same.
I was hoping.
I, I have to leave at three forty-five, just.
Okay, well, soon we can do. So, um, I was thinking we could take the next item, Edmonds discussion and then take the break? Or would you prefer to take the break? Or would you prefer to take the break now?
Take a break now.
Take a break now? I'll take a ten minute break till two twenty and then we'll come back and hit the. So we'll be.
Okay, everybody, if we can go back to our seats and we'll, uh, get started. We're back on the record to. Finish up our afternoon portion of the meeting today. And the next up on the agenda, moving forward in the agenda, we are on to item ten B, which is city of Edmunds. Uh, discussion, I think I turned that over to Chief.
So, um. I guess, uh, I was, um, out of town. Thank you again for, I continue to thank you because it was a spectacular two years. Um, you had the, the joint, um, commissioner, city council meeting on the twenty-third. Um, I haven't had a chance to actually watch it yet, um, but everything I heard from it was, um. Was actually the meeting went very, 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 very well. Um, I did, um, in Dublin to read the, the article that was in the Myebs News. Commissioner Kenny, they had you quoted beautifully in it, um, and, uh, um, actually made me smile. You know, three thousand miles away. Um, and so. Um, and from a staff's perspective, it went well and they're, you know, my understanding coming out of it, coming in, uh, on Monday, not a lot of homework. As a result of those meetings for staff or the board at this time. Um, I'll give you a little bit of an update. I know Chief Elvis at the request of, um, there wasn't had coffee on Wednesday. Um, there's obviously things spinning, um, as far as where the city of Edmund needs to go. Um, I think if you looked at the Fitch report, if you go back in time and look at the Burton report, um. You know, I, if, if you look at the dollars and cents and, um, it's, you know, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be a surprise of where the city of Edmunds goes. You know, I think we are a logical choice. Um, we provide exceptional service. Um, I think they, they've recognized it and they've always said it in multiple meetings that I've been at with them. Um, and I foresee, um. You know, probably in the not too distant future, um, a resolution coming forward our way requesting annexation. So. Um, I know Leslie got a phone call from the, um, executive assistant of the, of the council. Um, wanting to confirm that the verbiage in the resolution was the correct verbiage versus the amended version. Um, um, and I do know they're gonna have a public hearing Tuesday night. I think that's a, 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 a process that they decided to do. Um, so you know, Chief Vice-Taylor will, will watch that virtually. He will not be at the meeting next Tuesday and it will be. Um, we'll be watching it back online. Um, and then I know, um, based on the conversation Leslie had with city staff. Um, that it's gonna, conversation will be brought up in, um, their public safety committee. Um, which I believe is, um, Councilman Eck and Tivitz. Um, and there's potential that. Um, there'll be some action taken to move forward depending on how that works, potentially as early as the twenty-first of May. Um, which would be the resolution requesting. So that's all backside. I, I have not talked to the mayor. I do have a call into the mayor. Um, I, I've called up the message. Um, I know he's busy. Um, and, um, I'll reach back out, um, on my drive home tonight and just say. And, and really what I said was this is I said, hey, I'm, I, I'm back from vacation. Um, and whatever we can do. From the RFA's perspective to make sure you have the information or whatever support you need. So the council and you have the best information available to make the best decision on behalf of the city of Edmunds. Uh, please don't hesitate, reach out, call. And then, uh, first of all, I'll say it's really good just to, just in generality, just to catch up and have a cup of coffee. Um, so I anticipate out here, if I don't hear from, from the mayor today, I'm sure I'll be early next week. Um. And so that's what, that's what I know what's going on with the, with, with Edmunds, um. And, you know, staff continues to work. You know, Leslie and, and her team, you know, the, the, the communications, because I know we've offered if. If, if the city of Edmunds chooses to, um, request annexation and move down that path, um. They already know that we would offer and help in public education aspect. With our expert staff, um, and the fact that we've done it. And so I know they continue to think about that and. And be in a position to where, um. If, if that happens, we'll be in a position to hit the ground running, um, and move forward. So that's really what I have from Edmunds, um. I, I've had a chance to talk to the intergovernmental committee on that. And Sheriff Kenny and I talked about it behind our back. So, um, with that, that's really all I have for an update. Um, and, uh, we're kind of in the wait and see pattern, but I'm, I'm actually really optimistic and I think. Things are probably gonna move faster. What I, from what I knew yesterday than what I thought on Wednesday, so.
Sounds good. Are there, uh, questions or comments? Some issue from the commissioners, Commissioner.
Yeah, uh, the original, uh, I think. Yeah, the resolution or whatever it was that the city had brought forward and then changed the line of tuition. Uh, impeded the process. Are we prepared to go back and revisit that again? Uh, do we need to? Is there any? Is there any step that needs to be done? Uh, that was raised at the meeting that. That there, that had gained momentum and then the rest of the council people were kind of made aware that the meeting stopped. And was, were questioning that and where we're.
So I, I, so yes, I believe they need to go past. They need to pass a resolution, doesn't say explore annexation, but says requesting annexation.
Okay.
Based on RCW SO SO into Southland five. That's very specific and statute driven language. The language they changed was, I think, explore, I, they used some other verbiage for that. Now. To request the board and the board took that as let's move forward, even though we know they gotta take the formal staff at some point in time. To dot an I across the T. And so staff has done that. We, we. Um, I need to reach back up to Richard, but I know we, we started to. You know, amend the plan to allow Edmunds to annex in. We've had some general conversations about. You know, what does a pre-annexation agreement look like? Um, we also know, you know, station twenty, station sixteen are fairly easy. To become part of the RFA, right? To quick climb over. Um, obviously there's a whole lot of conversation about what to do with those assets. But, um, but we also know station seventeen is part of their city complex. Um, and it's, it's a little bit more challenging. It's more like station nineteen and that multiple there. So there's a little bit of work that we. Talked about and thought about, have ideas of how to cross that bridge. Um, and waiting for, you know, them to do that and for us to get in front of the mayor to say, okay, here we go. Um, the amended plans further straightforward with them. Um, once we get done with their fixed asset, what does that mean? Right? Um, because there's, you know, I can tell you one of the conversations is going to be, they're not gonna buy our stations and the answer is no. And that'll be one of those things that we'll work through. Um, but really after that, you know, their left liability isn't, isn't huge. We know what their dispatch costs are and. Uh, for the most part, the rest of it is fairly, fairly straightforward to amend the plan. Um, pre-annexation agreement has a little more challenging. Um, in the context of, we already have an agreement with them, so. The terms would just play out till the end of twenty-five. So if they're not successful, terms play out. Um, but. If they're not successful, depending on when they go, they don't have another bite. If they go on April twenty-five and they don't, they're not successful. They're, if they're staying with us, they're on a contract to twenty-six, which is they're paying, at, at least my impression based on what the board. And they're just, they're gonna pay no rate, benefit charge and, um. An EMS levy, but you're on your own vote for left one and you're on your own vote for dispatch, right? At least in the context that we did with multi-terrorists and no career. So, um. So there's, there's those pieces with the pre-annexation agreement. I don't, honestly, I don't see it as being hugely, um. Complex. It's just gonna be, you know, getting the mayor and his staff. And then obviously having to come to the council that they need to give up three fire stations and what's that look like and then. And then angst that goes along with that, which will take a few meetings. Um, but I think for the most part, staff's in a really good position and, and prepped. Um, to execute some of those really quickly to get drafts in play for the city to start digesting.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Lawrence and then Commissioner Kent, Commissioner Lawrence.
Uh, yes, um, just wanna compliment. Sean there did a great job communicating this, uh, and Commissioner Kenny. Uh, he did a lot of answering questions. Um, my part was to, without talking to anybody else or anybody on staff, committed the organization. To giving assistance to Edmunds when they go for their. Their, uh, their election for the, uh, joining the RFA. Uh, I hope, uh, you're okay with that. Totally good. Leslie, you're okay?
I'll be over. Pass them on. Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, um. This three big, again, Sean did a good job, but I think. I particularly hung in the free commission, free council member asked the questions. I know that we don't need all seven agreed, but I think it's great. We try to get all seven agreed. So that they're unison. And then when we promote it to this, to the citizen, then we'll be. Just like Monty Charis or Briar that they were supporting. I don't want confusion. I, I mean, I'm, I'm just optimistic. Uh, I want all seven going in. So one question is one commission, one council member mentioned about, oh, you guys. Campaigning for the, the, you know, lower tax and artist stuff. I know he's talking about me. So I, I met, I basically was saying that, yes, we do look at the. The budget really closely because we're not just, you know, getting you to pay higher money is our, our budget too. So emphasizing that that is the critical part of it, right? And then they mentioned about representation. And I mentioned that as a commissioner, we, we look at everybody saying, we don't say, oh, yeah. Edmund, we don't need that response time. So that's critical part. Another question is that someone said that, oh, your program's too expensive. Can I not do this? But we have emphasizing is there's no, basically, you come in, you have to take the whole thing. And I emphasize in the program is really helping us to, to reduce the call. The paramedic, the community paramedic is not something fancy. So, um. Uh, one, one, one fight, one council member talking about. Oh, from twelve million dollars now to so many, what's the increase? Why explain, blah, blah, blah. So I'm, I'm giving every, a page in here. And that's how the twelve minutes come into. And which is the same formula. I told them Monty Charis, Briar at that time, we had the same formula, same thing. The critical part is that. When we, the total number on the how many, on the top part is the actual, uh, FTE, the actual. Pride we pay for the, pay for the, um. Uh, fire at that time, actual cost. And then we put ten percent. But the ten percent is not ten percent of our overhead, ten percent on that number. Now, when we first started, that number, the one million dollars really great. But since then, we're expanding a lot of a program, right? Like the preventions of the. Preventions, uh, educations and community paramedic, that's a lot of things. So now that become, that's not covered. But as. Tivian agree, but we, we're aware of that. We did not, we choose not to nickel and dime at that time. Which is my servant did is that they nickel and dime with. With Mucrit and that's why. So, so I've explained to, I was using this form and explained to them. Uh, they may have enjoyment of, of this. We no longer extend. This is. I want to, and this convinced one particular council member, please stop talking about. When you have been. Yes, for all this good time, you, you cannot using this as a comparison. Why? I cannot go and explain to you point by point why you increase, right? But increases sharing by everybody. So that's, uh, I think that personally I, I, I wanna do and I think, uh. Is that inter, intercom, in, in the government community, I think is, is good that, uh. Many of the staff working in there and I still think. Commission, commission, Chief Yisman, we'll be, we'll be the contact person, but, but everything we have to is just. We need to share with all the commissioner. So we don't have a situation and the Mucrit or self-commission did not get any information. So that's, that's I think how, how we should approach it.
Herbert, I can't give you a political liaison, I'd say.
Any other, I'll start.
One of the things that, that I know is gonna get asked, that I think the board, if not today, but the board at some point. Um, should probably have some set aside problem out is they're gonna have to go to nine. You know, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna ask, they're gonna ask of the opportunity for the board to go from a seven commission board to a nine commission board. Um, and so, so, um. Yeah, I, I just, well, I, I just think, I just think the word. Is probably a good topic of conversation at some point for the board to discuss as a board. Um, and, um, I'm not saying do it. I'm not saying don't do it. Um, but we, but if we're, if the board's not inclined to do that, we should. Probably all be unified and have had the conversation discussed amongst yourselves, just because I know that's gonna get asked, right? Um, and I know, um, you know, if Everett, if Everett were to come knock on the door, they're gonna ask the same question. So. I don't, I don't think it's a, it's a bad exercise. It's in the plan. It's not an unreasonable expectation for one of the agencies annexing in. To say, well, what about, um, we haven't asked that with any of the other ones that have came in. They've been very comfortable with. The liaison and staying at seven and knowing they're at large and all those. Um, but, um, I, I've heard that twice now. Um, I heard it from, you know, the mayor in Everett, uh, when I had coffee. So it's, it may be something that the board at some. At some time in the future, um. Maybe a topic of conversation you want to briefly discuss just so, um.
I think that would make a great work session, I think.
So.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Lawrence.
You know. It's difficult enough for me now. You can win six other people, right? Like. You make it, it's gonna be harder for me. No way. I.
Just so you know, I'm not suggesting we make any moves. I'm just saying the plan is very clear. You can go to nine and, and people who, who know about that know why we did that because of the future potential partners annexing in. And so I think it's, the question's been asked and rather than have, um, the board be on their heels if they get asked, the question is probably worthy of, uh. Of a topic and if, if nothing else, a brief conversation, um, um. And, and, and at the end. Very selfishly kind of give staff, specifically me, kind of an inkling of where the board's at. So. When we're working and doing our work through this process, I know where the board's will is and where their city, where, what their position is. How's that?
I think we have a system right now.
Mr. Chen, hold on. I got liaison swisher next and then Commissioner Chen.
Are they thinking that they need two people to represent them?
I have, I, to be honest with you, I don't have any context. I don't have any context with it. I just know the question's been asked.
We explain that to him, I mean, we explain that to him.
I mean, I can understand, um. Like if Everett were to join, that we, you know, we do have a larger area of representation. Edmunds is already included in our current representation. It's part of the reason why Briar didn't have a problem with it. I'm gonna guess it's part of the reason why Mount Lake Terrace didn't. We already have representation. The only difference will be is come next election, which I believe. Uh, aren't you our current representative for that area first?
Briar?
And do the contract cities residents actually vote?
Well, they will.
They will.
They will in that election.
So when the, when the districts get redrawn, we'll know who lands where.
Okay, because you know, uh, then somebody, somebody in Briar or Mount Lake Terrace can. Choose to run against whoever's got that district. I mean, same thing with Edmunds. And.
I'm with you and I, and I think the other part with the cities is they think a seven, a severance, a seven-member governance board. Is, is plenty big.
Yeah.
If, if you look at the rest of the area, right?
Are we gonna start our meetings at four o'clock in the afternoon? So that they all have enough time to talk because there's no way you're getting anything done between seven and ten. We have a hard enough time now.
So these liaisons keep one o'clock.
Yeah, but I just make my point straight into the point.
Uh-huh. Commissioner Chen next.
I, I do agree with you. We, we already have a. A district system already. Okay, yeah, we. Yeah, because it's a bit confusing, right? And someone's represented by the city, someone represented by the district. Okay. So, so you, we just have to say this is our system. It's not fair, suddenly, you know, my office, every single city, right there, right? Then also now, I, I don't object, we can go to nine, district if this becomes so huge. But let me remind you, PUD, the Public Utility District, they basically, the whole county, they don't have free commission. Right? And it, it's crazy, but, but yeah, sadly for that. The way we're only one-tenth of the budget of the PUD, which, okay. So that, I think that's, we need to pretty discuss.
So, the, uh, station costing model, um, worksheet that we have here, that's for you guys. Okay, um, it, it shows the cost, my question real quick here, and I may have just missed it, was, uh, what's the revenue, uh, at the current mill rate for the area that will be annexing in?
The current mill rate is what we charge is four point six million, right, Chris?
Or whatever they would pay when they came in, not necessarily current.
Say that, say that. Ask your question one more time.
We have cost. I would, I would like to know what the corresponding revenue would be if they, uh, annexed it.
Eighteen point two million plus or minus five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, that, that's just the more that was missing there for context.
Commissioner Teo five.
Uh, it makes sense that the Edmonds council asked for two seats. They're just looking out for their best interest. So I understand, why they're asking. I don't take any offense to it, but I can tell you seven is definitely enough because it's way harder to get extended.
Yeah, I was gonna comment on that. I mean, if we look at that as eighteen percent of our revenue, uh, about, um, and we look at seven-member board, that's about fourteen percent representation if it was all, you know, districted. Um, uh, and going to nine members of the board, each member represents about eleven percent of the, the total body and all of that. So, getting two from any one area starts to get things out of bounds a little bit. Maybe an idea that we could float for a compromise and I'm sure that the at-larges will take umbrage at this point. If we're just seven districts and we divided the area up into seven pieces, um, that might afford them the ability to have, two people that represent the area of their, their city covers while at the same time not changing the size of course.
So, so I will let you know, the reason they're asking isn't for that. They know that they can, they know that they'll, like, like the city of Edmund knows they have, they'll be at least in one district and they can refer to a large. It's not that. What they want is immediately have two people on the board. It, that's their, that's the intent for the question going to nine. That's both Everett's intent. I haven't talked to the people in Edmonds, but they're in, what they want is if you go to nine, then you can appoint two city people. They sit on the board, you got a nine-member board until such time as they get elected at large. I don't think, uh, Commissioner Rollins, it's, the issue that you brought up is what they're worried about. I think they want immediate representation, which is why they're asking for nine. That's why I would be asking for nine.
And I think if their intent is to add at-large positions, that gets into a whole other weirdness of being able to try to.
I, I actually don't think they've gotten into those kind of reads. I think they're saying, if you go to nine, we get two seats. Because you can appoint two of them people to your seats. They haven't gotten into the at-large districted. They don't realize that your districted, but you're voted as from the, in the general, from the whole art. They don't understand those new ones. Yeah, but I don't think they understand it.
All straight and well. Thank you.
Board liaison Swisher.
I apologize for not being able to make that meeting and, and.
Yeah.
But I, I had to do my own job. That seems ridiculous to me, uh, being a board liaison because, I will say on behalf of my city, um, I feel, and I know the people who I'm representing feel that me sitting here, we're getting plenty of representation. Because how many times have I made comments? And the decisions on the votes that they were about to make got changed because of the perspective I shared with them. And so you still have the representation, even though we're not the ones that they're voting. Things that I have said to them change their minds. At least some of their minds, maybe not all, but some. And so, I mean, and, and you know, and again, if I had offered it before they went to the meeting that, if somebody wants to say, hey, pick up the phone and call, call the person in Breyer. Um, I'm more than happy to talk to anybody and, um, I'll stay at how I feel and straighten them out. That, that's a ridiculous. Because seeing what it takes to get seven through the night, nine, um, I hope you guys have cots downstairs.
Commissioner Lawrence next.
Yes, to, uh, right on your coattails there. We said before, we had a mic from Mill Creek.
Jesse.
Jesse.
From Mount of our terrace.
I mean, and, or just, it had incredible knowledge and experience in the areas that, both of us don't have, and it's been very useful. Um, but once again, this is another reason, for political ways, keep coming back there because somebody could gracefully, tactfully explain them. You know, what's, what is all the, I like, I like to like to just get rid of that large.
I think, I think from the staff's perspective, it's very clear. This preliminary conversation that the answers were staying at seven, right?
Yeah.
And, and, and that's fine, right? It's, like I said, I, I, I've heard it. I guarantee you, when we sit down, if this moves, one of the first conversations is, there, there's two questions. Will they go to nine? Now, I, I'm pretty sure I know the answer. And are you gonna buy the stations? I know the answer to that one too. So, for, for, for what I needed, this was a great, I didn't expect it from the conversation happened today. But, but I think it's, one, once again, I think Chris is right. Commissioner Chauk, is, it's in there. They're asking the question. I don't, uh, nobody's holding anybody hostage with it. Um, and I think, um, you know, I, I think they, the, the conversation we had is liaisons have, an equal say. They don't have a vote for obvious reasons. It has worked how we've set it up to the point where everybody does have a voice. Um, and everybody's taking it. And I think the moral of the story here with this and the, and the conversation is, is it's very easy. Will be very easy for me to have a conversation with Mayor Rosen and have this kind of a dialogue based on what we just talked about. When he has that question, because I know he will.
Commissioner Chan and then back to Commissioner Lawrence, Commissioner Chan.
I think what happened in that report, they kept calling, uh, joining us. One of the workers says, I'm losing control. But I don't wanna say brain failure in front of them, but didn't they know the last fourteen years, they do not have any control? To me, it's not control, it's an addict that you wanna get, right? So I just wanna, a nice return and that's, yeah.
Commissioner Lawrence next, Commissioner.
Yeah, um, so, yeah, uh, I tell you, the six twenty dollars a year they haven't been paying, I think they could have given, they didn't need that actual. I think they should have, they're laughing all the way to the bank. So, to, to, but a, but a point on it, repeat, speak bluntly. Uh, they've known about this for years. They didn't plan for it. They're in a position they're in because, you know, we're recorded, right? But now this is a problem.
Uh, it's being recorded, but it's not broadcast.
We know, since people see it later, they want.
Yes, yes.
Yes, be careful.
Well, okay, well, it's pretty bluntly. They, 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 they knew when it was coming for a long time. And after airport, and they get this super deal, a discount for their, their customers, their, their pay, uh, taxpayers. And now they're, no, oh, we gotta pay this much. And so, well, all right. They, they need to, they just, they need to do something. And, uh, I'll just stop there because I, my foot is getting further.
Commissioner Rollins and then Liaison Swisher, Commissioner Rollins.
So I, I think we have to try to look at this from their point of view a little bit, just so that we can kinda see. I, I guess I understand that. When I hear them saying losing control, yes, they have certainly been in control, but, what is the process for an RFA, for a city that's joined an RFA to get their fire department back?
Quite difficult.
So when you talk about losing control, I mean, we pulled the trigger on.
They, quite frankly, they can't. How do they get it back?
Exactly. There, we, we, we pulled the trigger on the two-year out clause, which they, was something they could have done at any time. So they did have, control in a limited sense of their fire department and their service. They could threaten to leave if we didn't provide better service, things like that. Once they join, they don't have an escape, well, clause in it. So I understand their hesitancy and, and realizing that if, again, if we were to make poor decisions here and it started affecting the levels of their service and they are part of the RFA, they're, they're stuck with it. Or leadership here will affect them. Um, just as always would. But they would have less options. So I don't wanna think that they're thinking badly of us. Uh, but they're just trying to make sure to make the right decision, knowing that there's no real, you know, rewind button.
Me, liaison Swisher.
Um, oh, I'll piggyback on you.
Could hurt his back more.
Right, right. It hurt his back more. Um, I think that, I get the control part. They can't afford to start their own fire department again right now. And if, I'm gonna assume that somebody on their end has, has done what, Breyer did and called around all those different fire departments. Cause when we looked at it, to go shoreline, was a buck eighty-nine per thousand. At the time, the RFA was a buck fifty-one. That, that's really easy math. You don't, you don't even have to do the math to, to see the difference. But then the part that was most, I'll say disturbing for me, is that if I were a citizen living in unincorporated Stonefish County, directly across the street from the city of Breyer, and I found out citizens of Breyer were only paying sixty-seven cents per thousand, to my buck fifty-one, and you, and you come back to me and say, we'd like to renew the EMS levy for fifty cents. I believe you all know me well enough to know what my response to that would be at this point. I won't say it for the record. But that, that's what the people of Edmonds have to, have to look at now too. They've got the exact same deal. They're getting fabulous service, at a, at a premium price that isn't sustainable. And that's the message we have to continue to hammer home for those folks. Is that how it, how, you may be losing what you consider control, but the reality of it is you can't do it any other way. And why should the rest of the county, subsidize you and provide services to you that they're all paying more for? Because eventually everybody else in the county goes, uh, no, we're not going to give you the money that you need, to continue providing those good services because you're giving it to those guys for a fraction of what the rest of us are paying. And, you know, that, that is just the reality of it. And, whatever, whatever way that message needs to get conveyed, I'm happy to help. Uh, but, but I, unlike you guys, I am not going to be sweet and nice about it and, you know, all, all, all the nice ways that you guys like to say it. I will, I will say it bluntly to them, just like I did, because I, that's the reality. We can't continue to do stuff like that for people. Because eventually the other people that are paying you are gonna say, no, you get no more money to do something about that.
Commissioner Willis.
I'm just a comment there, Commissioner Rollins, some of the stuff you're saying about the contracts and control. When we gave these contracts to the cities, this wasn't about taking away the control. They could have added to it any, any time. We've been more than happy to put on another unit. This is really a minimal control that they cannot go below. And that's really what they, so to even say with the contract, they don't have any control, um, they can raise the level of service anytime they want to.
Raise it, not lower it.
But they've only reduced it.
And yes, Commissioner, I have it for nine.
Um, yeah, you know, just a quick question for chief. Uh, what is the, the class of our department? Is it class one or class two? Well, our rating's three. Our rating is three. ISO rating is three. Okay. Um, and that's something to consider too. Just explore the example of you wanna start your own fire department. It really depends on the class rating that you get. And the byproduct of having a really low rating on your department means your fire insurance is gonna go up. So each homeowner individually in a way pays the price for not having adequate fire protection. Just a consideration.
Any other comments or questions on this in the Edmonds? Okay, sounds good. Well then, moving forward in the agenda, we're on to item number ten C, which is the discussion of annexation methods. Chief Hesman.
So, um, I know, um, Melissa sent you the, um, memo from, um, Richard Davis's office on what the, the, the three types of annexations there are. And I guess I'll, I'm, I'm just gonna pause real quick and, and, in this conversation, and I know in conversations with, um, intergovernmental, specific to, um, annexations in general is, is staff, staff would benefit by having a general, idea of where the board sits in principle or in, uh, I go, I guess I would, I'm just gonna say in principle when it comes to annexations. I think in the conversations we've had about annexations, um, whether it's, you know, and there's three kinds. There's petition style method, um, um, there's an election method, um, and then we have this new ILA method. Um, you know, if it goes to the ballot, the voters get to decide whether they annex it or not. There's a couple of different ways petition methods, methods can work. Um, sixty percent of the folks within the area, um, or ten percent of the, of the residents. I'm not gonna verbatim what's in here. Historically, um, Fire District One at the time, and, and Commissioner Willis, Commissioner Kenny, Commissioner Chan, we, we were pretty much in opposition of most annexations for multiple reasons. Um, one was because a lot of times, a, a lot of them when, like the city of McCulte was doing their big annexation, they weren't gonna increase any fire service. Right? They were taking a huge chunk of property. They weren't gonna increase service. Um, they weren't gonna enter into pre-annexation ILA with us. Um, and we pushed the envelope and, and all the kind of pieces. Um, we, we, we opposed an annexation, um, at the Fred Meyer there, thirty, uh, above other highway and, and Airport Road, because, Fred Meyer was the one that went annexed. He took all the people with them because they were sixty percent of the AAV of the area, if I remember that correctly. And we opposed the annexation for the taxpayers that we represented there because they didn't have a say. Um, but we're, we're in kind of a different place now. And then you add this ILA method, of annexation where a city in the county can agree in an ILA format that, that takes the voice out of anybody who owns property and any, they don't have a voice at all, except for going to public hearings that are required. Um, and that's a new way of doing it. And so, um, that's kind of what spurred this conversation. Um, and this topic for the last, I don't know, we talked about three, four times. Um, and so what staff was looking for is, is I, and, and I'll, I'll give you what my, based on the conversation the board has, where I think the board is, and then we can continue the conversation from there, if that's okay. Is, I think it's pretty clear that for multi-terrorists, Breyer, Linwood, Mill Creek, that are already part of the RFA, they wanna annex, will support their annexation. That's the, the general. And, and I don't think we really matter how they do it. They're part of us. When the annexation happens and they annex into, we become the fire service board, um, Um, and we go. And so, and because it's different. And so, that's where staff has heard. The majority of the board's conversation that they're very comfortable. That and and which I think that's where we are. Where it gets a little bit more confusing. Is you is without talking about the three different ways to annex, let's just look at annexations. The Funcle Tio wanted to annex, Everett wanted to annex, Bothell wanted to annex. Um. What's the board's view on that now? I I get the feeling that we're not, we're a little bit mixed. On do we oppose those annexations? Do we not? And, um, I don't think we have a general overarching. We're just gonna oppose them all. I know Commissioner Tiafala does not like the idea of the citizens not having a voice in the ILA method. Um, but I think he's the only one that's come out very pointed and said. I don't like the residents not having a voice, so I'm against that form of annexation. The other two, at least they have to talk to somebody to get petition or it's gotta go to ballot. Um, and I guess with that, I'll pause. And and Chair, I'll I'll turn it back to you to to continue the conversation.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Uh, this the Muckeltio annexation, what's the reason again for they're doing it that they want to get some commercial, uh. Property in there or raise their tax base or something?
Yeah.
It's commercial, which is what paid it. Residential, it's like a loss for the city.
I I will tell you, every annexation's a grab for sales tax. It has been. So, um, outside of taking Muckeltio. And just look at the ILA method in and of itself. Um, you know, from a general philosophical perspective. You know, a a a gauge of where the board's at with that. Um, would help staff navigate questions being asked and those kind of pieces. So.
So in in, so cities want to. Grow and take. Property, uh, that's in the unincorporated area of the county. By the way, they got real bad if they're gonna take it away from the city. And in this case, we have just a few people, right? A few properties. And they don't have a voice now to go Christmas and. And. Well, if they were gonna get equal fire service. Maybe they don't want to get the second team for the. Uh, and maybe they should be asked and then. And why don't we ask them? Have we asked them? It shouldn't be hard to ask them.
We haven't got that far yet, right? I mean, I think we're still, we're still. I thought what I was trying to do is not specific to Muckeltio. Right now.
Yeah.
Because I was trying to stay or or trying to have the conversation stay. Let's say, you know, we got one on the table and I I know it's hard enough to go there, but what if it's a. You know, thirty-three thousand parcel annexation. Rather than look at an annexation on the table, when the ILA method. Is the board comfortable? And and it and we may not get to a place where we're just. We want to look at and say globally, we're against ILA method. It may be we want to look at each one individually, which is perfect, too, right? Um. And then and then at the end, we can come back, if you're okay with that, at the end, come back to Muckeltio specific, because I've got some additional information on it, but. Just an overall annexation.
Case by case. I mean, that's my opinion, but they go back to the Muckeltio. Uh, uh. Yeah, they up their game and they become. As good as our guys, another equipment, everything else, response, and do what we can do. Well. You know, well, okay, it's unincorporated, no problem. But they don't, they don't. So most people are losing out. And, uh. So, and they're kind of like. You know, they're riding on our coattails a bit, you know, getting, they get the premium service coming in there. And when they come to us, they get the B team, so. Sure.
One that's, one of the things I will say is, and and this is conversations I've had with Commissioner Widdes over time, is is realized. At the end of the day, if they go down the path of petition method annexations or, I mean, for us to stop an annexation. At the BRB and something, it's very, it's very difficult to stop annexations from happening. Labor politically, and there's all sorts of political things that make it happen. Um, so just to be transparent with the board. We we fought annexations and we fought hard and delayed them, but ultimately the annexation outside of the big Muckeltio one. You know, Fred Meyer was annexing the city of Everett despite our efforts to stop it, too. And and the laws, the laws in GMA are written such to benefit move this. And the cities move the area, too, so.
Uh, all I can say is baffling.
Um, yeah. Usually political. Um, both of those were great.
About seven years ago, I was in a, uh, city of Muckeltio's, uh, council meeting. And, uh, oddly enough, it was the only one, but it seemed to be really informative. And at that time, they were talking about annexing my area, which happens to be the area of Pickage Point. Uh-huh. And they declined because their rationale was for every dollar that they would receive, they'd have to spend a dollar on infrastructure or 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 thereabouts, or maybe even more. And, uh, the same argument was exactly where we're talking about now. We had talked about annexation. But police chief said, if you do that, I have to put on extra patrol. And fire chief said, if you do that, then I'm gonna have to look at building another station. So are those still elements of the conversation?
Yeah, to be honest. Annexing into unincorporated area that doesn't have a commercial base is a money lose.
Yeah.
In the short run, over long-term development, right? But but when you have to put in sidewalks and you have to get sewer water and all that there. Right? Without having commercial and historically, the annexation that happened for us, they grabbed commercial property. Because their sales tax base along with property tax.
Commissioner Chan and Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Chan.
Yeah, um, I think I kind of agree with you, like that, yeah, we 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 need. Some kind of a voice from the people. That's why when I, I remember my suggestion is that. Because you're in the area. So we should go and talk to the people. Do they want to annex? But I understand that many people are not responsive, too, right? If they do not respond, they don't get it. The reason for the Muckeltio, we get back to the Muckeltio. They would, they were neighbor and all that stuff, right? So in a sense, yeah, I'm I'm waiting for a good neighborhood policy. Uh, so, but you still need to go and talk to those people. At least try to get a point. If they all object, then we can, we can say enough. The citizen doesn't want to go. Right?
Commissioner Lawrence.
Uh, I'm good there.
Other discussion or comments? Uh, I'll just put out there that I am, uh. I am more open to agreeing to annexations than I have been in the past. We've fought many annexations through petition method. At the ballot box. Uh, we've also agreed to some small private party petitions to South County Fire. My recollection is a couple of them on the border with Fire District Four. Uh, basically no man's land that had no fire service. It was coming to us to be part of South County Fire or Fire District One at the time. Um, but, uh, but I, the the difference that I see pre, what, twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen? Uh, and now is that I also represent cities of. Not like Charis, Breyer, Mill Creek, Linwood. And how would they feel about, uh, one of their sister cities annexing? Obviously, they wouldn't allow the other city to annex part of the city. But I do think it is a little bit different quality than it was before. And I think it has to do, to me, come down to a case-by-case scenario where if it's a small annexation. And truly, we aren't gonna be able to provide better service, even if the city isn't adding new service. Um, it makes sense to. Uh, it it's not like South County Fire is going away. We're here for the long haul. Uh, we're stabilized in a way. A number of years ago, more than a decade ago. Uh, we were gonna be carved up and only Silver Furs and, uh, Lake Stickney were gonna be left of Sapphire District One. That's not the case anymore. And so I don't know that. Fighting every small annexation makes sense. I think there's some political benefit to potentially agreeing to some of these. I don't like the petition method, but the state legislature is free to adopt that. As a way, as a valid form of annexation, they've done it. There's nothing we can do about it. We gotta live with it. Could we have public hearings? Could we go door to door to find, you know, to let people know our our solicitor opinion? Absolutely. I think that makes sense. Um, but, uh, I do, I am more open to annexation. Now, you talk about a big annexation. Bothell annexation, the proposed Linwood North annexation, the Everett South, uh, South. Yeah, Silver Lake, big Silver Lake annexation that never happened. Um, some of the Muckeltio South annexation, big annexations had big impact on our budget. Yeah, no way. Uh, particularly if you're not just gonna talk to us about it. So, but you know, I think about the small Everett. Silver Lake annexation that Commissioner Widdes and I were, uh, involved on. And, um, you know, we lost that. Uh, you know, that was small. Maybe maybe today I would feel differently about that. Um, so I just, I think there's a little different spin on the fact that. But, uh, South County Fire isn't going away and we do represent these cities that might take a different view on some of these smaller annexations. And I just. Not that we can't, we can, but I just think there's a little difference than maybe, uh, twenty years ago. So. My two cents. Uh, Commissioner Lawrence.
Yeah, well, that's. Right, but they're not doing it for the good of the people. I mean, look, they they insulted Mike here. The Michael, uh, we don't want to, being a Jew, you're not worth it. Okay, our cost is too much. It's about, all about the money. I I mean, our people, we're gonna represent them. That's what I said.
Other, uh, comments, thoughts? Commissioner Teal.
So just trying to figure out, do you think you have anything to change to form an opinion on what the board's opinion is?
Yeah, I, to hear, so I'll, here's a synopsis of what I've got is when. When the annexations happen over current cities that are part of the RFA. For the most part, we're we're encouraging, will encourage to be partnered with their annexation, which outside, whether it's petition method. Voter approved or ILA, we're taking those case by case and bringing them back before the board and having a cautious conversation about them. Based on the merits of each individual annexation, that's what I got. Um, I actually think that's a great, I don't think that's a bad approach. Um, and and that's where I hear the board. The board where we're at, right? I I think, um, and I actually don't think that's a bad approach. It it's, the reason we got to this place was because of a. ILA method. That was between the city one annex and the county. And we're trying to get our arms wrapped around what that looks like and. And unfortunately, we're doing it with an annexation currently in progress, which is, you know, the. Whatever, eight acre, whatever the size of that annex at point four square miles in Muckeltio, which kind of muddies. Right? It's muddying the conversation as a result of we've got one in hand that we've already talked about for, you know, three different meetings. So I think that's where, that's what I've taken away from it. I'm getting head nods from. The majority of you that that sounds like not a bad place for staff to sit today, and we'll have time to readdress it in the future. Um, and with that, I'll give you a quick update on where we're at with Muckeltio. Um, I did not hear from their city administrator, required authentication. Um, I got an email the Friday before I got back, so. Um, it's really, it's a, it was an interesting email, but they went and did some work with their legal counsel. And in one context of the RCW, it said that they had to notify fire districts, water districts, RFAs, et cetera. And then they 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 have a question about in the, who has the right to veto? Doesn't say RFA, it says district. So I've sent that information off to, um, legal counsel. I've got legal counsel's response back. I'm setting up a meeting, going to meet with Steve in Muckeltio. Um, hopefully do that next week and I'll have more information to bring you back. If I don't have information by Tuesday, we'll do it at the following meeting. Um, so we're still working diligently, um, trying to meet the timeline for the city of. Of Muckeltio, at least when we're gonna get a resolve, um, where if we're gonna agree to let. Group and not oppose the ILA method, that they can get it done and all, all signed up and sealed. So by the first of. August, it's within their boundaries and they can collect taxes. So we'll be good neighbors in that fashion. Um, but I think the city of Muckeltio thinks they can just go do it without any more action from us because we're in our pay, not a district. I don't think they're correct. Um, and so I'll have a conversation with them next week and. Figure out where that lies and, um, I may, I may need to reach back to Richard and have Richard be at a meeting with me and their city administrator and their legal counsel to arm our soul. Um, because I do think we have a voice. I do think we we still as an RFA have the ability to say we don't agree with the ILA method. And you guys, in my opinion, the board. Has the right to say to Muckeltio, we're not gonna agree to that method. Do you want to go to? You have that authority. The statute, in my opinion, Richard's, Richard's opinion, gives you that authority. Um, so we're gonna go have a conversation with Muckeltio and. Make sure we're on the right. We know what we do. So when that's all done, we truly then do know what our, you know, what the process would be. You know, what this, what the, what the board can, cannot, all that stuff. Um, so that's an update on Muckeltio. Thank you.
Great. All right, moving forward in the agenda, then we're on to ten B, which is future year ballot.
So, um. I said, we talked about this last year during the budget process where we came with the fact that we were talking about. Doing the benefit charge, a ten-year renewal of the benefit charge this year, renewing the EMS levy to twenty-seven. Um, at some point in the distant future, we'd be having to deal with, um, a fire, a general levy led lift. And keeping that. You know, in the forefront, um, as, you know, every time we have one of these kind of sessions and prior to kicking off the budget. Is to just retalk about that. And it doesn't have to be a real long conversation. Um. You know, we're doing the ten-year benefit charge. We're going to ballot, um, in the primary. Um, I see success. Um, and, um, you know, in twenty-five, we have nothing slated. Um. Um, as a result of the benefit charge, it opens up the ability for bank levy capacity and maybe some increases in the benefit charge or somehow we want to do it now that we, on the second. You know, um, or the first renewal of that. Um. The one thing I would add that I think we need to get on the radar, not. From a decision perspective, but from a planning perspective, um. The, uh, capital saves plan group met, um, this week. Um, and, um, great, great initial conversation. Um, but and, um, but where staff's at with it is staff would like to be in a position. So the board could consider. A voter initiative in twenty-twenty-six. And so I I would like to, as we continue these conversations, to add. You know, a a a voted debt or a voter initiative in twenty-twenty-six for capital. As a, as a place for staff to drive, keep it on all our, all our radar and conversation as we continue. Um, obviously, you know, no action puts it on the ballot outside the board, but, um. Because if we don't. At least have a target to have committee work done and staff work done and hopefully have a place for the boards and consensus. With where we want to go for capital, whatever that is. And maybe it, and maybe it's pay as you go and it's not that service and we we cross that bridge when we get there. Um, but. Um, if we don't go in twenty-six. If we're going to an EMS levy in twenty-seven. Because it expires in twenty-eight. And then, and then do you go in twenty-eight? It's presidential. You can't go in twenty-nine because your, your, your voted debt requires a sixty percent plus validation, which puts you at thirty. And I don't, I I I, not that that may not happen. But I don't think staff would be doing their job. Because we've got, we've got stations that are in dire need of being torn or replaced, that we've had identified for many years. Um, and I think with the other support infrastructure and the things based on the size of what we're doing. Um, I'd like to add. A voter initiative in twenty-six for capital. Just to keep on our radar as staff and the capital city subgroup continues to do their work. Um, with a, with a target. Um, of work to complete for the board to have the information and be informed such that they. Can be in a position to move that direction if they so choose. So that would be the addition I would add. I know when we talked about it last year, we pulled it off. Um, I'd like to add it back. Um. As we continue through these conversations, um, and that would give us the next four, five, six-year look. Um, at where we go and, you know, touching voters. Um, and keep that alive for, uh, revenue strategy.
Commissioner Chief.
I don't know when we got this slide. Uh, Chris made this, uh. I feel like it's like budget, budget season, so it's been around for a while, but we had, uh, talked about. Having, I put our, that's in twenty-six, capital bond levy. Uh, so I feel like it's have been agreeing to for the past, like, six months or so.
I think we talked about it. I think when we got, I think that was where staff wanted to go.
Yeah.
And I think when we actually got to the end, I think we we dropped. In the, in the, at the end of the conversation, we, we talked about it, but we didn't add it to our list at the end. So we did talk about it when that was presented, but when we ended. So we did talk about it when that was presented, but when we ended, we ended with do a ten-year benefit charge. EMS levy renewal in twenty-six, and we dropped the voted debt comment, the the voted debt mark. I'm asking to put the voted debt marker back in. So because of everything we got going, the self-committee work we're doing. Um and and at least be in a position from a staff's perspective, for the board to have all the information they need to decide whether they want to work on.
Yeah, I'm in favor of adding it to the things I've had observed then. Just uh my point, you know, what I'm not being far off.
I think it's prudent for planning purposes, pulling the trigger, isn't it?
And and much different. And all those, all those is is for planning purposes, right? It's, I mean, even the voted debt or or the EMS levy led live. That's, that's for planning and for staff to use to do our work. That all of a decision to go, because because we could go in twenty-eight, because it doesn't expire till the end of twenty-eight, so we have flexibility. It's, it's still, the decision to actually go forward with those. Still resides and and that doesn't mean. It's, that's not etched in stone, that's for us to strategize and plan and look forward to the future. Um and not be on our heels before we're leaving.
So, other thoughts, comments?
A lot of work needs to be done before we hit to that place.
Uh let's say that uh we successfully passed the bottom levy in twenty-six, then twenty-seven, let's say like. Another city comes in. Uh is there some more like uh can make benefit from those funds? Is the capital levy like um taking from our taxes?
Only for the people that voted on. So, for example, if we do the vote and and we do the vote, it passes and then Edmond's annex is in. And mixed residents aren't paying for the dash.
And then, but we could use that money to build a station in there.
We can use the money wherever we want. And there's other ways where, if we're going on that path, we could do an ILA, we've been, there's other ways to skin that gap, but.
Other question this conference?
Okay, thank you very much. Chris, you, anything else with that?
Moving forward on the agenda, we have item ten E and Fire Chief Ideas.
T P. So um, staff has been talking about a lot of things over the last four months. Um and and they're, and 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 really, I'm I'm not, I'm not asking for a um. Really a lot of conversation. I I want you to know what staff's thinking about as we look at challenges moving down, you know, next year. Five years from now, um and and um and there, some of them are big. Um if you look at the median home value in Soish County, it's seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Our top five firefighters don't make enough to qualify to buy a house. At the median income, at the median level, right? So, that's, that is a challenge. And when you talk about recruitment retention, you talk about um. About all those things, that becomes a huge challenge and and I don't think property values are going down. And I'm pretty sure the way AV happens in our area, we're south, I mean, we can't afford to pay everybody half a million dollars to buy a medium. Medium sized home. Um and so those, so staff's thinking about it, what does that mean? How does that impact what we do? Right? How does it impact people wanting to work here? And people who absolutely wanna work here, we pay great, it's a great place to live, but you can't buy a house. And you can't buy a house in King County and Skagit County is not far behind. Now all of a sudden you got people driving three hours. Each way to work, or they're going across the mountain, or they're going to the east side of the mountain. Um and if you go south, Pierce County, everything is going up in price. Um how do we maintain people? People come wanna work here. When they go, I don't really wanna work in city acts, but. They pay almost as much, and by the way, I can buy a house, right? Um we're thinking about that. What does that mean? What does that mean for our shift schedule? What does it mean for recruitment retention? What does it mean for bringing folks? On the forty-hour work week who fill the administrative roles worth filling, when they can't, you know, I'm talking about the people we just hired and they can't afford to buy a house here. And then buy a house that's four, five hours away. And now all of a sudden, now they have a desire to be a chief administrator in this organization. They can't, because they can't drive five hours to work every day. And five hours home. It's something we're thinking about, something that's on our radar. Um I I just want the board thinking about it, because it's, it's going to be challenges we're gonna face over the next. I mean, we're facing it now and it's gonna be a challenge we're gonna face out into the future. Um our workforce, the dynamics of the workforce has changed. They're not all like what Jason and I and Sean. And and how some of you look at work, work-life balance. Um um the the young folks today, if you, if you read what's happening in the business world. Um if you read what the academics are saying, is that we'll have four or five, totally, totally different careers in their, in their lifetime. You're looking, you're looking at folks in this room that all have twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty years. Some of us have been in the career field for forty, right? What does that mean for us moving forward? What does it look like? Um in a couple ways, retention's one of them. But the other piece is, is our young, our young men and women. Want to come and give a hundred percent when they're here, and then when they're not scheduled to be here, they don't wanna be here. Their prior, I mean, this is a priority, but we're, I'm like, maybe some of us in the room were was here and family was here. I'm telling you, it's, it's the other way around, which is probably appropriate. They don't like mandatory overtime, they don't wanna work overtime. What does that mean? Um I think it means we need to change our staffing ratios. I think we need to hire. More people to maintain the minimum staffing that we have as a result of having a happy workforce. Once again, huge budgetary impact, because I think you're talking about ten people per shift, that's forty people. Big dollar, big price tag that goes along with it. Um and there's a whole slew of things that go along with that. How do we keep people who, we don't have promotions, how do we keep them engaged and not getting bored? And those are Bob Eastman's words, not, right? But but if you, if people are changing careers three or four or five times. Why are they doing this? Because they get to a place in their career and they go, okay, I've been there, done that, now it's time for me to go do something else, because I wanna go. And be re-energized in a different way. Um, you know, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna deal with that? You know, laws have changed. Um um sick leave, PIFable, the State Family Medical Leave Act in conjunction with the Federal Family Medical Leave Act. If, you know, the way the statute has changed that allows us. Do you simply differently than we can do sick leave five years ago? Has impacted how Jason and Sean and Todd can staff the stations. Um you know, we have folks that can use state family leave and they can tell us a year ahead of time what days you're not gonna be here. We have folks that um go on disability. Um and behavioral health, PTSD are are real issues in this organization. They're real issues in our career field, um and we have folks that go on extended disability. And they're, you know, and I'm not talking one or two, it's significant, it's a number that that significantly impacts. The ability for Jason, Sean and Taj to staff stations, which. This is new and and how do we, in other words, what I'm saying is this comes to. Do we need to have a few more people hired per shift to cover those long-term disabilities? Then. You know, PTSD is real. Um our young generation understands behavioral health, they deal with behavioral health like they deal with the dentist and the eye doctor. We don't. Most of us in this room are traumatized. And swallow it and have other means of dealing with it that have no outward sign of anybody that can deal with it, right? Um and and probably will never ever share that in our lifetime, right? I'm one of those, right? That's the generation I'm in. Um but how do we deal with that? How do we deal with somebody who? The younger generation that goes and sees the things that they're seeing in the street. And need a break, not, not a different career field, they just need a break. They need, they need to get, they need to get off the company. And and get their mental health backward, it's a B site and go back to the company. What does that mean? We've, we've not been there before in this career field and and we're there. Um and what does that mean? And and how do we manage that? I'm asking the question, because right now it's something we talk about, I don't think we have any answers. But I want the board to know, these are things that, that aren't, aren't something we historically have talked about. Um this isn't response times, this isn't, this isn't the normal things I come, we come to you and say, hey. You know, I got, I got a unit that's seventy percent of the time unavailable, I need another resource, that's an easy question, easy conversation, easy, easy. What we're talking about is, you know, fundamentally, do I need sixty more firefighters in this organization to deal with? Behavioral health challenges that we're having for the folks that I'm hiring now, that are doing the work I'm asking them to go do. So I can keep them in a career for twenty years, for twenty-five years, because the alternative is if we don't fix that. They're gonna be here for three years, have that event happen, and they're gonna go find something else to do. And and now what happens? Now. The biggest commodity we have in this organization is the men and women that we have go do the work, not just. Not just in the street, but in this bill, right? And so um those are the, that's some of the challenges that we see coming. There's a budgetary impact in every one of those conversations and and every one of those things at some point. Um but I want the board to think about some of those things. Um if people can't afford to buy a house here, they gotta move further out. LA County, LA Cities, San Jose, there's agencies that are already dealt with, that's why they went forty-eight ninety-sixes, right? A year and a half ago, that would have been a blasphemous thing to say, is have anybody, by virtue of what I'm telling you, work more than twenty-four hours in a row. But, to keep a workforce and to keep people working here and wanting to work here, we may have to do something that. None of us. In this room or up on the dimes would have ever thought, oh, that's what we should do, but. Um in order to keep the wheels turning and stuff going, we may have to do some things that aren't number one for us. Um and there's multiple things like that, and and I guess I want the board to know. Your staff's thinking about those things and there'll be conversations that continue to come up. Um as we get our arms around some of it, um I think, you know, we're gonna wanna take. Bite-sized pieces of this and be part of the budget conversation we have, um because I think some of it is real here and now. Um you know, when, when I've got shift strength because of, you know, that, all those things I just talked about and I have. Six overtimes every single day, I have to fix that or I'm gonna, I'm gonna not have firefighters come here to work or firefighters will leave. And and you know, when you look at forty to sixty people, there's a big dollar price tag that goes along with that, right? And and that's what I'm saying, that's staying status quo, that's not adding resources. That's maintaining what we already do. Now, there'll be days where we're upstaffed because people are all working and I'm overstaffed. But that's, that's not increasing minimum staffing, that's maintaining what we already have. So, um that's really what I, I just wanna let the board know, those are some of the things that. You know, we've been thinking about a lot over the last year, year and a half. Um and are realizing that if we don't get ahead of it. We are gonna have a challenge keeping people employed, keeping people in the street, um and that, so um. I I'm not, I think there's a lot more conversation to be had from this, but I wanted the board to get an idea of what staff's been talking about. What staff's thinking about and and, you know, there's probably sixteen things that I'm not talking about. Because it's at the end of the day and I'm tired like everybody else, but but we are constantly. Having that kind of a dialogue here at headquarters from finance, HR, um and the, and the senior executive staff. Um and they're real and and I I don't have solutions and I don't have answers, but I can commit that we're working through it. Um and I would anticipate that work sessions moving forward will be bits and pieces of this as we go. And some of the committees, HR committee, finance committee, um I know, I know you have some stuff where, where. Um Mr. Cullen and 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 CFO Bothwell have already done, but there's certain parts of that that I'm gonna commandeer. Because I think there's some real conversations to be had and that's probably where this conversation starts. Is in finance and HR for some of the things I've talked about. So, um that's really all, I wanted to let you know what I'm thinking, so.
Commissioner Lawrence and then Commissioner Fer.
When you're talking about adding, I didn't quite understand the mechanics of that. Yeah, adding to, to a shift?
So, I I think, so we have a shift strength, what's our shift strength? So I I have about eighty people assigned per shift, and what I'm saying is.
Extra. But if nobody, everybody turns up uh fresh and, you know, gonna slow. Can they just, can maybe just be on call or something, or gotta have them available?
Yeah, what I, what we do is, I mean, there, there is some, there's some advantages.
I mean, I, I don't even want to keep the overtime down, I mean, that's. But we're, we we kinda like Rob, you, you said, we, the thing, we're, you're proud of, we're proud of, that mean machine. Okay, so. Uh the other option is going to a a longer shift, so they could just. Uh uh live farther away and only come in.
That's part of it, yeah. There's lots of moving pieces.
It's, it's a tough one, I could. Uh uh so, but we got the cities that say, you know, we don't wanna pay for this, you know, much, you know. These taxes are too high, we're, we're paying too much and. And so as a society, then we have to maybe make a choice, you know, you gotta, you want the service, you gotta pay for it and it costs as much. Well, because I understand, I've been going a little bit into demographics here lately and. Uh I'm gonna build a baby boomers, pretty much. And there are a lot of us, and every, you're competing for jobs, employers love it, okay? And things have changed, you know, we. Like you can go into why we don't have the population we should have to fill in, but uh I've already. Need to say a few things I probably regret saying today. Um but we got, we got an issue, demographic issue. And the reality is, we, we're, we're only limited in how much we can do in the rest of society. So if we want people, we may have to ban more than the next fire service to to work here. If we wanna keep up. Just turn this and that burner, people out, have those.
I think there's part of that, I think, I mean, one of the things, I don't remember who brought it up, is, um at some point in time, we may own an apartment complex. Yeah, I mean, we may own an apartment complex.
Yeah, yes.
Um once again, with, once again. The way, the way our group thinks is there's nothing, I mean, solutions are solutions, right? I'm not saying we do that, but. It it.
We got a place for her for the first two years while they're getting up in the range.
Once again.
Some idea.
There's all sorts of options and and quite frankly, um.
You're looking ahead.
I'm, I'm, and ask the guys and gals in this room, I, I'm physically conservative when it comes to our budget. And so I understand the strain on the budget with the conversation I just had with the board. Um and there's a balancing factor there, there's a balancing act there, um but at the end of the day. If we don't have people.
Yeah.
I'm not running engines and I'm not running medicated, so.
We're about the only industry going through this.
We're not.
So they're.
We're.
Orage overall.
We are not, we're not.
There is a chunk of population that doesn't understand what the word work means, but we can't.
But there's also a return on this investment. You know, we're not doing a whole bunch of extra overtime, a whole bunch of mandatory overtime, disabilities for six months. So, so yeah, you might be investing in five or ten more people per shift.
But there's way back.
There, there's.
There's a return.
Man, great team. Investment, or not hiring people, or having people go out on disability for the rest of their life.
Well, but I'm retired, you guys do it.
Yeah, so Commissioner Fer.
Yeah, you kind of stole my, my thunder there by talking about purchasing a building, you know, an apartment building. This, that's not the first time I've heard or seen this idea. Is just try to keep your workforce local, it may not be particularly ideal for large families, but. Um the, the notion that your department is growing also puts you on par. With other larger, let's say, Southern California departments that I'm. You know, have been associated with, LA City Fire is what my alma mater is and. Uh the thing that struck me in that department because it was so diverse. Is that you have a lot of opportunities to go to technical rescue, to go to marine, or wildland, do air ops. All of these kinds of things may actually be in our future. You know, as, as we start looking forward and as we grow. And I think that there will be a natural retention, an attraction to that. For some of our people who may choose not to necessarily leave to go to work as a Walmart greeter. Or something like that, you know, because they had a bad day at our, at our job. Um so I think, I think in some ways, we're going to hit a natural equilibrium with that, but. It it's something to acknowledge, you know, um. I know that you talked about needing more people, you and I personally talked on the phone about potential recruitment mechanism. Could you touch upon the topic that we were discussing on the phone as far as, uh, you know, creating programs that will. Allow folks to affiliate and then.
Well, yeah.
Portal to, to.
When, when we talk about retention. When we talk about retention or recruitment. You know, we talk about the volunteer program and and I've talked to a couple of commissioners about this too is. Is, um, along with all those other pieces we talked about, this one, this one's not about landage. Um, but, you know, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the volunteer program twice the size it is. Um, and the reason behind that is because Sean sits on a national committee with retention recruitment for fire service. Getting firefighters actually want to do this with a career. Um, it there, it's got a lot of people nationally scared over the next couple of years of having nobody wanting to do this job. In in the best of times, not with, not the stuff we're just talking about, in the best of times. And and and, um, one of the visions that we've been having and we've had for a while, this is just mine, this is Chief Obus''. Um, is if we could get the the volunteer workforce in a position where we could get forty-eight. You know, or more. In the organization as where we're pulling our career staff from. Um, but the challenge is, is for folks that wanna be fire service and be in the fire service, we have to give them mission and purpose. And I've, and real mission. Our our volunteers are support folks. They don't end up, you know, we don't put them in SCBA's, we don't put them in the IDLH environment. Um, but the concept that I was talking about with Commissioner Farina is, is we do have a wall in our program. Um, and, um. And this is an idea that's consumptuous, is that for the folks that actually wanted to be a career firefighter. Right? Not the folks that wanna give back and and doing smoke detectors and the parades and and the act stuff and and supporting what Leslie and. And Sean or Ree and Christie do, um, because I don't think that changes. But for the folks that actually want this career field, we could give them mission and purpose, at least during the wildland season. And the benefit about the wildland and why I picked it is outside of the initial capital of the of the of the rolling stock. Um, when they deploy, in this sense, and we could set it up where they'd be, they'd be paid by the state. So it wouldn't be dollars out of a general fund outside of the initial capital outlay for, let's just say, brush. Um, and we could give them mission. Now, there's a lot of variables with it, right? I mean, I don't know. You know, I don't know. You know, what, what people, you know, what they're doing for jobs and what they're doing to make ends meet, why they're doing a volunteer for us and. And and so there may be some other reasons why that's challenging. But, um, but if we could get at least during the summer months of the ability for them to do mission. Um, we have a program, it would allow, you know, the paid staff to work with the volunteer staff in a very. Different environment than what they do when they do drill at Station Fifteen. Um, and, you know, and and we hire in that group and we know who they are and they're known commodities and we. We know their work ethic and all those other pieces and, um, and could get them in or run through the academy and do that, so. That's one additional option. Um, when you talk about, you know, recruitment retention, because I think it's multifaceted. That's probably not as, as, um, bizarre. As a, when you just start buying a thirty-sixth building apartment complex because people can't afford it. I mean, that's, that's, that's a far different conversation, but, um, those are also things we're talking about because. Again, if we can't get people to come and want to do this job. It, all this other stuff we do doesn't matter, right? I I can have the best fire trucks, we can have the best fire stations, you can have the best chief, the best board. But if we don't have people willing to come to work and get in a fire truck or get in a medicament and respond.
I just have to say. We're not doing any work. I really support your vision. Um, doubling, currently are slotted for twenty-four personnel. That would make it forty-eight personnel if we would have the volunteer program. And as we grow, uh, you know, there could be. Um, um, some kind of augmentation of of supporting like a fourth and south of time, just because you'll have enough bodies. And they're be distributed in ways that it starts to make sense. Um, and I think it's a, it's a, a great idea and I I know that, uh, you know, the more that we get community. Individuals involved that live locally, stronger we will have as far as occasionally to go out to the voter. And ask for for more money to support services. So I think it's, I think you're moving in the right direction.
So one more, one more thing that's maybe a little bit outside the box that that falls along with everything you talked about is. Successful planning is is a huge thing. Um, Commissioner Lawrence, you talked about. You term and I think fast track in the administration. Um, I I'll, 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 I'll look at it a different way. You'll hear me talk at some time in the not distant future about having four positions. Um, that are administrative positions that can be filled by the rank and file. And and the sole purpose of it is to get them in this building to see what we do. For the sole purpose of figuring out who thinks in their fire service career, they want to. Aspire to the administrative roles of the organization. Um, obviously, there's financial implications to that, there's operational implications to it. But, um, historically, what we do is when we bring people into this office. You know, they've been on the fire, they've been on the streets and they're at the twenty-fifth year, twenty year, we bring them in and say, here you go. Where, where I think if we're gonna be a little bit proactive, the other thing it does is allows me somebody who's got. You know, uh, um, challenges with PTSD or behavioral health issues because of the work and they needed a six-month break. We have a place for them to go. It's a value. Um, it gives them an idea of what happens in this organization. They get a, they get a touch of what makes the gears turn, not the response for us, that's the easy part. Understanding this and get somebody going, you know, I I really could be. Safety chief's position or this position or that, where we get them younger in their career. And they can start doing the things like, well, if I wanna do that, what do I do? Well, go get your business degree, go do this and go do that. And we can mentor differently. Um, and groom folks to be ready to do some of these administrative roles. Um, from a successor perspective, that's an idea I've had. Um, rather than, you know, right now, the folks that get ac-acclimated the days either. Raise their hand and become a chief or, you know, there was a while there where we forced training captains in that didn't wanna come in and forced MSOs in that didn't wanna come in. And I think if you look at that in context to everything we just talked about. Uh, you know, the PTSD and and all those other pieces, there, it may work. Where you've got somebody who needs a break, comes in, understands it, you never know. Twenty years after that, maybe your next fire chief. Or your next assistant chief, your next deputy chief, so, um, and I don't think, I don't wanna limit that to just uniform folks. We've got a lot of talent. In this organization's defense out of the house too, right? And I, and I think we need to, when we talk successor planning, it's not just for my position, Sean and Jason, Todd's position in DC. It's for David's position, Leslie's position, Chris's position, right? It's bigger than that. And so, um, another thing we're looking at.
Okay, so, uh, I've got Commissioner Chan, next thing Commissioner Lawrence. I just note that it's about ten minutes to four. We need to start wrapping up our. Meeting, so I'm hoping com- comments can be kept to a minimum, we can be done by four. Commissioner Chan.
Yeah, uh, we used to have a strategic planning committee, which by shock. Uh, maybe we should stop looking at this really long, long-term thing. Uh, second, second thing is that, um, again, we're on the road, whoever program. Interviewing people in different career and everything else, my findings are best paid. Right now in this community. So, and then also you hire a big shot in the human resources center. Center, I think there's a, so the problem, one of the concepts I have is that I just look at burden. Yesterday in the. The time, the, uh, uh, the profile, the hair had changed, okay? There's a lot of newer arrival people in here. But I would like to have. You're recruiting, I think I sent an email to you and also, uh, David too. We should look for someone who already had root in here. That means the parents and so most likely then they were able to solve some of the problem housing, but not only two. They will be same with the same with the community. I know in the past where the parent, uh, hiring people from, uh, uh, lateral, from. Spokane, from somewhere else, right? To me, those people most likely would less. You know, staying in here, but if someone stayed in the community, has that. And I I don't object to that building your apartment to rent it. Now, we have some land in here. But I really do not know how law works, right? How can we really subsidize building? We, we, we should, we should go and explore it, right? The one thing we can do is that we can even own the apartment, with the land building it, but rent it or somehow. I I opened that, but again, the number is a key thing, right? Thank you.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Um, I appreciate your out of the box thinking there about bringing people in on on. Uh, give them a rest and learn and stuff, that's brilliant, it's good. And then if they someday could be assistant chief. A legal chief. You left out Commissioner. Some days they couldn't eat one.
Theirs can only be so big. Sean Maxwell.
All right, any other comments on this? Not seen any requests for comments. We do that, we'll move forward the agenda. Any other matters to commit to the board? There weren't any, but I do have an announcement, just a reminder. That tomorrow is the employee recognition ceremony at three P M. At the Community Life Center Northwest Church in Linwood. If you commissioners would still like to attend, you can let Melissa know. And she will get you on there so that we know that you are attending. Additionally, our next meeting is next Tuesday, seven P M. Right back here. Any other announcement kind of thing?
Yeah, finance committee is gonna be next week on, on the seventh, we're missing one already. Yeah, on on Thursday and, uh. Both of you, if you have any more, more top, topic or subject you wanna get in, let me know.
Commissioner Chan, that meeting has been moved to the fifteenth. It's supposed, there's, it's supposed to be the meeting after the work session. This month it happens to fall, the dates. The second Wednesday.
Right, second Wednesday. You move it.
Look, if you look at the calendar, the second Wednesday fall. It falls before the work session.
No, no, I'm, I'm coming up eight. May eighth.
Right.
Well, actually, can I just have the committee work that out offline?
Yeah.
That board doesn't need to be involved. Any other announcement kind of things? Commissioner Lawrence.
Um, I'll share something, uh, I just sent you a little picture and it's there.
You can, uh, oh, wait, maybe I can.
Cool idea. So I just wanted to share with everybody and. Go to the order, that's the thing, it seems like the right time to do it.
Yes.
Is it the publication or the trucks?
So PSA for trucks, so.
You know, I just described it and then I.
I can kind of show it around afterward, but basically I was watching a a movie and they had a fire truck go by over in the U K. And they used the side of the fire truck hearing. Where we normally just have white red real estate to do public service announcements, kind of like a little advertisement type thing. This one is making sure that people watch what's on the stove and I thought that's very refreshing because we get those calls all the time where, so we just leave something up. So, so I thought it was an interesting way that we could use the real estate and our trucks go by and people see it. I don't know if it's good yet or not, but I just wanted to kind of. Show you guys what I saw.
So, we can make money advertising on the side of our.
Public service.
Yeah, but you're going to wrap.
All right, any other announcement type things? If not, then, uh, without objection, we. Are adjourned, thank you. Too late. Thank you, everyone. Our thanks for being here for the, uh, spring, uh, well, what's up?